We're ready to go. Let's get this show on the road. I do not see Michael Pfeiffer, who was supposed to lead our invocation this morning. So I guess in the absence of the preacher, I'll do it again myself. So please indulge me and let's go to our Heavenly Father in a word of prayer. Dear God and our Father, we thank you so very much for this another day and we thank you for the opportunities you have presented unto us. We are especially thankful this morning, Father, for the rains that you have sent and in our -- we ask that you would please continue these rains to the point that it would restore our lakes and our streams, our rivers, our wells, and that prosperity and the balance of nature might once again be returned to this area. Be with us this morning, Father, as council members. Help us to listen, to be patient. Help us to have the wisdom that we need to make the decisions that involve your people. Help us to do what is right. Be with us, love us, forgive us. This is our prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. And at this time, may I have Megan Thompson come forward because she's going to help me with the pledge. Are you ready? Loud and strong.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the Texas. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you so much. We have one proclamation this morning, and this will be for the Americans with Disabilities Acts. It's the Awareness Day, July 25, 2013. And if I might have Mary Palios and Rosalinda Rivera come to the front, we will read this and present it. I think we're going to start asking for rain like this to precede every city council meeting, if that's alright with y'all. And maybe the Lord will provide. Alright, let me read this. Whereas on July the 26th, 1990, President George H. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Acts to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities, establishing a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities and whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers and changing perceptions, increasing full participation in community life. However, the full promise of the ADA will only be reached if public entities remain committed in their efforts to fully implement the ADA and whereas on the 23rd anniversary of Americans with Disabilities Acts, we, the City of San Angelo, celebrate and recognize the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommitting our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Now therefore, I, Duane Morrison, the Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby reaffirm our commitment to work toward full ADA compliance in the City of San Angelo and proclaim July 25, 2013, as ADA Awareness Day. Thank you. Now, you can make a speech now, limited to 20, 30 minutes apiece. Y'all care to say anything?
I want to say thank you. On July the 25th, we are going to have a celebration at El Paso. It's from 10 to 2. It is a come and go. There's going to be food and entertainment. And we've actually entitled it Independence, Liberty, and Access for All. Thank you.
Do you care to speak?
I just want to say thank you.
Okay. Well, let's take pictures then. At this time in our council meeting, we will ask for and allow for public comment. The council takes public comment on all items of the regular agenda. Public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda or consent agenda may be identified and requested with consideration by the council at this time. The council may request an item to be placed on a future agenda or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda. For public comment. And I didn't have my microphone. Anybody hear that? They usually turn my microphone off and turn everyone else's up. So at this time, I will ask for public comment from anyone in the audience.
Good morning. My name is Jim Turner. And this is kind of an interesting situation because you're having an item for agenda on the executive session, but I think that we really need to look very closely at the executive session that you're planning on having for item number three there. The Open Meetings Act is actually very clear that if you're discussing a personnel action on an individual, that is entirely appropriate.
Mr. Turner, may I ask you, sir?
Yes.
To come back when I read this for the executive since it is on the agenda? If you could hold your comments until that time and then you will be allowed to speak? During the public comment, we cannot answer. We cannot, we can't say anything.
That's true.
So if you would, please, just hold your comments.
I would like to just take and put one further clarification on this there, though. Any violation of this act is subject to criminal action even if the participants in it, city council members, government officials, don't realize they're violating the act. And one of the few affirmative defenses is to actually have a written opinion by a court, the Attorney General, or the attorney of the government body that's involved. Thank you.
We'll get back to you after I have read this for executive. I'll ask you to come forward and make your comments. And that way, we can talk back to you. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and proceed.
Mayor Morrison. Members of city council and city staff, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you regarding San Angelo's feral cat problem. I am Kristin Stanley, and I was raised in San Angelo, Texas. I have 10 years of experience stabilizing and reducing feral cat colonies and have researched the topic of feral cat management at length. As a board member of the Humane Society of Tom Green County, now doing business as Concho Valley Paws, I took over a feral cat colony of 28 cats in 2003 behind a legendary local restaurant. Feral cat colonists utilize trap, spay, neuter, vaccinate, return, and maintain to control feral cat populations. This is commonly referred to as TNR. Through TNR, adoption of cats that could be socialized, attrition, and having 27 additional cats dumped at the colony, the colony now has four cats. After years of ineffective cycles of trap and kill resulting in costly rodent infestations to buildings and vehicles on Angelo State University's campus, President Brian May supported doing things differently. Under Brian May's leadership and with the support and resources of Concho Valley Paws, I organized the Angelo State Cat Coalition. Since February 2012, coalition efforts stabilized a healthy cat population on campus and reduced the cat population by over 50%, preventing over 35 new litters and exponential population growth through subsequent litters. This has been done by a group of dedicated volunteers spending zero tax dollars. The concept of trap, neuter, return is not new, and cities across the United States are embracing TNR to effectively reduce feral cat populations while saving taxpayer dollars. The Arlington, Texas city council just approved a comprehensive TNR program estimating taxpayer savings of $30,000 monthly. In 2003, the Humane Society of Tom Green County received a summerly grant that covered spay, neuter, and vaccination expenses, and the city shelter partnered with Humane Society in this effort. As a result, 2,000 fewer cats entered our shelter in 2007, saving taxpayer dollars approximately $120,000. The city stopped collaborating with animal rescue organizations, and that's why I'm here today. I speak on behalf of the San Angelo Feral Cat Coalition. We are a community group of area animal groups, committed volunteers, and grant funders. We are deeply concerned over the city animal shelter's recent actions in regard to one particular feral cat colony. In mid-June, city animal control officers entered private property to threaten a community volunteer with arrest for feeding feral cats behind another landmark restaurant. This volunteer, with the help of Critter Menard Chack and a grant funder, had reduced the number of feral cats at this particular site from over 70 cats to 55 cats. She had permission from the private property owner and adjacent property owners to manage this population of feral cats. City animal shelter workers stated they had complaints and the cats were a nuisance. They ordered her to stop feeding or she would be arrested. Animal control officers do not have the right to arrest, and their order of removal of food is considered animal cruelty under city ordinances. Officers gave the volunteer a poorly worded letter from the animal shelter director saying she was in violation for not maintaining her pets to city ordinances. Members of our group met with city staff, and we believe an enforcement approach does not address the underlying problem here. Given the policies of the city animal shelter, trap and remove is in effect trap and kill. Trap and kill is ineffective, it's costly to taxpayers, and it's inhumane. The San Angelo Feral Cat Coalition would like to partner with the City of San Angelo to more effectively deal with our feral cat program. I am here to ask you to cease the city's heavy-handed action regarding this one feral cat colony. A different strategy is needed in my appeal to the city council request, not only that you lead, but act as true partners in addressing San Angelo's feral cat population. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Very well presented. Chief, did you get all that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. State your name, please.
Hi. My name is Sharon Hoffman, and I'm going to speak on the same topic that Kristin spoke on. Thank you for the opportunity to visit with y'all this morning. I'm a volunteer with Critter Shack, a local animal rescue group. We worked with Mrs. Hewling for three years.
A little closer to microphone.
We've worked with Mrs. Hewling for three years with the cat colony behind Mahor Canata to spay, neuter, and vaccinate her cats. During the last three years, we have successfully spayed, neutered, and vaccinated about 45 of her cats. Our grant providers and the private donors who fund our free clinics have helped us in the last year, actually, to vaccinate and sterilize and spay, neuter 498 feral cats. So we know what we're doing. We've done a good job. We have support from 10 veterinarians in the area. We have spayed and neutered animals from approximately 30 feral cat colonies. We do this free of charge. Two of the veterinarians who help us are Dr. Russell and Dr. White, who are on the Animal Advisory Services Board. Our concern is for the feral cats in these colonies and for the managers of the colonies. Our time, energy, and money have gone into our clinics spaying and neutering these cats, and the city's current practice of trap and kill makes our efforts futile. We're asking for protection for the cats in these managed colonies and protection for their caretakers. In five years, 20 female cats and all of their offspring can produce over 250,000 cats. Even if there's a 50% mortality rate, that's a lot of cats. We know that the best solution to this issue is to partner with the city to decrease the feral cat population through sterilization and vaccination, and the TNR method that Kristin explained is the humane way to do that. It's less expensive, it's more humane, and it is what we believe is the only option that would successfully reduce the numbers of the feral cats. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Did you get that, chief?
We got that. We'll schedule that meeting.
Anyone else care to speak from the public?
Good morning, Jim Ryan.
Yes, good morning. I am Jim Ryan. I may have some comments related to Ms. Turner's later, but for right now. We've been reading and hearing lately that our hotel occupancy tax is breaking records. And that's a very good thing. One thing I'm not sure that the city is aware of is there's an obscure state statute that once a person has occupied a hotel room for 30 days, that occupancy tax goes away. Nobody seems to be real sure where this came from. There was a bill in the House this year to do away with it. It got to committee and then died. So as we are looking at it now, that's the way it still stands. There was a UT study on the Eagle Shale, the southeast Texas region, that related that as many as 70 to 75% of the hotel rooms there had qualified for this exemption. In other words, the tax was no longer being paid. This is something we may not be looking at in the future if we have a lot of people coming in and staying for a lengthy period of time. And I think we need to start planning on that. It may have a significant effect on our budget, and I just wanted to make sure council was aware of that.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any more public comment? We want to speak to anything that's not on the agenda. If not, I will ask for anyone on the council. Does anyone on the council have anything that they want to speak about that is not on the agenda? Or do you have, do you want to pull anything off of the consent for the regular agenda? If not, let's move into the consent agenda. If no one has a problem with the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
We have a motion to approve it as presented and a second from Mrs. Former. Any further comment? If not, I will call for the vote. All of those in favor of the approval of the consent, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We now move to the regular agenda. And the first thing on this is the executive, but we're going to hold this because we usually do our executive meetings at lunch so that we don't hold things up so much. So Jim and Jim, we'll talk about this when we get ready to break for lunch. Hold your comments until then, and we will read these and then visit about them. So now we go to the public hearing and the comment. This is item number four. It's consideration of approving an amendment to the Vision Plan component of the San Angelo Comprehensive Plan Update adopted in 2009, specifically properties located between 43rd Street to the north, Coliseum Drive to the east, 40th Street to the south, and Great Creek Road and Chadburn Street to the west, in northwestern San Angelo. And we will have the presentation by interim senior planner Jeff Heinz. You've got the floor.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Good morning, Mayor and Council. As you'd stated, this is a Vision Plan Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, Vision Plan portion. A notification is not required for this particular request. This is excerpt of what the Vision Plan is calling for now in this particular area. The white-pink color you see on here is a neighborhood center intended for higher residential development, higher density residential development. Question?
Mr. Mayor, I ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we go any further, since there are four new people, and I'm going to be five because I'm not remembering, could you just describe the purpose of the Vision Plan for us right quick?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, the Vision Plan works with the Comprehensive Plan in terms of planning staff and planning commission's recommendations to this council for zone changes. State law mandates the Vision Plan be followed whenever folks do a zone change. So if someone was requesting, say, industrial isn't a color you see in this particular area, it would be gray. If someone requests a zone change to industrial, this plan really guides the council and planning commission as well as staff when recommending land use decisions to folks that come in. That being said, the yellow on the map here indicates neighborhood for residential development. The lighter green you see is rural-type development for lower intensity, lower density residential development. And the red color you'll see is commercial for the higher intensity development that would be a little bit more intense than a neighborhood center. This is a current zoning map of the area. You can see there's, the darker shaded purple is CGCH zoning or C2 zoning from previous zoning maps. It's a holdover. This area here is the Coliseum. It's zoned as a planned development. And then the other lighter yellow color on here is single-family residential, and the lighter green again is our ranch and estate zoning district. The white pink is a neighborhood commercial. In terms of the Vision Plan Amendment, the city council may approve this as presented, remand back to the planning commission for further discussion, deny the proposed Vision Map Amendment on a property-by-properity basis, or you may modify what the planning commission came up with as well and make that the final decision. And another option not listed here is to table this for further discussion. The process that staff does whenever we do one of these amendments is a field survey of the area. Planning staff did drive through the area to observe lot by lot what was actually going on, on the properties there. We discussed and consulted with engineering, stormwater, water utilities, MPO, and Tech Dot. Data entry, discussion, and observations and findings were discussed at the planning commission level. We presented them with research regarding historical land use patterns, aerial photos of the area, past zoning history, and an examination of the Vision Plan for strengths, weaknesses, and perhaps other opportunities. The proposed amendment was based upon data and findings from that. Staff isn't recommending any changes at this time, however, the planning commission at the April meeting did recommend adding a neighborhood center, expanding that east by a vote of five to one. This is just a land use map of the area. We went through and categorized, and it does cut off on the bottom. I apologize for that. We went through and categorized all of these. The yellow is the lower density, medium-density residential, and the darker green is the low-density residential. The orange color you'll see on here is vacant residential. It's of a lower density, the way it's zoned. And the lighter blue on here is vacant commercial property at this time. For those of you that like charts and numbers, here is a representation of those, of that map regarding the parcels as well as the percentage of land area that was included in the background packet as well. You see there's a lot of lower-density residential. This area really changes drastically once you move west from Chadbourne Street. There's several vacant residential opportunities as well as commercial opportunities at this time. This is an aerial photo of the area from late, from summer of 2011, and you can see there are several vacant areas along Chadbourne that are currently zoned for commercial-type development. This area here is the area that was discussed at the last meeting, just across the street from the Coliseum. This is a thoroughfare plan excerpt from the Comprehensive Plan document as well. The dashed red indicates a future projection. The street does not exist at this time. The red designation is an arterial street. The lighter blue you'll see on here is defined as a collector's street. This is what the planning commission recommended to the city council to do is to expand the neighborhood center from neighborhood. It's currently envisioned to be neighborhood just east of here, this area here, to a neighborhood center. The basis for staff's recommendation on this is the neighborhood center was already located at a future key node, if you remember back to the thoroughfare plan. The street network at this time isn't fully improved at this time. It's not set up to handle the traffic that a collector's street would call for. In some cases, a whole driving lane is missing from those collector's streets near the Coliseum. It's very narrow. So staff would be hesitant to introduce the opportunity for future commercial development in that area at this time when we know there's issues with the traffic. In addition, this is a gateway to a major entertainment venue and to the community as well. So the land use in that area is very important. We wouldn't want a scrapyard or open storage, that type of thing, on a main gateway into the community for a major entertainment venue. The present anticipated development patterns of the area are certainly something that staff took a look at. We don't anticipate this area changing drastically. It's very rural. There's a lot of room for commercial and residential development at this time. The census data that was pulled for the area indicates our study area had about 170 people living at it at the time of the 2010 census. There's a lot of room for infill development, and there's multiple acres of commercial development that are going to underutilize at this time. With that, if there's any questions that this council has for me, I'll be happy to address those in the best I can.
So the staff recommendation is no action at this time, delete it like it is?
Yeah, just delete it as it is.
The planning recommendation is to add some commercial area?
Yeah, this neighborhood center for lower-intensity commercial or higher-density residential, be it zero-lot line homes, that type of thing.
But staff says that's not necessary.
We think it's set up perfectly right now.
Marty, this is your area. I would like for you to make a motion either way and give your feelings on it, sir.
Well, I'm very concerned about allowing big trucks to drop, to come on to 43rd in front of the Coliseum. And I also think as people come to the Coliseum, you know, we only have, our first impression is what people remember. I move that we take no action.
Go ahead, second? Second. At this time, I will open it up to, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can I make a comment?
You may.
I'm just curious about something, and I want to be clear. On your data that you sent to the council under the history and background, it says that on January 28, the planning commission directed planning staff to examine a series of properties. Isn't that the planning staff asked the commission? Because the planning commission wasn't asking you to do this. Y'all brought it to them and asked them to approve you doing it originally.
Correct. We'd had a request from Mr. Murray. Mr. Bill Murray had come in and requested staff. He was looking to do a zone change. We'd let him know that the zoning he was looking for may not work with neighborhood. He was looking for a commercial designation there.
Well, I just find it a bit misleading when you're reading the material that, oh, the planning commission, which is the board, instigated this and started this when in fact it was the planning department. And it reads...
Mr. Murray would come to us, and I apologize for the confusion. We didn't look to change it, but Mr. Murray had come to us with that request, and we brought it to planning commission. I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Open it up to the floor. Do we have any public comment on this item? Well, I agree with Marty. I don't think we need to change anything, and I don't want those big trucks out there either. So I guess it's time to call for a vote. Charlotte?
Well, we do have trucks out there using the Coliseum parking lot, and we need to be reminded that we grant things like that from time to time, and that justifies the trucks being out on that street or that road.
Yeah, there's a lot of trucks out there.
Yes.
There's a lot of trucks all over roads out there that were not designed for trucks, and it's become a very, very serious and a dangerous situation. And I personally am not for making it any worse. I do have a motion on the floor that we take no action on this. I have a second. If there is no further comment from the council, if there is no further comment from the public, I will call for the vote. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will take no action on that item. The next thing is number five. This is the first public hearing and consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 12 Exhibit A zoning ordinance for Conan ordinances, City of San Angelo, Z1320, David Jensen. Do I need to read all of this, Ms. Bowling, or is that enough?
I think you should read all of it.
Okay. An ordinance amending Chapter 12 Exhibit A of the Code of Ordinances, City of San Angelo, which said Exhibit A of Chapter 12 adopts zoning regulations, use districts, and a zoning map in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan by changing the zoning and classification of the following property to wit: 1650 Iowa Avenue, 1649, and 1650 Nebraska Avenue, located at the East Corner Louts at the intersection of Nevada Drive and Iowa Avenue and Nevada Drive and Nebraska Avenue. This property specifically occupies the Capitol Heights addition, Section 5, Block 6, Lot 42, and Block 11, Lot 1, and Lot 26, in southwest San Angelo, changing the zoning classification from zero-lot line, twin home, and townhouse residential RS3 to single-family residential RS1 district, providing for severability and providing a penalty. And again, Jeff Heinz.
I want to, again, we sent 10 notifications for this particular request. None of those were returned to staff. This is a map to kind of orient you with the property. As you head down Cox Lane, there's the field that's currently out of the city limits. Nickherbach Road further in the distance, and there's an established neighborhood in this area, in this area where the subject properties are currently developing at this time. Here's a close-up view of the properties. An aerial photo from 2009, as you'll see from the site photos, the area definitely does not look like this. The Vision Plan for this area is calling for neighborhood-type development, and this request is consistent with that. As promised, there are houses on the ground, contrary to the aerial photo that I'd shown you. This is looking south on Nevada Drive, east along Iowa Avenue. You can see some of the houses are just being currently constructed at this time. And then looking northeast at the subject property, right here in the foreground. And then looking north along Nevada Avenue again. This is just an example of some of the zero-lot line homes in the area. This is what the property is currently zoned for. This is an example of some of the single-family residences in the area. Planning staff does recommend approving the requested zone change, and the planning commission recommended approval by a six-to-zero vote at the June 17 meeting. The criteria of the application that the council must consider when considering a zone change is, is the zone change compatible with the plans and policies of the city? Is it consistent with the intention, purposes of the zoning ordinance? Compatible with the surrounding area? Would any changed conditions require amending the Vision Plan? The effect on the natural environment, a community need, and development patterns of the area? Staff did find that RS1 zoning allowed for conventional, single-family detached housing. The RS3 would not. It requires a house be built on one of the property lines. RS1 would require that house to be centered. The applicant is the property...
property owner in this case, and did come to staff looking to build different type of housing on these lots. We did find this to be consistent with aspects of the vision plan and compatible with the existing development patterns of the area. It met, the lots currently meet all aspects of the zoning ordinance. They're ready to be built on today. It's less intensive zoning than RS3. It allows for more open space. There's a couple of alternatives. This is what the proposal would do in terms of the zoning. It would, you know, bridge the single-family residential that already exists west of Nevada Drive, east of Nevada Drive, and be a transition into the RS3 zoning. And with that, if there's any questions, I'll elaborate further.
So, the question is, is do we go from RS1, from RS3, that is currently zoned, to RS1, eliminate the zero lot line, let them build in the middle, and that is the request?
Correct.
Okay. I think, I think this is in your area, isn't it, Rodney? Would you make a motion one way or the other and defend it, please, sir?
I will make a motion that we approve this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any council?
Could you back up to the map, please?
Sure. Tell me when to stop.
The, not that one, because I'm upside down on that one. Okay, just, I'll ask the question. Instead of looking at the map, this request is at the back of the subdivision? It's not up at the front of the subdivision?
Correct. Yeah, there's a-
It's at the back. And how far in yards or miles is that to Jackson Street? I mean, how far does it go? Does the builder own the land that goes all the way back there? The reason I'm asking is, up at the front, you've got the zero-lot line and the duplexes and stuff. It's a buffer zone to the single-family, and I was just curious about the buffer zone on the, it's on the back end instead of the front end. So, I was curious as to how far the, there you go. That's what I was looking for.
Jackson Street will run, it's even off of this excerpt. Jackson Street is a ways off this way. Cox Lane comes through here is probably the closest street, but it is somewhat far off. Then the single-family residences exist in this area, and the RS3 is here. So, it provides even more of a transition than-
I just had it in my mind as to being to the front of the addition, and it's not. It's to the back, so.
Yes, ma'am.
No, any problems?
Are you satisfied?
I'm satisfied.
Any other council?
I just-
Statements? Johnny?
I have a que, explain to me the zero-lot line. I'm not, I'm not understanding what you mean by that.
Sure. As, I'm trying to get closer here. Like, in a single-family residential district, you can build your house somewhere in the middle of the lot and preserve five feet on each side with the zero-lot line. You put your house on the lot line and preserve 10 feet on one side. So, you still maintain the same separation. The RS3 does allow for a reduced front yard, so the houses could be a little bit closer to the front. In an RS3 zone, the RS1 zone mandates a 25-foot setback, where in RS3, you're just required a 15-foot setback from the front property line.
Okay.
Are you satisfied?
I am.
Any other comments from council? Winkie?
Just a quick comment or two. I will compliment you when I think you've done something right, and I think you have here. It's been my opinion and observations in the past that the city planning department has been all too eager to downzone, which is to more intensive use, as opposed to upzoning, as we call it in the real estate business, which is a less intensive use. And so, here, you're zoning for a less intensive use, and I like that. But I also need to tell you what my attitude is about buffers. And I was involved in the comprehensive land use plan when it was done about 10 years ago, or a little more. You weren't here at the time. But anyway, buffers are really important, and I think this council believes that. And I've gotten into it with your department in the past, because you, your department takes the position that an eight-foot opaque fence is a buffer. Well, to me, that is not a buffer that is contemplated by the comprehensive land use plan, as it was constituted when I was involved in that and as a member of the city council. So, I just want to remind you that let's just don't do any more of these eight-foot opaque fences and say that that takes care of all the problems, because it does not.
No, I tend to agree with you there. You're, you're on the right track, and I certainly, you know, I've read through the comprehensive plan in that section and found where you're, you're getting at, and would agree that a fence wouldn't certainly qualify roadways. You know, less intensive uses are much better buffers than a fence.
Very good.
Anything else? Anything from the public? Anyone want to comment on this from the public? If not, we have a motion on the floor that we approve this as it is presented. We have a second. And if there's no further comment, I will ask for the vote at this time. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Put a 7-0 on that one, please, ma'am.
Number seven, okay.
Looks like we're going to number six now. This is the first public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 12 Exhibit A of the Code of Ordinances, City of San Angelo, Z1321 Clark Wilson. An ordinance amending Chapter 12 Exhibit A of the Code of Ordinances, City of San Angelo, Texas, which said Exhibit A of Chapter 12 adopts zoning regulations, use districts, and a zoning map in accordance with the comprehensive plan by changing the zoning and classification of the following property to wit 3704, 3712, 3720 North Chadbourne, located directly southeast of the intersection of North Chadbourne, West 37th, Coliseum Drive, and 175 feet northeast of the intersection of North Chadbourne and East 37th, more specifically occupying approximately two acres out of the Mathur Edition, number two portions of Block 11 and 12, including the north 79.45 feet of South 290, of South, 229.45 feet of the west parts of Block 11 and 12, the north 70.8 feet and south 300.25 feet of the west part of Blocks 12, 11 and 12, and the south 170 feet of north, 303 feet of west, 318.83 feet of Blocks 11 and 12, in northwest San Angelo, changing the zoning classification from a general, commercial, heavy commercial, CGCH, and single-family residential RS1, to a general commercial, CG district, providing for severability and providing a penalty. A.J. Fawver, take it away.
I'm glad you get to read that caption, and I don't have to.
I was gonna ask, Mayor, if you would repeat that.
I just barely did get, Peter, Peter Piper picked the pick, I just barely did get through it the first time.
You made it. That's what counts. On this particular request, we sent 23 notifications as required by state law. We did receive two in favor of the request, and we did not receive any in opposition to the request. I'll show you in just a moment the properties who returned those in favor. First to orient you, this is in far northern San Angelo. These properties are just north of the intersection of East 37th Street with Chadbourne, and just south of the intersections of both Coliseum Drive and 39th Street with North Chadbourne Street. And then here's a closer look of the property with the current zoning. One of the first things that your notice will be drawn to is that this is a variety of lots that have a split zoning designation. The frontage on these lots is currently zoned CGCH, as Mr. Hince mentioned in his presentation. That is a holdover from a previous zoning ordinance. We also have a section of these lots that are zoned CG or general commercial, and we also have a strip of RS1 zoning. The property owner in this case is seeking to replat these properties to create one singular lot, and thus, it's in their best interest to create one singular zoning. And so, the zoning request, as the mayor just mentioned, is for general commercial for the entire property. Here's an aerial photograph of these lots. As you can see, the northernmost section is currently vacant. The indication to us by the property owner is that he seeks to do an expansion of this existing self-storage warehouse facility, which is located on the southernmost portions of these lots. Again, all of these lots have direct frontage onto North Chadbourne Street. This is an excerpt from the vision plan. The red designates that it is intended to develop as commercial property. The CG request in this case does match with that being a commercial designation, although it is much less intensive than the current CGCH portions of the lots. It's timely that we just had a discussion about buffers, because this is especially applicable in this case, too. I'll go back for a second, and what you may notice is to the north, there is an existing neighborhood that has been in place for some time. And so, transitioning into this neighborhood, the CG district has much less intensive activities than the CGCH. The two lots in green here designate property owners who returned notifications in favor of the subject request. One of those, of course, is the property owner. We do have a neighbor to the north that also indicated their support of this request. Just a few photographs. This is looking north down North Chadbourne Street. The subject property is here to the right. In the foreground, you can see some of the existing storage warehouses. And just behind that, it's difficult to see, but that is the vacant lot that is also part of the request. This is looking south down North Chadbourne, and as you look down the stretch of street, you can see some of the mix that has emerged along this street. You have some contracting-type activities of a more industrial nature mixed with residences. And to illustrate that, here is the subject property. This is looking east from that segment of street. But then, as you look due west, you see some of the residences I referred to earlier. Planning staff does recommend approval of the change. The planning commission also recommended approval unanimously at their meeting on June 17th. Mr. Hince has already reviewed the criteria, so I won't go through those again, but just know that we looked at the same criteria for this request. And also, in looking at our comprehensive plan, it does call for, again, commercial at this area, which is consistent. Rezoning this to sort of a lesser commercial designation will not only correct the issue of split zoning for the property owner at their request, but it also accomplishes a specific goal of the comprehensive plan, which is to rezone any CGCH, which is immediately adjacent to a neighborhood. So, this does get us to that point. As I mentioned earlier, the proposed zoning is also less intensive than what is existing, keeping in mind that nearby neighborhood, but it does meet the needs of the requestor or the applicant at this time. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you now.
So, the property is now CGCH, and the property owner has approved, he, he is in agreement with reducing this from CGCH to CG?
It's a combination, actually, of CGCH, CG, and RS1. So, he is requested to unite all of those properties under the CG zoning.
Mr. Self, this is in your area. Make a motion and defend, please, sir.
Well, when, when you have multiple zones, what, what happens on the R1 property if, if he were to try to build something like it is right now?
If it met the dimensional standards for an RS1 district, you could do so. But in this case, and I'll go back to the map, it's a very small sliver. It's actually, I believe, about 30 feet by about 130 feet. So, it's actually not even large enough to build upon.
But, but he could build on the front CG, but he, he could not encroach into the RS1 area, or?
In this particular request, he's actually asking to change all of these properties to CG, including that sliver, which would make it buildable.
Yes, ma'am. But if, if we did nothing, and then he decided to build on the front part, he, he could not encroach into the, I'm just asking.
Yes, you're correct.
Okay. All right. Well, I move that we accept the zone change.
Second.
I've got a motion to accept it as presented, and a second. Now, I would like to see if there's any council. Ms. Faw, Charlie?
I just have a question or a statement. Mr. Valenzuela, this is about the fifth time that I have requested when we send out sheets for information or comments from the public that they be included in the packet. I didn't find it in my packet. It's not here. I, I don't care one way or the other, whether people are for it or against it, but it is a way to know how our citizens feel about what we're doing. And again, it's not in our packet.
Okay.
I apologize. It was submitted with the report, and I have the originals, if you'd like to review those.
We'll make absolutely sure that those are under in the future. Okay.
Any other comment from council? Mr. Self?
Mayor, that was actually my comment, also the question of where this area notification of they sent them out, and yea or nay. So, that, that was my question also.
We do typically provide those, so I apologize.
Anyone from the public wish to speak to this? If not, we have a motion to approve as presented. We have a second. With no further comment from the council, I will call for the vote. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mark that one 7-0 as well, please, ma'am.
Keep telling me it's a bad football game.
Let's go to number seven. This is the first public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance annexing approximately 24.484 acres situated immediately west, southwest of San Angelo, and encompassing a vacant 24.484-acre tract extending northwest from Mills Pass Drive, and located directly west of an 8.995-acre tract annexed to the city limits on March 5, 2013, that comprises the proposed Prestonwood Edition, Section 2. Ms. Fawver?
This is a third in a series of hearings that this council has had regarding the annexation request on this property. If you approve the ordinance upon its first reading today, we will be bringing you a second ordinance, I'm sorry, a second hearing, rather, of the same ordinance on August the 6th. The subject property is in far southwest San Angelo. You may recall, in recent months, we have done another annexation in the same area on a property which is immediately adjacent and just east of this subject property. Both the area that was annexed previously by the council and the area which is the subject of today's discussion are intended to become part of the Prestonwood Edition, remnant of which you can see to the southeast on this map. It is intended to be neighborhood-type development, and we have received applications to continue with this development if the annexation is approved. Here is a survey of the subject property, showing it to be, again, just under 25 acres in size. As you can see, it does have frontage along Mills Pass Drive, and is just west of Southland. We had two public hearings as required by public law. We had those on June 4th and June 18th. We did not receive any comments from the public at those hearings. The property that is just east of this property was annexed to the city limits on March 5th. So, this is a timely request, again, indicates the desire to build and construct homes in this specific area. One thing I will mention is that when we are looking at an annexation ordinance, a required component of that ordinance is what we call the service plan, which specifically itemizes the types of services which the city will extend to the property owner when and if annexed. We did include that in your background report. I'll give you the highlights. We did provide notification to a variety of parties to get their input, to make sure that the service plan was compatible with the area, and that no capital improvement contributions were required at this time. Externally, that included parties such as different public utility groups, for example, Atmos, Southern Link, WTU, et cetera, Tom Green County, the area fire, volunteer fire departments, and SAISD. Internally, we visited with a variety of departments, including all of the development-related groups, the police and fire, water utilities, and other infrastructure-related groups, none of which had any comments to add. The service plan components very briefly speak to public safety protection. That includes police and fire, as well as EMS service, waste collection, water and wastewater maintenance, street maintenance, and maintenance of public facilities and parks. Again, you'll notice in this particular service plan, we're emphasizing maintenance only, because we don't find at this time that there are capital expenditures which are deemed necessary. The developer, when developing this section, will include the extension of the water and sewer mains, as well as the streets. Here is an aerial photograph of that property. Again, just to, to remind you, we're just north, I'm sorry, just southeast of Sherwood Way. You'll remember that there is a fire department building which is in close proximity, so that is not an issue that we need to be concerned about at this time. That particular tract is called out on this map. We also included a map for you showing the water and wastewater infrastructure in this area, and as you can see, there are mains available to be extended to this particular development. The comprehensive plan does provide some guidance to us on annexation, and there are three particular points that are relevant to this instance. One of those talks about annexing plans where there are extensive development that is either occurring or about to occur. The reason for that is you would like to be able to guide that development as it occurs, and this is a perfect scenario for that. As I mentioned, we do have an intent by the property owner, very clearly, to construct a residential subdivision. The comprehensive plan also goes on to talk about the best areas for annexation, being those with realistic potential. Again, very relevant, since the goal here is immediate development of the property. And then lastly, the plan also speaks to identifying specific areas where annexation is useful and where utilities exist. And as we've showed you in some of the maps, there are utilities in existence. This developer will contribute to the city by continuing those improvements forward. With that, again, we're simply asking you to approve or consider approval of the ordinance upon first reading today, and if approval, we'll bring that back to you in the August meeting for final approval, at which time we will move forward with the actual annexation steps through the state of Texas. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
This is just a public hearing. We have, we have no, we take no action today, correct?
Today, you're actually taking action on the ordinance itself to approve it. And again, as-
It doesn't say that. It says first public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance.
Right.
I mean, if we, if it requires action, we will take it.
Yes, you're introducing the ordinance today upon first reading, and then we'll ask you to finalize it upon second reading at the next hearing. So, it's very similar to the case we- to the case we did for zoning.
Charlotte, this is in your area. Make a motion and defend.
Why, thank you, sir. I don't have a problem with it. I make a motion that we approve the first public hearing notice of this ordinance, item number seven, but I do have one little comment that, I'm sorry, I missed my notes. I covered them up. I wanted to speak on item number five, and the same thing I wanted to speak on this. I noticed on this one, you did mention stormwater covering and talk to, et cetera, and so forth, but I didn't see that on number five.
Okay.
And in that particular area, stormwater becomes a problem toward the back end of that subdivision.
You are correct.
So I really want that addressed in any building permits or whatever. So motion to approve on item seven.
Second. Anywhere?
I'll second that.
Okay, Johnny Silva seconds. Any further comment from council on this one? Do we have any comment from the public on this? If not, then I will call for the motion, and this is in favor of annexation. This is the first reading. We have a motion. We have a second. Do I have a... Say aye, if you're for it.
Aye.
That was kind of a left-handed way to get that, but anyone opposed, say nay. Number 7-0. Let's move on to this next one. This is number eight. This is consideration of adopting a resolution recommending to the Texas Department of Transportation that Concho Valley Transit District be chosen as a direct recipient for federal funds in accordance with Title 49, Subtitle III, Chapter 53, Section 5307 of the United States Code for the San Angelo urbanized area authorizing the city manager to execute any documents required to evidence the city's support of CVTD, Concho Valley Transit District as the direct recipient for federal Section 5307 funding and providing for an effective date, and this will be presented by our new finance director, Tina Bannell.
Mayor Mary, first of all.
Yes, sir.
I wasn't here at the last meeting. I don't know if she was, if Tina was formally introduced as her new finance director. We do want to welcome her aboard. She comes with great experience, especially in the auditing field, and we're very confident in her ability to do a great job. And again, welcome aboard, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome to the city of San Angelo.
And good morning, Mayor, council members.
Have the floor.
Did the mayor, did he pronounce your last name correctly?
He did, sir.
And how is it again?
Bannell.
Bannell.
I actually got it right?
Yes, sir.
Well, things are working out. Go ahead, please, ma'am.
Good start. Okay, well, this resolution just seeks to establish in writing a relationship and a procedure that actually is already in existence. But first, I'd like to give you a brief background and a little bit of history about the funding of the Concho Valley Transit District. It was created in 2006 to establish an urban rural transit district, and the interlocal agreement was between the city of San Angelo and the Concho Valley Council of Governments. This agreement was made not only to generate better efficiencies in the transit district here, but it also allowed the district to receive state and federal public funding. This funding comes from the Federal Transit Administration through the state of Texas, and under federal transportation statute, the state of Texas is the designated recipient for the funds received from the Federal Transit Administration's funding program. The term designated recipient is defined by the FTA as an entity designated to receive and apportion the amounts that are attributable to transportation management areas. The governor of Texas has delegated this authority as the designated recipient to the Texas Department of Transportation. So according to the FTA, the designated recipient may authorize another public agency to be the direct recipient of those funds. The designated recipient would then receive the funds and pass them along to the direct recipient, who's responsible for grant management, oversight, and services provided. In the past, the urban transit designated recipient was the city of San Angelo, and the direct recipient was the Concho Valley Transit District. However, in October 2012, the FTA issued new guidance that designated TexDOT as the designated recipient. And then in March of 2013, the TexDOT issued guidance requesting a local recommendation for the selection of direct recipient. Specifically, they're requesting a resolution from city council and a written opinion of council stating that the direct recipient has the legal capability to act as direct recipient for the funds. So the purpose of this resolution is to put in writing a policy that's already in practice. The CVTD has been acting as direct recipient since it was created, and this would just allow for a seamless flow of operation and allow them to continue to receive the federal funds. We recommend that the resolution be passed so that they can continue to receive the federal funds, as they won't be able to draw down fiscal year 13 funds until it's passed.
Anyone in the council care to make a motion and defend it?
Well, I would like to ask a question. The resolution, I can't open it in either fashion. If I go in the back door, it says cannot open, and if I just go back too, so the resolution, I don't have.
You want to read mine?
Do you have it?
I do.
Well, have you read it?
I did.
Okay, cool. I'm fine. Motion to approve.
Anyone want to second it?
I'll second that.
Mr. Silva. We have any comment from the council on this? Any comment from the public? Mr. Turner?
Yes, my name is Jim Turner, and this is something that probably the council needs to get more involved with as far as the public transportation here. When the city merged to the old bus company with the county and Concho Valley Council of Governments, Rural Transit Authority, there were certain promises made and a certain amount of oversight was expected, and there was supposed to be improvement for the citizens on the public transportation, being able to use the bus to get to work, for example. A lot of that hasn't happened. I know you can't take and deal with that as part of this item, but I think it would be great for the city council to actually review the performance of this agreement because it really hasn't met the expectations that were put on it when this merger happened back in 2006. And it's about time that some of these actions started moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I know that just, what, three or four meetings ago, we appointed some new members to this transit board. I guess, have they all resigned now? I don't know who our members are. You?
I'm one of them, but my problem is I get the notices after the fact of the meeting. They're mailing them out. They mail one to my house, and then the one that goes to the city. I always get it the week after the meeting's already occurred.
Well, that's a way to have a real seamless meeting.
True. I believe that there are two vacant spots on that board right now, and the next meeting will be August 14th, from what I've been told.
Okay. So we will get someone else on?
I believe they're working on filling those slots.
Okay, very well. Well, we'll take care of that, Turner. We'll get some board members on there so that we have some input. You want to talk again? Make it quick.
Yes, I think what we need is to actually have a representative of the transit district come before the city and city council and explain what they're doing. It's not enough to just have a member on their board. They need to just address the council as a whole on the progress and plans that they're trying to make. I've been to the meetings. I'm one of about two or three people that's ever been to one of those meetings from the general public. Nothing goes on there of any substance unless somebody's making noise, and a lot of the concerns I have and council expressed at the time this was done have just been ignored because of lack of funding and lack of emphasis. And the only way to get that is to get them, explain themselves for the council as a whole and the public. Thank you.
Chief, did you get that?
Yes, we did, and we can definitely have him come and do a presentation here. That's not our problem.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the resolution. I think Mr. Silva seconded. Any other comment from council? Any other comment from the public? If not, I will call for the vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 7-0. What say, let's deal with number nine and get Mr. Solis, and then let's take a break. Is that all right with everybody?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's deal with number nine. Public hearing and consideration approving the 2013 annual action plan for use of community development block grant, CDBG, and home investment partnerships funds, and authorizing city manager to execute the applications, required certifications, related documents, and annual funding agreements for $739,584 of CDBG funds and $245,399 of HOME home grant funds. Mr. Solis?
Mayor, council. The annual action plan is our petition for federal funds for both CDBG and home grant funds. This is the last opportunity for citizens to make comments on the allocations for this grant year. The, it is an annual HUD requirement, and it's due August 15th. The plan certifies that we're adhering to all federal requirements, such as fair housing, anti-discrimination, and maintaining a free drug environment. It addresses key interest items such as housing for the homeless, special needs, barriers to affordable housing, lead-based paint abatement, and those kind of things. But most importantly, the plan documents the city's projects, allocations, and expenditures that the council approved during the deliberation meeting we held last month. We did advertise in the Standard Times, and we have made copies available throughout the city, and we're asking council to approve the plan as we rid it, as written.
Do I have a motion to accept or deny?
I make a motion that we accept.
Have a motion to accept. We have a second. Any further comment from council? Do we have comment from the public? If not, I will... Mr. Seag, step forward, please, sir. Tell us who you are, please, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Jerry Seag, and I'm one of the leaders of WTOES. Good morning, Mayor, council, and staff. We're WTOES. We were there at all of the public meetings that was presented. Mr. Solis presented his program, and he explained to us about not having as much money as he had last year to work with, and he explained how he distributed the money, and everybody was very satisfied, and we think he did a great job. And he spread the money out, and he showed us exactly how he did it, and we're very pleased that he got as much money as he could to everybody that he could. And we'd like to commend him, and he's doing a great job for the city and the people, and we thank him very much, and we thank you people very much. Thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
And I'll say amen to that as well. I like your presentations. They're clear. They're concise.
They're quick.
And they're quick. That's really like that.
As long as you spend the money well.
All right, we have a motion. No further, if no further comment, I will ask for an approval. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, we hitting these seven most today, aren't we? Let's take about 10 or 15. Let's call this meeting back to order, and we will take up with number 10 on the regular agenda. This is the consideration of approving a request for permit, and it is 1026, City Secretary. A request for permit for the transport and disposal of garbage, trash, and debris within the San Angelo city limits and any service that is allowed by state law or city ordinance that does not conflict with the city's contract with Republic Waste Services of Texas and the exclusive rights granted by that contract to Republic Waste Services of Texas for the following companies, and authorizing the city manager to execute any necessary related documents. Texas Disposal Systems, Inc., Texas Alloys, Inc., DBA, Acme Iron and Metal Company. Mr. Kelton, you are on, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council. We did have two requests for permit, and it's basically just like stated in the caption. They have requested the, for a permit so they can actually utilize our streets and utilize our landfill to transport and dispose waste. They primarily are looking to use, or commercial waste outside the city limits within Tom Green County, and then, of course, the counties, they stated within economically feasible driving distance to the city landfill. So that's basically it in a nutshell. Do y'all have any questions for me? If not, I know Bobby Gregory with Texas Disposal Systems is here with us today to answer any questions y'all might have from them, and he also has some others of his team that are here as well today, too.
I guess, do we start with the council, or do we start with the public? Let's start with the council. Winkie, you start off, please, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, Shane, in connection with these two requests for permits, what is Republic Waste Services' position on these? Do you know?
I can't speak to their positions themselves. I know that we do, they are, they do have our franchise agreement for everything, for commercial and residential waste inside the city limits, and I do know that they do service and do have contracts outside of the city limits with other counties that are contiguous to Tom Green and do service residents outside the city limits of San Angelo, but I have not spoken to them specifically about their interest outside of what we actually have contracted.
You know, if we let the public comment first on this, we may not have near as many questions on the council level if they kind of tell us, because we've got all of them represented here. Why don't we go ahead and have public comments so that we know, so that we have pros and cons on both sides, and then when we have all the information, we'll talk about it amongst ourselves.
Is that okay?
That's fine, ma'am. That's fine, ma'am.
Let's have public comment first, because I know this is going to become somewhat ponderous at this point, I'm sure, so let's open it up to...
Since Republic is our existing contractor, I would like to hear from them if they have an interest in this as well, or how they feel about it, since this wasn't a request for bids. This was just someone phoning and wanted to make application.
Yeah, and application for permit is allowable by city ordinance 11.403, so it is allowable by city ordinance for another hauler to make permit to do this. And like I said, their request is not to infringe upon anything that is within the city limits that we do have contracted with Republic Services. It's only for those things that are outside of our existing contract. But did you want to hear from Robert?
Yeah, let's open it up to the public.
I didn't see him.
Good morning. My name's Robert Searls with Republic Services. I'm here with Brittany Ragana, our controller here, and we can answer any questions. As far as our position goes, we're happy that it's, that we're protected on the inside city limit hauling of waste service, and I understand TDS's interest in this area because of the growth that's gonna, that we foresee in this, that we're forecasting in this area, in and around this with the oil boom. The only thing that I can let you guys know is that we can handle the increased volume. It's one where, the concern that I have is when you start having more than one permitted hauler come in, then your precious landfill gets filled up faster. And right now, we've got about 17 years of life left in the current area where the landfill is, and it's, we'll have to start permitting for the property across the street to further the landfill. 17 years is going to turn into 14 years or 13 years. I don't know. It's hard to say. But the city is exposed to, you know, having waste transferred in if you grant the permit. It's up to you guys. We can handle competition, no problem. Outside the city, we do it with TDS and other areas. But my only concern and what I just want to share with you is the life of the landfill. So if you have any questions for me or Brittany, I'll be happy to answer them.
Could I ask a question of Republic? Do y'all handle the Dove Creek area? Is that part of your service with the city, or is that outside the city?
That's outside the city.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Johnny?
Robert, I've heard time and time again this word contiguous. So what does Republic own or operate around the city of San Angelo? What contiguous area do you guys service?
Well, like Shane mentioned, we have about a dozen contracts that we've had for a very long time in counties outside. We have municipalities that are in counties contiguous to Tom Green, Ballinger. We have Eden and several others. We go as far as Junction. So it's one where there's, if it's within 100 miles, then we're happy to take care of that service for those folks.
I'm sorry, no. I was clearing my throat, but I do want to make a comment. As far as the, we do have an ordinance that specifies as far as which counties, you know, the garbage trash can be brought in from. So we do, we are protected in that fashion as far as making sure that we're not bringing in trash, let's say, from Austin or somewhere where it really would fill up the landfill. But what we have at this point are really the smaller, the rural communities, the counties also. And again, that is, there is a limitation on ordinance as far as we can come into our landfill.
Sorry, could I understand you to say there's a limitation of the tonnage that, say, Robert Lee, Ballinger?
Not per se the tonnage, just the which counties we can actually bring in.
But there's not a limitation to the tonnage that we accept?
No, not for... No, not from those areas, no, but again, that's the, I believe that's the reason why the ordinance was created that way, so there wouldn't be a limitation.
Any other questions? Winky?
Yes, do you, Robert, do you, have you seen any numbers on how much it would cost the city of San Angelo to initiate a new landfill after this one fills up?
Well, let me answer that by saying I'm not a landfill engineer, and that's probably be better answered by someone else.
But these things are, I know Shane may want to opine on this, but these things are expensive, and they are hard to get permitted, are they not?
Well, it's a process, and right now, we're, you know, we're, seventeen years is a good while, and like I say, I'm not sure what that'll turn into with setting the precedent of having more licensed haulers come in. It may not stop at TDS. It could be, you know, ongoing, and that's where, that's the only concern I have. As far as the cost goes, I mean, there's revenue on, there's added revenue that comes in as well, but it's that life of the landfill.
Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
I do want to add, and I'm sure Shane's standing back there at this point, but we have started the process, of course, for the, as far as permitting another landfill, and Shane, actually, if you want to speak to that a little bit, that'll give the council a bit of information as to what we're doing at this point.
We do on three hundred and twenty acres just north of 50th Street of the existing landfill right there that was purchased some years back for the expansion of our landfill. Talking with our consultants, our landfill consultants, and looking at different options, what's available to us with the oilfield industry coming this way, we've started looking at possibility of looking at a, of changing our classification, or permitting the new land to maybe accept and take some industrial waste from the oilfield as well, if that's a possibility out there as well. But the permitting process normally takes about two years to permit a new, a new piece of land, and the costs can range anywhere from one to two million dollars, in that range, depending on whether it's, you know, whether it's challenged, or if there's any issues out of Austin with it. And by the time you do all the sampling and the groundwater, you know, studies and all the things that you have to do there to get a new landfill permitted, that's kind of roughly, I mean, I know that's a large estimation in there between one and two million, but that's normally about what it takes to have one permitted.
Yeah, but that's not the whole cost, or entire cost of getting one equipped and ready to go, is it?
No, sir, it's not, and what, and a lot of the, and I don't have the experience, because this landfill's been here since about the time I was born, so I don't have the experience with this landfill, but other landfills, as you look for them to be developed, are actually, most of the time, the city, if the city acquires a permit, or if the, even a private entity wants to get a permit to build a landfill, they, the entity themselves, who we would, if we were to contract with Republic Services for all of our issues, we would, we would contract with them to actually prepare the site and to get it ready to accept waste. That would be a part of their contract, and that's standard across the industry.
Well, I'm just a little surprised there hasn't been a discussion as to what the ultimate cost would be of this landfill. The city is fairly poor, really, and we got two hundred and seventy million dollars borrowed already, if not more. Not, that doesn't even include our unfunded liabilities that we've got for healthcare and other stuff. You know, I just, I'm concerned as to where this money would come from and how much it might be.
We have, we've started, and actually, last year in the budget process, and actually it goes back as far as two years ago, we started in the budget process, working with council at that time to establish a rate structure that would, over the next, over the remaining lifespan of the landfill, actually collect enough from fees charged at the landfill to actually pay to not only one, get the new land permitted, but also expand the gas, gas collection system as it's needed to be in the future, and also to take care of the landfill, the maintenance issues at the landfill for the next, for the thirty years after it closes, final closure, post-closure costs. We have actually started within our fee structure to account for all this stuff, so by the time that we do have to close the existing landfill, we actually have the money to pay for the new landfill, and it's, or to permit the new landfill, and to start accepting waste at that new landfill site.
Shane, if I could, if I could add, that, there was a two-part fee increase associated with that. We've implemented the first phase, right?
Yes, yes.
And so the second phase still remains?
Yes. October 1 of this year, it will.
In addition to that, the amounts that we're projecting to set aside were estimates based on what those costs were last year. If there are regulatory changes which significantly affect the cost of new permitting or operating, then those costs could change, so...
I'm still not clear what you're saying. Do you have an established trust fund that has money actually in it right now?
Not established a trust fund. We built the rates so that excess money would be collected so that it could be set aside for those future needs.
Is money set aside at this point, and how much is it?
We just started collecting that, and...
In November of this year, we started collecting the new fees to start accommodating and working towards the goal of actually having a fund balance sufficient enough within the solid waste fund to make sure that all this happens at the, at the end of the life of our current landfill.
And you feel like that, 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 those monies are properly set aside and designated solely for that purpose?
It is, they are designated to go into the, to the landfill fund, or the solid waste fund, and it's an accounting function, maybe Mike can speak better to that than I can.
It's an important distinction, that these excess monies go into that fund balance for that purpose, but they are subject to use by a future council for other issues. And so, your question about are they locked down for those future purposes? No, sir, they're not at this point. That was the spirit behind that portion of the rate increase, but a future council, like this council, could change decisions which have been made in the past. A future council could, could change those decisions also.
Mr. Mayor? Michael, about four, maybe five years ago, I can't remember which, but I could go back and look, we had an excess in our budget. It wasn't much, it was less than a half a million dollars, and it was recommended, and we talked about it at council member, at council meeting, to set aside four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go into the future landfill. That's what we had, and we talked about, and I really would like to research that information to see what it was, and yes, it was subject to council direction or whatever, but it was supposed to be designated and flagged for the future landfill. And I know you're looking blank at me, so you don't remember it, and, but if we could look at that, I would appreciate it to answer the question, but then my question to Shane is, how much contaminated product do we dispose of, or how do we deal with Shannon Hospital, the community hospital, their waste? Does it just go in the regular landfill? There's no separation?
They, no, they have to contract with another entity to dispose of medical waste. Our permit, our landfill permit doesn't allow disposals of oils or medical waste or anything like that, so those have to be contracted separately, and those are actually, those are exceptions that are granted to the carrier, that they don't have, our carrier, Republic Services, doesn't have to pick up and dispose of those, and they are contracted separately with a company that specializes in the handling of hazardous material and disposed of in a landfill. That will accept them. Ours will not.
Well, I'll, if, Mr., may I? I'll tell you just how I feel about the subject. You know, we had Trashway, and Republic came in, took them over, bought them out, and I believe we owe a certain amount of respect to our existing carrier for their exclusivity. I don't want to muddy up the waters with an outside contractor coming in and having two, three, four different people doing trash and confuse the area, confuse the people, confuse me, and filling up our landfill a whole lot faster than we have budgeted or planned or anticipate. If we were to offer, I mean, if Republic wanted the contract to do so, I'm more inclined to give it to Republic, simply because they're established, they have done a lot of things to, for the city in the way of their trial on the automatic trash receptacles. I just feel some loyalty and respect to that company, and since they have the exclusive contract with us.
Yes, ma'am, and what we're talking about is not letting these people that have requested a permit, they're just requesting to drive on our streets and to use, and to use our landfill.
That's what I don't want, is any more of the large, heavy dump trucks on our streets in conjunctions to what we already have, and that's, that's just the way I feel about it. Change my mind if you can, I'm open, but that's, I was just...
And, you know, and I think in the majority of it, and we wouldn't even, you know, and, well, of course, I guess it would depend on, you know, whether they started a recycling service or something that is allowable within ordinance and within state law. But prior to our annexation of the remainder of Bell Street and that, or, I'm sorry, Old Ballenger Highway out there, they wouldn't even have to have asked for a permit to transport at that point. It would have just been to dispose of within our landfill, because at that point in time, we didn't, Old Ballenger Highway was not annexed into our city, you know, so they could have actually traveled down Old Ballenger Highway to get to our landfill at that point. And I think that's really, I don't think they're going to be, I don't think they're going to be using our residential streets, I don't think that's their intent, I mean, because they're not going to be picking up residential trash. That is, that is exclusively Republic's contract.
I understand that and what you're saying, but I can tell you from, from my district alone, and being out on the west side of the city, and when they can't get through the intersection of Southland and Sherwood Way, or Southwest and Sherwood Way, because of the amount of trucks, and I've watched the truckers get just as aggravated, and they'll cut down Southwest, they'll cut down Southland, and they end up because of the amount of trucks that are at these intersections already. I can speak highly to that particular intersection, because I'm there, I live in that area, but College Hills and Southwest both, you know, at the loop, the truck traffic, I don't want additional big trash trucks in the area.
Okay, and currently, they have only requested for, just to use two trucks at this point, so, and those are roll-off trucks, and that's, that's all their request is at this point, to utilize. I don't know if that, you know, may not help you any at all, but that's, that's their request at this point, is just, just two trucks to utilize for the roll-off containers.
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Shane, I just have a couple of question, comments. With TDS applying, does, who does that open the door to? Anybody in the state of Texas can apply now, or what? Who's out there?
Well, I mean, by ordinance, anybody, any, any carrier that wants to could request from council a permit to utilize our streets and our landfill. It could be any carrier in the United States that actually, you know, that meets the criteria that's outlined in our ordinance.
And in conversations that I had with you last week, and I think you and I were on the same page, when we have both heard, and really, this is a question for Robert Searls, is, I've heard both sides, that Republic cannot handle the roll-off request from the outside areas, so I want to set the record straight, can you guys handle it or not? You know, that's, you know, I'm hearing both sides, so educate me.
Well, Republic's a company that operates in thirty-nine states, and our largest municipal contract is Las Vegas, and we do five thousand roll-off hauls a week, picking up compactors at the casinos, sometimes four times a day. So, we have the resources to do that, or we can, we have the resources to meet any need here, so we just, if we have to add two trucks, or four trucks, or a thousand trucks, Republic can do that, so it's a Fortune 500 company that can handle any need. We're the second largest, our parent company's the second largest in the, in the country.
Have you had to turn anybody away? I mean, I guess you can handle anybody, everybody that...
No, I mean, sometimes weather makes you late on a delivery, or some, but for the most part, if we gear up for more volume that's going to be consistent, then we can meet that need, so it's one where we're doing it already in other states, other cities, and there's no reason we couldn't do it here.
Okay.
Mr. Fleming?
Shane, the question that I have is that when we talk about the trash and the more traffic volume going through, that the trash is coming, we're not going to stop the trash. It's going, going to come, so it's either going to be Republic's trash trucks that are going to be, or roll-off trucks that are going to be taking it to the landfill, or it's going to be someone else's, right?
Yes, sir, I would, I would...
I mean, that kind of makes sense to me.
Yes, sir, it makes sense that people are going to be calling, it doesn't matter whether it's Republic, or TDS, or Acme, or whoever, they're going to be calling for service, and I would, you know, Robert and them are not going to, I wouldn't think they would turn away business, so...
No, I wouldn't think Robert would turn away any business. What, what I'm for is that free enterprise, I like having another, someone competing with them. I'm totally with Republic on the city contract, I have no problems with them, I haven't heard anything negative about them, but out in the county, which is what we're talking about out in the county, I like myself having a little bit of competition in order to keep some prices down and things like that, so I, my argument is that the trash is coming, it's going to be one of the two of them right now, and it could be three or four in the future, and to me, that's even better, because if I was, if I had an oilfield company out there, I'd be wanting to get the least expensive price to dispose of my waste. Am I, that's kind of your thinking on this also, right? Your recommendation is that we allow this, right?
To me, I don't see a, there's not a whole lot of negative or positive to the city. I'm somewhat neutral in this thing. I don't see any reason not to, but I'm, it's kind of a neutral issue for staff.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gregory? Do you want to speak to this, sir?
Could I address what, what, thank you.
Charlotte?
I understand, and I do believe in competition, but Republic already has the communities out in the counties, such as Robert Lee, Bra, other areas, they already have that, and my point being is, those trucks that are out there and come back into San Angelo, if there is someone out in the county who calls for pickup and whatnot, I just see that Republic should be able to do that and add to the trash that they've already picked up in these communities, and to me, they have that right.
I think they're talking about roll-offs, though, and it's not really going to be a matter of that. Those roll-offs are going to probably be at, my understanding is probably going to be at the job sites, and you're not going to add to, I mean, it'll be primarily the job site of where, the location that they're at. Correct, that's my understanding as well, is that we're talking about roll-offs that will be at a construction site or other sites in and around the surrounding counties, whether it's at a housing development in Cristoleville, or Braun, or wherever in these, in these surrounding counties, that would be the type of trash that they're primarily targeting at this time.
I'm, I'm all for Republic. I like Republic's contract that we have here in the city. The only thing I'm saying is that in the county, I think that a little bit of competition is not going to hurt anybody.
I don't believe or feel like that they should have the same rates.
Let's listen to Mr. Gregory. May we? Mr. Gregory?
I was looking for Mr. Gregory up here.
Thank you very much. You've set this up very well for me. Let's see how I do. If I may, take a moment just to introduce myself. I've introduced myself to some of you today. Prior to today, I don't know that I'd met any of you, although, my name is Bob Gregory, my brother and I, Jimmy, and I own Texas Disposal Systems. I own Acme Iron and Metal. I started Texalloy, that now owns Acme Iron and Metal, in nineteen seventy-two here in San Angelo. I was born and raised in San Angelo, right over here on Glenmore Drive I grew up. So, I lived here until I went off to UT, and liked Austin so much, I stayed there, but liked San Angelo so much, I bought my dad's business that he started in nineteen fifty-one, the year I was born. I bought it in nineteen eighty-four. So, for over forty years, I've been a business owner here in San Angelo. Since nineteen eighty-four, almost thirty years, I guess, I'll have to count now, but anyway, since nineteen eighty-four, I've owned my dad's business that he started in nineteen fifty-one, Acme Iron and Metal. We're an upstanding company in the, in the market, and have been a good service provider in the market in the scrap metal business. From nineteen seventy-seven, my brother and I started in the trash business that grew into recycling, composting, landfilling in Austin, and now have six hundred employees there servicing a lot of municipal contracts, one all the way out in Alpine. So, we are very interested in... So we are very interested in coming to this area. I love West Texas, I love San Angelo, it's my home, I'm here all the time, I've owned a business here since 71, I don't feel like an intruder coming in. Obviously, Republic does not want competition in the area. We compete with Republic in central Texas. We took, we, we have a contract that Republic had before, in Alpine, so I'm not hiding behind any of that, there is competition in the industry. Mr. Kelton laid out our request and what we're interested in doing very well. We have a business here, we've hauled our own waste from Acme Iron and Metal to the landfill since 1951, a long, long time, and we intend to continue doing that. There are other business, there are exempt services that are not part of Republic's contract, that, one being the Angelo State, they've put out a bid, an RFP, the bid is due in 13 days. We would, we believe, there's no question Angelo State is protected by state law, they can put out and bid that contract, just like the federal government allows Goodfellow to put out, y'all may recall, used to, for a long, long time, more services, service Goodfellow Air Force Base, and haul the waste to the city landfill, before Republic had that contract. So there are two major contracts within the city limits of San Angelo that are not part of this contract. One of them comes up for bid in less than two weeks, we would like to bid on that. We hope to have a contract, a, a permit to be able to drive on city streets if we are successful in getting the Angelo State contract, to remove all question of whether we can legally drive on city streets. Otherwise, you can talk to Mr. Kelton and, and your staff on whether we could be able to service that, we believe we can. So there are also other exemptions from the contract, including liquid waste, and scrap tires, and things like that, some of which we do. We have no intention of doing what we can't do under your contract. We would like to haul outside, waste from outside the city limits, though, into the landfill, and not have to deal with the question of whether we're interloping by coming down a city street, whether it's Old Ballenger Highway, or, or any of the other city streets, or the federal, not, there's no federal, but the state highways, or county highways in the city. So that's, we're, we're just trying to enter the market in a non-disruptive manner, to bring competition to outs, to the county, and I think it's fair to say that we won't bring any more waste here, us and Republic combined, wouldn't bring any more waste here to the landfill than Republic would anyway. There's things called waste sheds, as y'all know, you probably do know, there's a landfill or two in Abilene, Midland, Odessa, Big Springs, El Dorado. When haulers are closer to those markets, depending on the price at those landfills, they haul to those landfills. I would imagine Republic has a tendency to haul more back here, because they operate this. I own a very large landfill in Austin, I haul waste further because I own the landfill, I give myself a better rate than I give the public, that stands for reason. TDS does a lot of recycling, we're, we're a state leader in recycling on percentages. So really and truly, with TDS in the market for the out-of-city limits waste, I actually believe there would be less material coming in to the city of San Angelo landfill because of recycling, and because when we're further out, closer to El Dorado, Big Springs, Midland, Odessa, Abilene, the waste would go to those closer landfills. You have the disposal costs, and of course, you have the cost of transportation, which is the truck, the fuel, the labor, et cetera. So it's an economic issue where the waste shed flows. I believe more waste will come in to this landfill with Republic alone than it would be with TDS. I don't think what you, I don't believe that you can successfully keep out all of that waste from simply private individuals or companies in Big Lake, or, or areas around here, Barnhart, that are gonna bring waste to the landfill. It's something that you, you, you know, you ought to, you ought to consider. I think we do bring competition, we do bring recycling, we do bring more diverse ideas for recycling and composting, so I think this is a good thing for the city. I wouldn't stand before you and, and try to talk you into something that I didn't think was better, and I wouldn't tell you that it would be probably less waste coming into the landfill servicing the area, with TDS competing with, 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 with Republic, than it would if it was just Republic. We will not go out there and dig up a customer that's not already hauling, or having someone haul their waste somewhere. The waste, as you've stated correctly, is gonna go somewhere, whether it's one hauler, two haulers, or five haulers. People don't haul more just because there are more haulers. So I would, I would hope you would be able to allow us to clarify whether we could haul on city streets if we do bid, successfully bid, for the university contract here in a couple of weeks. I don't even know when the Goodfellow Air Force Base bid comes up, I, I don't, I don't have that here. But the cost of landfill permitting is a major issue, I know, I permitted one, we have a large landfill in San Angelo, in, in Austin, and it's an issue that is, is a valid concern, and we're happy to work with the city on that in any way we can, but all I can say is, the waste is coming here anyway, the more that's recycled, the more will be diverted away, the longer the landfill will, will, will last. I think that's, I think I've addressed as best I could remember the questions, please ask me any question that any of you would like.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Johnny.
Mr. Gregory, you've mentioned, you've mentioned recycling a couple of times, how do you intend to recycle by just being able to come into our streets and go to the landfill? Where does the recycling part come in?
It comes in by offering companies multiple containers. If a company has one container, and all the waste with recyclables go into one container, it goes to the landfill, generally. You have a very good recycler in the area, Butts Recycling, they do a good job. I do not know how much they service with containers out in the outlying areas around San Angelo, as far as offering containers. Recycling is much, is enhanced when containers are available, and it's convenient for people. So by us offering service out there with different containers, where they can not only put their waste, but they can also put recyclables, those recyclables would go to being recycled, rather than all going to the landfill, because they all ended up in the same container. Does that answer your question?
No, because I thought Butts only did paper, do they not just do paper? What about the plastics?
Same difference, same plastics, if it's a resident, a residential account in these other areas, TDS has a, Republic does in other markets, too, they have a single, we have a single stream recycling facility where we separate out the steel cans, the, the plastic, the glass, the, the different types of paper, and that's a long way to Austin, 200 miles.
I've been there, I took a tour of your place.
You've been there, okay, you've seen it, all right. If we're able to service municipalities in the area, and do more recycling because we offer split services, both recycling and solid waste collection in those municipalities, or for those businesses out there outside San Angelo city limits, then that would give a separation at the point, and that material doesn't go to the landfill, unless there's a MRF at the landfill like that exists in Austin. So that reduces the volume going into the landfill. We've shown, even though we own the largest landfill in, in central Texas, we've worked very, very hard to divert as much away from landfill, because we make more money by recycling and composting. So it's both recyclables of those type materials, you mentioned paper, plastic, aluminum, steel, but also yard waste. Not as much yard waste, thank God for the rain, maybe we'll have a little more out here in West Texas, but that yard waste, too, can be diverted away into composting.
So then, those items you mentioned that are recyclable, are you gonna transport those all the way to Austin, or what would you do?
It depends on the economics, we may sell them to Butts right here, if it's economically feasible, then we may just do that, do just that, to haul them to Austin. It's like the landfill question, it's all based on the economics. But more would be diverted from the landfill in any event.
And my final question really is to Shane, or whoever wants to, the, the notation, was it the possible increase in, in rates, or because of the tonnage, I wanna, I wanna tap on that, see what?
Is that, is that a question for me?
That's for Shane, I'm sorry, Mr. Gregory.
I'm happy to address it.
The increase in revenue based on, currently, if we use our existing established pricing that we have in the ordinance right now, for non-residential services, and, and the tonnage fees collected at the landfill, if you increase tonnage coming in, it just increases the amount of revenue that we receive.
Can we even talk about rates with this item, or probably not?
I would say no, but that's for the city attorney to decide.
I can, I can tell you what those, I can tell you what the existing rates are.
Well, is your, would your recommendation be to keep it, those rates the same if we brought them in, or what, what are you looking at?
We could, it's at council's discretion, it, it's whatever y'all wanna do. We, we could keep the rates the same, because we do have established non-resident rates, which is, anybody outside the city of San Angelo is charged a different rate from our own citizens, when trash is deposited within the landfill, and then, or we could look at coming back and amending the ordinance, as it, you know, as it states right now, to have a separate rate for third-party haulers. Licensed third-party haulers.
Who does the county use now, or does the county, the county residents, who?
The county, the residents out in the county are responsible for their own services, the county doesn't offer a service like that, so if you live out in the county, right now, Republic is, is it, so you pick up the phone, you call Republic Services downtown and say, can, I have trash service, if you live out in the county.
And I, I guess I'm still, Mr. Mayor, still a little confused, because if you're telling me that Republic services, services the, the city as a whole, I understand that, now you're saying that the county residents want, want to use Republic, they call Republic, I don't understand where TDS comes in, or they fit in, I, I don't, is it a, I guess the county, it's open to anybody?
Yes.
It's not a no man's land?
It's, the county, the county doesn't have a contract with any service provider for trash, whether it be residential trash, or construction trash, or anything. They, it's, it's free game, I mean, it's, any, anybody, any service provider out there that wants to collect that, or wants to provide that service and collect that, collect their trash can.
And one last one, and I'll get off my soapbox, but I'm hearing more and more, you know, of the decline shell and the oil industry, so how does that affect us? What is, is, what could possibly TDS bring in from the oil services out that's happening? What, what kind of material, or?
There is nothing they can bring into our landfill that is not municipal solid waste, we cannot, we cannot accept industrial waste, any oilfield waste like that at all, so we can't, some production company can't call up TDS and say, hey, can you come bring us a roll-off, we wanna load it up with drilling mud, or something, leftover drilling mud, we, we cannot accept that waste in our landfill.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Fleming?
One of the questions I have is, the area that you're servicing out in West Texas is Alpine, correct?
Alpine and the small towns surrounding Alpine.
And so y'all haul from Alpine to Austin now, right?
No, we operate the city of Alpine-owned landfill.
Oh, so it does?
We're a contractor there, like Republic operates your landfill.
Okay, that's the question I had.
Any other comment from the floor? Not, I'm gonna open it up for discussion to the council. I think we pretty well, this horse is almost on life support, but y'all have anything else to say, we need to talk about it. No one else says any comments, I'm entertaining, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to deny.
Got a motion to deny, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We've got a motion to deny the application, and we have a second. I guess it's time to take a vote. All of those in favor of denying the motion, please say aye.
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 To, those against, say nay.
Nay.
We have a motion five for, five against, and two for, the motion fails, do I have another motion?
Mr. Mayor?
I really need to request, and, and I may nullify that vote, but I need a five-minute break to speak with you and our city attorney.
And you asked me that, and I told you that I would allow it, and then I completely skipped over it. Need to take about five minutes, it's an attorney relationship with Charlotte and myself over some type of a possible conflict of interest, so if you will, just give us five minutes, let you step back here in the back, and we have an attorney, be right back. It's on her mother's side, it's a, it's a distant, Charlotte has absolutely no financial bearing or presence at all in any of the businesses of the Gregories, but she is a distant relative, and for the sake of propriety, so that there would be absolutely no conflict of interest, Charlotte has chosen to recuse herself before we make another vote. Now, the last vote, a motion was made, it was denied, it did not pass, so that motion's dead anyway, but Charlotte has recused herself from the other vote because of a distant relationship and family. So I am now ready to entertain a second motion.
Move for approval as presented.
I second.
I have a motion to approve this, I have a second. Any other comments? I'll call for the vote, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Two nays.
Okay, all those in favor of, raise your hand. We have Mr. Fleming, Mr. Self, myself, and Mr. Vardman Farr. Nays, raise your hand. We have Mr. Wardlaw and Mr. Silvers, as opposed, it passes four to two. Ms. Farmer, you may return. Let's move on now to number 11, which is a presentation on the North Concho River and Trails Improvement Project, Mr. White. And we running a little short on time, if we're gonna be through by two, Carl. And I didn't say anything, but we are running a little behind on time, Carl.
Yes, sir, we do have quite a bit of ground to cover, but I'll go as quick as we can. I wanna give some brief background on the overall project and, and the funding. First of all, just to look at the funding right quick, and I'm talking about all the money that was allocated towards the river improvements. We've got about $16 million, about 14 million of that is half-cent sales tax, 2 million in grants, two grants from Texas Parks and Wildlife, one for recreation elements that are part of the ongoing project, another grant for refurbishment of trails, and the addition of a few trail sections, a large grant from the San Angelo Health Foundation, $570,000 for some elements, primary landscaping and, rock landscaping, and bank stabilization around the visitor center, that's a substantial grant, another grant from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, $323,000 for bank stabilization, then a, a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts for some artwork, much of which has already been installed. I wanna give an update on the main project that's going on, but towards the end of this presentation, we'll talk about three specific topics, dead, the existing dead trees, the removal of those dead trees, the puppet golf course area, and potential to do some drip irrigation for the existing river trees. Those items are funding-related, so we'll, we'll talk about that towards the end. We're not asking for decision today, we can't ask for a decision, but we are asking for some direction in regards to the remaining funding, there is a fair amount of funding left over from the project. If that direction involves a purchase or a change order of 50,000 or more, we'll have to bring that back to you for, for consideration. Now, the scope of the project, we are doing some work basically from Bell Street to 14th Street, but the core of the project area is from Concho Avenue to about 1st Street below the, the high school. Primarily, the project includes lots of bank stabilization in that area, some of the sections have already been stabilized, it includes trail improvements, new lighting, outdoor exercise stations, public art, shaded sitting areas, the games court area, refurbished water features, and other special elements. It also includes a new trail section along the south bank of the river, on Health Foundation The overall project has included different elements, we've done dredging of the river, basically where self-redraw comes into the river. We've done dredging of the river, basically where self-redraw comes into the river, up river to about 14th Street. Some of those sections couldn't be dredged because they were too narrow and too shallow. We did it with a barge. We pumped the silt from the barge through the pipe to a settlement station pits north of 19th Street. The project has involved lots of different studies and assessments and design, and we purchased some property. One property that we purchased is between Irving and Chaburn Street, the old Edgewater Inn site, about this location, and some property north of 19th Street. The property north of 19th Street, between 19th Street and 29th Street or Eden Boulevard will allow us to make a final connection if we so choose to do, either with a trail or with a road from 19th Street to Eden Boulevard. Okay, just a quick look at the money of the current project that's going on. This isn't the overall project, but just the current construction project. The current budget is a little over $10 million. To date, we've got about $820,000 with the change orders, with all the billings and pay applications and retainage. We're technically at about 87% completion. We do have a pending pay application for about $314,000. Once that's paid, we'll be at 92% completion with the project. Just a quick look at the major change orders of the project. The biggest one is bank stabilization that was done between sulfur draw and 1st Street. We added that after we had begun the project. That was almost $700,000. The second biggest change order is repair of the pedestrian bridge. As we presented a few meetings ago, the council approved that change order to repair that existing bridge. We added some additional LED lights specifically for each under Oaks and Chadburn Bridges. We've ordered the removal of some dead trees as part of the project right now. Those trees virtually have been removed. We'll talk about others towards the end of this presentation. We've added some additional lights at some areas to brighten them up a little bit, primarily underneath Cunningham where the exercise station equipment is and underneath Oak Street where the interpretive area is. And then we had to make an adjustment to one of the stone columns. As you recall, it was in the traffic line of sight, and so we kind of made that a ghost image of a column. That's been done. And then we added an additional drinking fountain. Looking at the project, this is looking from Bell Street working back upriver, looking at some of the trail refurbishments. Outside of the core area, the city is responsible for doing the trail refurbishments. And that refurbishment includes replacement of the chat for the chat material, which is that crushed limestone material. And in some sections, we've added concrete because in this, like this specific location, water sheets off, thankfully on days like today, runs over to the curb and then washes out that section. So there's, in some sections where there's a lot of erosion, we've added, come back in and done concrete. So in-house, we're doing the trail refurbishments outside of the core area. This is a chat area that is in the process of getting refurbished. Coming back into the core area of the project, this is underneath Oak Street Bridge. This is the interpretive area. You can also see some art that's been added. The Celebration Bridge, the connection to Celebration Bridge is right next to it, but this area has some interpretive panels and some lighting. The interpretive panels talk about the history of the area, the connection to the fort in the past and plants and animals. This is what it looks like at night with the lighting. This is a look at the new LED lights underneath Oak Street. We've got LED lights underneath Oaks, Chadburn, Abe and Cunningham Bridges. This light, we can program to do different colors, program for to come on at different times and kind of choreograph it, not to music, but just to do different kind of, different things. This is a fuzzy picture, but it shows the filter and the pump stations for all the water features, the existing water features. We, in the past, had separate water pump stations that fed water to the water features. Once we refurbished all those, we consolidated the pumps into one location. The pump is at this location. This is actually a filter. A roof is going on and I believe that's been done since this picture was taken and that the outside fence has been removed. But it basically filters the water as it comes in before it goes to the pump. So because we've done that, we've refurbished some of the existing water features. This is the water feature at Celebration Bridge. It had been dormant for about five or six years. It's been reactivated. This is the water feature next to Oak Street Bridge. If you recall, I should have had some before and after pictures, but if you recall, there was some very large boulders that surrounded the edges and wasn't very inviting, but now with the flat stone, you can actually walk up to the feature and it actually pumps more water out and you get to see more play of the water. Some of the art, new benches for the core area. These are shade structures that aren't quite complete yet that are beside the main water fountain below NEFS. This is a new landscaped area below NEFS and above the new refurbished main fountain. This is the new main fountain refurbished. This is a look at some of the new stonework and steps and railing that's been done. This is next to the main fountain. This is what it looks like at night with the new lights. We got smart this time and put in LED lights, so there'll be less cost in terms of electricity and also less cost in terms of maintenance moving forward. This is some of the artwork that's underneath Chadburn Bridge, and I want to just step ahead right quick. Little more detailed work in this area between Chadburn and Irving Streets. This is what we call the games court area, and this is the old putt-putt golf course. We'll talk about this top area towards the end of the presentation. It's separated for a couple of reasons. One was because of funding, but the other is because there's a large sewer line that's going in the backside of the property that will have to be replaced. It's going to be replaced next summer, and by doing that, it's going to tear up this backside of this property. But it does give us the opportunity to do something different once that's done. So in the games court area, basically from Chaburn to Irving. Underneath Chadburn, there's a little theater area where musicians can play. We've added the chimes underneath this section of the bridge and there's space to add more musical elements. In the games court area, there's an alley of ornamental trees. These are mountain laurels. There's a bocce ball court. There are washer playing areas, and this was a horseshoe playing area, but we replaced it with a chessboard. And then we've got restrooms that were added to the project and lots of different rock work. And here's a quick look at some of those features. This is the bocce ball court. Water fountain, the sculpted panels that go on the columns. There's, I think there's a total of 22 or 24 that we're going to get. They're very unique. They're very attractive and they'll be really a special touch to the overall project. These panels, some of them have words, others have plants and animals, but they're very unique, very special. This is a look at the chessboard area. This is a look at the washer playing area with the light columns and the tivoli lights. This is a look at, in this section, we couldn't do the spray irrigation, so we did drip irrigation. This shows you the drip irrigation underneath an existing tree. And this shows the artwork that's in that section. My favorite piece is the Dia de los Muertos truck, which has a picnic table on the back of it. This picture was taken in the winter. Those trees aren't dead. This was taken in the winter. We've added restrooms to the games court area. It's a very popular area to go to, especially because of the fishing. That section of the river is stocked, so folks need restrooms. There will be a porch that's added to the front of this restroom to make it look a little more attractive. This is the main entrance from the parking lot off Irving Street into the games court area. It shows some of the columns, and there's going to be an arch sign that goes over the top of that. This is looking back down along Irving Street. There was only a walkway, I think, on one side of the street, but we've got the walkway now on both sides of the road and it's been widened and rails have been added. And since this picture was taken, the rails have been finished. But these columns also have lights on them. There'll be lights on the underside of the railing, so it'll make it a safer and easier connection. This is looking at the new trail section that we're adding along the Health Foundation's property. Some of you may recall that we have an agreement with the Health Foundation to put this trail on their property, and it's basically the license agreement. It connects from Irving Street on the south side of the bank to our trail, which is by the visitor's center. That will be, it's under construction now, not today because of the rain, but the next few weeks. This is the drive down to the little parking area that's beside the Boy Scout Building and Cunningham Bridge. I'll talk a little bit more about this towards the end of the project because it's, refurbishment is not part of the main project right now. We did add a couple of boat ramps to the project to allow our folks to maintain the river better and also for folks to be able to access the river with canoes and kayaks. One is located by the river stage. The other one is located by the Boy Scout Building, right about this location. This is a look at some of the artwork that was added. These were the pieces that were vandalized, and there's some loose rocks that are around that, and we'll talk about that towards the end of the presentation. But there are lights that are by these pieces, and the lights that are there are operational and have guards on them to prevent them from being damaged. This is a look at some of the LED lights underneath the bridge. A lookout area that hasn't quite been finished yet near the visitor's center. One of the new drinking fountains that was added nearby. The exercise stations by Kids Kingdom Playground. Bank stabilization below Kids Kingdom. More artwork this underneath South Abe Street on the south side. In my mind, it's kind of the signature piece. It's the largest piece. More of the landscaped area that's not quite finished by the pedestrian bridge. A little kind of amphitheater spot that's by the pedestrian bridge where you can sit and have a picnic or fish or listen to some music. The last big change order we had was to repair the pedestrian, existing pedestrian bridge. The underside supports were hollow, which allowed water to get into them, which allowed, caused rusting prematurely. Virtually all those will be replaced as part of this change order and caps, so they won't rust again in the future as quickly. And we're getting all-new metal flooring and railing for the bridge as well as painting. A look at the irrigation system that's going in along the golf course section of the project. This isn't quite a before and after shot, but it does give you an idea of what the banks, to remind us what the banks did look like in the past and now that they've been stabilized, how they'll be secure for decades to come. More look at bank stabilization. This is a good shot showing the terraforming that had to occur to get to the right slope to prevent erosion in the future. These were earlier shots. A fair amount of turf has been reestablished on most of these slopes because of the rains we have gotten. More bank stabilization. This is the section below the library at the high school. There was some concern about revegetating the slope. We did hydroemulsate and some of the cane has come back. It's a pretty steep slope, but it has revegetated. Look at the in-house trail refurbishments that are upriver, this near 14th Street. Okay, getting into the main topics to talk about. One is the removal of dead trees. As part of the project, we did do a change order for the removal of 20 trees. This is prior to our assessment that we did back in May of the rest of the trees. Most of those trees have been removed by the contractor. There are an additional 40 trees. Most of the trees that we've lost were pecan trees. Those pecan trees leaf out in the middle to the end of April, so we had to wait till early May to make an assessment of the rest of the trees to see which conditions they were in. So we brought on John Begnoe to take a look at the trees. We did a tree-by-tree inspection and made an assessment of which trees needed to be removed. And just a little background from my assessment, we did lose some trees and it's unfortunate for all of us, but it was really just a combination of several factors. First of all was the drought, just the sheer fact that we didn't have the rainfall. The second was we didn't have an irrigation system there that was operable to be able to water. Besides, the project had been going on and we couldn't water with the irrigation system, even if it did work. We did drain the river in the primary sections so we could do the bank stabilization work, so the trees that were accustomed to tapping into that river water couldn't do that. We had elevated temperatures because of the heat. Trees can't transpire. They can't bring the water from the soil up through to keep themselves cool. And then we did, the trees that we lost were more species-specific. We lost a lot of pecan trees and a few red oak trees. Some of the other trees, like the live oaks, really didn't seem to be phased at all. So we've ordered the removal of 20 trees through the project. With the project, we've got prices to remove an additional 40 trees, which we plan to remove as part of the landscape allowance, which is in the project budget, so it's not going to cost extra money. It's money that's already in the project. And then there's additional 20 trees that are on the golf course side, which could be removed as well as part of this project. So those will be happening. I believe if all goes well, the additional trees that will be removed will start to be removed in early August, so that we'll have all of them removed before River Fest. Okay, unless there's any questions about the tree removals, I'll move on to the next topic, which is the putt-putt golf course area.
Carl, can I ask you something real quick?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor. The railing there on Irving Street Bridge, is that pretty sturdy? I mean, it looks kind of flimsy.
It is sturdy. We've checked it out. I mean, it's not going to stop, if a truck jumps over that high curb, it's not going to stop that. But it's sturdy. If you lean up against it or bump up against it, you'll feel that it's pretty sturdy.
And the next question I have, and I don't feel so bad because the city manager and I don't know what bocce ball is. I'm sorry. I've heard of it.
Well, in my mind, it's kind of a combination of bowling and washers. Where you roll a ball to a spot and you try to hit it with another ball. Maybe a larger version of marbles.
Canicas.
Craig's got to have a training class for us.
We call it canicas. Okay. Gotcha.
The old putt-putt area. We've got to wait some time till this sewer line gets removed, but it does give us the opportunity to kind of think about this area as to what we could do in the future. One of the ideas we've kind of thrown around is to establish a food court area. Now, there is a concession building right now about this location. It's the old concession building for the putt-putt golf course. It has to be removed because it's on top of the sewer line. And when the new sewer line goes in, we can't save the old building. We have to build a new one. So as part of the sewer line project, we will be able to get back a basic concession structure. So the thought is perhaps maybe to come in with a structure, a concession building, that we could have a private vendor operate that could check out bocce balls, check out chess pieces, check out golf course putters and balls, maybe rent paddle boats and serve concession food, food and drinks. Also, as part of that project, perhaps include the infrastructure so that we could have some food carts. And if you're interested in what food carts are, this is a location of some food trucks that are at a park, the Overpass Park that's at uptown, downtown Dallas by the art section, art district. This is right next to the road. The trucks come in every day, pull in and serve concessions. The park is right here. It's a fairly large park. This is in Austin, and this is kind of a little bit more like what our setting is like. It's a little more intimate, a little more rustic. It has tivoli lights. Another shot, I believe if you're familiar with Texas highways, this is the cart that was on the front cover of that Texas highways that was a couple of issues ago. So our thought is to perhaps create a food cart court area. And that way you can bring more people down. They'll stay longer down in the river, even spill over to downtown. With that is the possibility of refurbishing the old golf, the putt-putt golf course site, either refurbishing what's already there and allow for at least 18 holes or coming in and tearing the old courses out and building new ones. So these are some of the things we're thinking about. I mean, it's not funded yet. We would need some direction if this is a direction we'd like to go. And then the next piece I wanted to talk about is to look at the funding that we do have left as far, for the end of the project. This is towards the end of the presentation, so I'm almost done, Mayor. After the project is done, we've got about $900,000 with which to After the project is done, we've got about $900,000 with which to work. In the past, the council had, hadn't voted on it, but they had to give us some general direction to reserve about $500,000. So that's still set to the side, which is part of the $900,000. And we're currently talking about some purchases of some land north of Nineteenth Street, which is ongoing. The cost of that property, as well as the Phase 1 environmental assessment and the closing cost and the survey is going to cost about $48,000. We've put down here additional tree work if, if, if needed. We're going to be able to remove the trees as part of the landscape allowance that's in the project now, but if we have, uh, need for future money to do any additional pruning work or to plant new trees, we'd like to set aside about $50,000 to be able to do that in case we need to. So the total cost of that is about $600,000, leaving us about 300,000. Now, council may want to direct us to free up this money, this $500,000 for something else. That's, that, that's your direction. But some of the things that we know we would like to do outside of the project, first of all is to secure the loose, uh, large river rock that's by, right next to the artwork. We anticipate doing that with, uh, um, inmate labor. It's sort of keep the cost down, but basically taking that stone and securing it in cement so it's not loose. We've talked about doing additional signage and wayfinding signs. In the project, there's some very basic signage, but it doesn't have all the directional signs when you're on, on foot following the trail. We'd like to be able to do some signage which matches the same format as the overall wayfinding, um, study that was done a few years ago. And to do that, we're thinking it's going to cost about $150,000. It could be paid for out of the, the, the river project or it could be paid for out of hot money. The games and food court area that we talked about and its restoration, we're thinking it costs us about $175,000, maybe $200,000 depending on what we do. And we could partner with artists, uh, and other groups and maybe get some additional grant funding to add to this. The turnaround area parking by Cunningham, this is by the Boy Scout Building where you saw the road that went down, uh, we need to fix that up a little bit better, uh, put in some new bays, pack it down and, and make a, uh, add some boulders around it so it's a kind of a more defined area and probably re-aspallt the, uh, the road that goes down. And then, let's see, the maintenance drive from El Paso to the pumps, as part of this project, the contractors are putting back in what it once looked like from the Celebration Bridge to the new pumping stations, but depending on how often we have to go over there for maintenance, we may want to put in an actual maintenance drive, which is what that is. And then, um, as part of the project from Concho Avenue to First Street, we're putting in all new traditional irrigation system. This doesn't count the golf course, it's all on the riverside and the necessary. This doesn't include drip irrigation. However, the syst, the system that we're putting in as part of the project does have the infrastructure, the lines, the valves to be able to add drip irrigation. To add drip irrigation to the existing trees, about almost 300 existing trees, it costs about $175,000.
Carl, that's the trees only on the riverside, you're right.
That's correct.
Not on the golf course.
Doesn't count the golf course. And then these items don't have funding, but there are things that we've talked about doing, a better connection, perhaps a suspension bridge underneath Concho Avenue to connect to the existing river trail, um, underneath Concho to where the trail picks up across from the old Holiday Inn, the Holodom. We would really like to do some better trail connections to, to downtown. Um, one could be where Celebration Bridge picks up along Oak Street to Concho Avenue. The second location could be at Irving. And then another possible one's at Chadwick, but we've got some height problems to overcome there. And then, of course, when the conditions get better, we would need some funding for landscaping. This is for turf and for additional trees. And then eventually we will need to address some bank stabilization down river below Johnson Dam to Bell Street. And then finally, uh, this property that we purchased, the old Edgewater Inn site, there's not a trail there now. Of course, we'd like to sell this property and get it developed, uh, through the private sector, but we'd like to maintain a section of land along the river on that south bank to connect, uh, the trail on the south side all the way to the river stage. And that's what that item is. So we do ask for your direction on some of these post-contract items. Like I say, if it, if that direction involves a change order, we would come back with that change order. If we did the drip irrigation, uh, we recommend that we would do that as part of the project as a change order.
I'm sorry?
If we did do the drip irrigation, we would do it as part of a, uh, a change order as part of the existing project.
One thing we talked about is that area there by the golf course is the best way to do it because the existing golf course area is under the two-pro contract and they pay the watering in that area. If we're concerned about the trees in that area, the best way to do that is to actually bore under the road, connecting it to our system that's going in on the riverside already. Bore under the road and put the drip around those trees as well. And that's something that we could change order into the contractor who's working on it right now.
Johnny?
Carl, the, the putt putt area, the games court area, the existing concession stand is there, the old concession?
It doesn't show on this map.
Right. Do you really have to tear that thing down? Could you not get a crane and move it or, and keep it? I mean, it looks like it's in good condition. I don't know, but I'm just saying.
I don't think you could move it very easily.
It's a slab. It's a, it's, it's brick sort of type structure. You can't pick it up. And so the sewer line goes right, or concrete goes right underneath it. So there's just no way and for them to be able to maneuver through there with that sewer line and dig the hole they're going to have to dig, plus the, the sewer line, uh, at some points through all of that area is now above ground. So like, for instance, on the back of that big tall building there, the sewer line is actually above ground and so they'll be building a, an encasement around it. That doesn't go under, and that building will be the same way. The elevations on it changes.
That's right. Charlotte?
Well, I have several things that I would like to address, but I want to start off with, uh, for the rest of the council that's new here today is, you're looking at Carl, Rick, and whoever else that I haven't seen in the audience, they always seem to come in under budget. For those who don't know, the sports complex came in under budget. And if you've not been down on the river to see what they've been doing and walk this, I encourage you to grab Carl and take a tour. It is fabulous, the work that has been done. And for three of us up here on the council, when this was first brought to us and Craig Kenny made his presentation as his dream, what it could be, uh, we all got on board and the council basically stayed out of their way and let you guys do your thing. And I, I think it's remarkable and I for one want to stay out of your way to finish it up. And, uh, I don't have a problem with the additional drip systems for air gating, keeping our trees. I, quite frankly, I don't have a problem with anything that you have proposed. Uh, I would like to see you to continue the good work and congratulations, uh, to all of you who've worked on this project. I know in speaking with John Begno, he has really sang the praises of Shane Kelton, Carl White, uh, Havelock, Roger Havelock in their love and desire and the work that they do. And all we get are the complaints. Very few people will tell you how great a job you did, but I for one say it's great. And thank you.
Thank you. Johnny?
Carl, my last question, I saw that it was 87% complete, so by October 18th, 19th, it'll be done.
Right now, with the, the last change order we have for the bridge, repairs that extended it to the middle of September. So if we add another change order for the drip irrigation, it would likely extend it another couple of weeks, but we'll be virtually done. I mean, it'll be done for the river project. I mean, it may, may not be every last little thing completed like every table installed, but...
It has to be. It has to be.
Well, and the change order that we're talking about, I think we, we need to talk to them about it, but that area is not in the bulk of the area where you're doing most of your activities, right?
The drip irrigation?
Right. Over along the golf course. So if they finish up their area and simply were boring under the road and working on the golf course side, it probably wouldn't impact.
Well, they have a golf tournament planned, so it might, it might impact.
Let us visit with them. And what we may need to do is, is depending on how that works, we may have to do some timing components with them. Um, our other option is to, to bid that out separately, but I think that because they're already doing the work there now, our best bet as far as getting the work done quickly and price-wise is going to be to change order it in. Let us visit with them about that.
And I think as far as the removal of the trees, I mean, I, I think a lot of us are happy that's, that's finally going to happen, but not only that, but there's a lot of branches from living trees that are in danger of falling onto kids, for example, at the Kids Kingdom. So I worry about that. And there's big branches in various trees that are still doing well, so, so to speak, but they could easily be a liability to us from a car driving down the road along the river. I, I, I spot, I love trees, so I spot that all the time, so.
Yes.
Don't forget about that.
There's definitely some pruning that we need to do.
Yes.
And is that part of the, um, agreement we're working out with the group that's going to remove some of the trees?
The existing one is to remove trees, but we still have landscape allowance money to do some pruning.
Okay. So what I'm hearing so far is, and I just want to clarify for priority's sake, one is to look at the drip irrigation and try to get that change ordered in, looking at the coordination with Riverfest. Secondly, looking at, we've got tree removal going on, but also look at those that if we're going to top them or whatever it is where a tree is going to remain, but it's got a bunch of dead in it, go ahead and try and get that done as well with some of these dollars. Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Looks to me like you've got about $307,000 to work with, so.
Well, you've got...
Bring us back something.
Yeah. And remember, you've got the, the five as well in there, so you've got more than that. That is just set aside at council direction.
I sure do like a contingency plan.
Oh, we do too.
I sure do like to have a little money in reserve, but...
So what we'll do is go ahead and look at those two, uh, options for starting that work and using some of those dollars.
Johnny?
Carl, on that, um, the miniature golf course, are you guys, have, are you thinking about maybe doing a private, uh, type partner?
Public, private.
Just a, just a private? Yeah.
We were talking about doing a public-private partnership.
Public-private, I was trying to spit that out.
And so we have some work going on right now to get some, uh, pricing and ideas for the, the main concession area that would be there. Uh, that's something, once we get all that sort of worked out along with what Carl talked about, we'll have to take that to the River Corridor Commission and bring that plan up through the process. But at the end of the day, really wanted to have a public-private partnership where we encourage someone to come in and actually operate, uh, those facilities.
Yes.
And they work with the city.
Because I don't think we should be doing that.
We agree.
If that's all, we will let this one go. You've got what you need, Carl?
I think so. Yes, sir.
The next item that we have is item number 12 and then item number 13, they will work together. It is 10 minutes until 12. We also have some people that's coming in for our executive that has a presentation to make. I suspect that 12 and 13 will probably take 45 minutes to an hour. You agree?
Yes, sir. Probably. Lively display. And discussion.
Do y'all want to take it now? Do you want to take lunch and come back and do our executive and come back and pick it up after lunch? My back is, my back has had just about all it can stand without a break.
I second that motion.
Okay.
For people in the audience that are here for item 20, can we give them an approximate time that it's going to be discussed? So we've tied them up all morning.
I would say, I think it's probably going to take, what, an hour for our executive?
Hour to an hour and a half. Hour to an hour and a half.
Okay. Let's say if we break, if we break by 12 o'clock to go to executive, it will take us at least an hour, so let's, let's allow an hour and 15 minutes. So I will say we will be back on this floor. Meeting will be opened at 1:15. 1:15, we'll be, we will be back. I see you, Jim. And if we have not finished our executive time by then, then we will go back and finish it afterwards, but we will be back on the floor by 1:15 to take care of our citizens. So I am now going to take us into executive. Let me read this. Turner, you had some remarks to make. So if we're back at 1:15, we're looking at about an hour on items 12 and we're looking at about an hour on 12 and 13. We're looking at probably 20 minutes on item 14. We're looking at 15 minutes on 15. We're looking at another 20 or 30 on 16. We're going to be here a long time. And then we also have a workshop scheduled today that we may have to put off, because it looks to me like we're going to be here to 4 o'clock as it is.
Well, um, Mayor, I was going to propose something.
Yes, sir.
I was going to propose something anyway, and one thing I wanted to do is schedule meetings individually with council members anyway to go through the budget thoroughly.
Okay.
So, um, we'll, we'll discuss that at that point.
I think we, we will probably then, we're going to be here to 3:30 or 4:00 anyway, just dealing with the rest of this agenda. So the work, I think maybe the budget workshop that we had scheduled, we probably want to put off some other time, because I'm not going to sit here till 6:00. So that kind of gives us an idea of where we are. Let me read this for executive. I know you had some comments to make, Turner, and then we will go into executive. We will meet executive session under the provision of government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Governments, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirements that Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections, Number One, Section 5510711, to consult with Attorney regarding Reteroya and West Texas Water Partnership, Section 551072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property regarding Reteroya, Section 5510741, to deliberate the appointment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of the San Angelo City Manager, Assistant City Managers, all of the Department Directors, and acting or interim Department Directors. I don't like that third one, but we're going to talk about it anyway. Turner?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Jim Turner again. And there's a number of issues, I think, especially with the third one. Right off the bat, you have the issue that if you're talking about policy, about a general class of employees and how you're going to deal with department heads, directors, et cetera, and not talking about an individual in that meeting, then according to the Attorney General's opinions that are out there and what's in the open meetings handbook, that has to be done in open session. Anything that affects policy of a class of people has to be done in an open meeting, not in an executive session. And there's a ruling from that that goes back to 1975 under, uh, it was Attorney General was Hill at that time, John Hill. It's, uh, age 495 is the reference number. Second issue that you have with this is our own city charter goes into some detail on the rules and responsibilities of who can do hiring and firing and the role the city council has in hiring and firing of city staff and other employees. You have a city manager who's responsible for the appointment and hiring and day-to-day operations of the entire city staff except for the municipal court judge. There is a clause in there that says that those people that are directly appointed by the city manager, the city council does have what's called advice and consent, which means they have to approve his hiring of basically senior staff, the city attorney, uh, department heads, department directors, those people that he directly appoints and , uh, uh, report directly to him, he has to get the advice and consent of city council to do that. Which means they have to be brought before city council for pretty much an up or down vote, just like when the Senate confirms a presidential appointment. As far as the actual termination, personnel policies, et cetera, the council has input on that, but the implementation, the actual firing, disciplining, et cetera, by city charter, and this was clarified during the last city charter election, is done by the city manager. If he's not doing that up to council standard, up to their correct, and then you need to replace the city manager, of course, but at the same time, the city council should not be going around the city manager and trying to discipline somebody else when the city manager is either already supposed to be doing that, or if he's not doing it, then get somebody who can. So I, one of the things I'm very concerned about is that a lot of what looks like just from the agenda item should be part of a public policy discussion in open session with public input and not behind closed doors. If you're talking about an individual, disciplining an individual, salary negotiation raises, firing, changing positions on an individual, that is perfectly legitimate under executive session. If you're talking about how are we going to deal with senior staff, matters like that, those policy decisions need to be completely discussed in open session. those policy decisions need to be completely discussed in open session, except in the very rare case where there is another legal opinion needed, where you've got an attorney-client privilege situation, that you'd have to consult with the attorney about how do we go about doing a specific legal issue. But the policy needs to be discussed in open session and before the public with public input. And if you don't do that, I think you're in violation of the Open Meetings Act, and that is subject to criminal penalties. Even if you don't know that you're violating it, if you have a violation there, you could still be held liable. There are some affirmative defenses. The city attorney can take steps to protect the council, written opinions, that type of things. But the Open Meetings Act limits the number of things that can be done behind closed doors by city council, and you have to be very, very careful that you're not doing that. If you're talking policy, it needs to be in public. If you're talking individuals, that's a private matter. And even there, in the Open Meetings Act, the individual that you're talking about has the option of saying, this must be done in public session as well. And it's his call, it's not up to council, if he wants that disciplinary action or other action done before the public. Thank you.
We realize that this is a very, very sensitive discussion. We realize that some things can be done in executive. We also realize that some things must be done in open session. And that is the purpose of this council, to bring everything out in the open, to have it honest and transparent, so that everybody knows what's going on. City lawyer, I'm city attorney, I'm going to ask you to address this in a few sentences, if you can, and I'm going to ask you to pledge to us as council that you will be on top of this, that you will not allow us to get off topic, and that you will not allow us to do anything in an executive that we should be doing in open. And when I, when we come back, there is a, there is a spot on the agenda that we can discuss what we discussed in executive. I will tell you what we discussed. We're not hiding anything. It will be brought forward, you will be able to hear it. But right now, I need the city attorney to address what Mr. Turner has said, and I want some assurances that this bunch up here is not going to spend some time in an orange suit, because that's not something I want to do. Your ma'am.
It's pretty clear what we're talking about here. In addition to talking about my duty to make sure that the city complies with its statutory duty to comply with the Open Meetings Act, that is number one. Secondarily, what we're talking about is providing, and in city complying with the Open Meetings Act, we have to think about the notice that we provide to the public of the subject matter of the executive session. And I might add, the subject matter of any item that's posted, whether it be in open or closed session. Okay? So let's consider the subject matter here. It is posted according to what's listed under the exception for personnel matters. However, and also, Mr. Turner has articulated some of the things that are not permitted to be discussed under personnel exceptions, such as policy in general, discussions about oversight and control. But what I find more problematic about even going into executive session is the potential charter violation, and it's very obvious and very clear that we are a council-manager form of government. The city manager has the authority to direct and supervise employees. I find it highly unusual for the city council to go into an executive session to discuss and evaluate employees over which the city manager has direct control. I find that problematic. I think that we need to consider that to do so would interfere with the charter, and I would suggest that we look very carefully, and this doesn't require a very high-level discussion. There are several charter provisions that lay out the city council, city manager, city council form of government, separation of powers. I have a handout for you. But it's very, very clear, the city manager has the authority to appoint with consent of council. However, it is the city manager that has the authority to remove, not requiring the consent of council. So any of the control and supervision, and everything is reinforced throughout this layer of obvious, very clearly stated provisions that reinforce the separation of powers, that give the city manager the exclusive authority over all of the other employees, I would just suggest that we cannot go into executive session to discuss employees that are under the direct supervision of the city manager. Certainly, and we're looking at whether it's permissible, yes, to talk about the city manager. You, as council, have authority over him. I would suggest that to do so would be to, first of all, understand, for council to interfere with the city manager's authority, that would be impermissible. So you would be using a sword and a shield. You would go ahead and try to do something that you can't do, and you'd be doing it behind closed doors. So I'm concerned about the subject matter even being permissible, to even be legally permissible to be into, in executive session. Now, if council wishes to speak to other, all of these administrative matters, consider perhaps amending the charter, because that's what it would take to take away the authority that he clearly is delegated under the charter to direct and manage the departments. That could be an open session item. So first of all, talking about subject matter, appropriate notice to the public, I just think we don't even get through the door to talk, for council, to talk about matters that would violate the charter.
So what, you are suggesting that we do not even deliberate this in executive?
Correct. Beyond the city manager.
I agree with you. I don't want to talk about this in executive, because I think that the charter is very, very plain on the perimeters that are established for city council and the duties of the manager, and I don't want to talk about it either. And if you're saying that we should not, then I'm going to make the motion that we do not talk about Section 3 in executive. And I need a consensus of council.
And I'd like to.
And if we get a consensus, we will not.
Mayor, I would just clarify that it is appropriate, because you do have the ability to talk about the city manager, and that's permissible. But about, as you've just stated, all of the folks that report to him, it's just simply not a subject matter that should be discussed, and I would suggest that my recommendation would not to venture through those doors.
I agree with the city attorney, but I'm going to have to have some council guidance here. I am in favor of completely doing away with number three. I do not want to deliberate number three in executive.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
I, the way I look at it at this point, and I am in agreement with what Ms. Boling had just mentioned a while ago, absolutely, if you want to take me into executive session and give me direction, disciplinary action, whatever, I'm not sure exactly what it's about. But if, at any point, you'd like to take the city manager and myself into executive session and discuss whatever it is, it is that needs to be discussed as far as guidance and so forth, I'm all for that. I don't have an issue with that whatsoever. I do feel that my staff, it's really important that I do have the authority given by charter also, by ordinance, that I am able to evaluate, determine whether a staff member needs disciplinary action. All those things do fall under the purview of the city manager, and I want to make sure that I do maintain that. Again, if for some reason council wants to evaluate me, I have no issue whatsoever with that. I welcome that. Give me guidance, I welcome that also. But with that said, I am in agreement with Ms. Boling.
And the way it's worded right now, we cannot just talk about the city manager, because it has assistant city managers, department directors, interim directors, and this is too broad, this is too broad a scope. It's too broad a brush. I am not comfortable with dealing with Section 551-0741 in executive today. I'm not going to deal with it. When we get to this, I will come back and sit right here and wait. I'm not going to deal with this, because this is, this is very dangerous, it's very sensitive, and I'm not going to put myself in a position of violating open meetings. So council, that's, you know, it takes four of us to make a decision here. I'm saying no, I'm not going to do it. Rodney?
I agree. I don't, I don't think we should be talking, and I'm kind of in the dark on this. I don't even understand, who brought this up? Who put it on the agenda?
Mr. Wardlaw.
I don't know who we're talking about on this, so I'm totally in the dark on this. I, I, I'm all for open meetings, though. I want everything to be out in the open as much as possible, so that's my opinion.
And I guess we could deal with this in open meeting after we.
It would have to be posted. I would suggest.
Excuse me, Mr. Wardlaw, let's let the city attorney speak. Yes, ma'am.
I would suggest that we formulate an agenda item at a future meeting that is particular to what council wishes to address and gives the public notice of the subject matter. So I think it would just be to spontaneously come out and just begin a discussion. I think we need to think about the policy or the administrative manners, or to be able to articulate a subject matter that we would discuss in open session. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend coming out to discuss it in open session until it's posted appropriately.
Let's do it this way. I'm going to make a motion right now that we do not discuss Section 551-0741, to deliberate the appointment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, disciplines, or dismissal of the San Angelo City Manager, Assistant City Managers, all of the Department Directors, and acting or interim Department Directors, either in executive or open. And that if it is to be brought back, then it will be brought back in a way that is within the scope of the law, in open meetings, and that we are not in any danger of any way of violating open meetings. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor.
I'll second that, but let's, let's hear from Mr. Wardlaw.
Now, you may speak. There is a motion on the floor and a second. We're going to, we're going to deal with this, but you may speak.
This, I've been a lawyer for 40 years.
That, that makes no difference. We're not, we're not talking about lawyers, we're talking about our charter, and we're talking about something that the city attorney has said is illegal, that we should not do, and we will not do it, if I can get three people to vote with me.
Well.
So all this other stuff is irrelevant.
Just make some suggestions.
Mr. Wardlaw, turn on your microphone if it's not on.
I'm more than willing to have this heard in executive, in open session. I'm more than willing to have, and, but I want it done today. If these people, they have the right, under the statute, to request that it be held in open session. But, you know, executive decisions having to do with personnel can be held in closed session. And I chose to put it on that way, and some others on the council felt like that was probably the right way to do it. There's two different ways to skin the cat. But I'm more than willing to air this dirty laundry in open session, but it needs to be today, because it is on the, is on the agenda, and we can vote to remove it from closed session and put it in open session. But I've been, I've been here in two meetings, and now y'all are trying to prevent me from having my stuff on the agenda every single time I show up.
I'm trying to prevent this council from being in violation of the Open Meetings Act. Now, there's a motion has been made, it has been second, and I'm going to call for the vote.
I want more discussion.
Discussion.
Okay.
First of all, I want the people out there to realize something that maybe nobody up here wants to say, but when you have the staff or the bureaucracy trying to prevent the council from guiding and directing, that's wrong. And if that is the case, it does need to be discussed, and then it, the results need to be announced to the public. Some things could be misunderstandings, some things could be deliberate, but the council cannot act if their hands are tied and not are able to discuss issues with the city manager in executive session for all to hear. You've got piecemeals, piecemeals of everything. So therefore, I don't have a problem meeting with the city manager in executive session and talking about these things, so that we can all talk openly. What I do have a problem with is staff, the bureaucracy, whatever you want to call it, trying to prevent council from finding out more of what's going on and how things are dealt with, and I want to be open and above board, and we should be able to discuss it. And I will vote no to your motion, simply because I think that each council member has the right to be heard.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Johnny?
No.
I was just going to say, I've been here a little bit over five years sitting on council, and I've always understood the city council, city government style of way of doing things. But I've always understood that we have one employee. We have one employee, and that's all I'm worried about. I have no problem with taking this man into executive session if it was worded that way. Mr. Wardlaw, I respect you, what you're trying to do, but this is the only gentleman that answers to all of us, you know? This board here has one employee, so if you want to talk to him solely, I have no problem with it. I don't think we can do it today the way it's worded, but that's just me. I, I have no problem speaking to this man behind closed doors, and then whatever comes out of it, comes out of it. But again, for me to say that I, I want to go over his head and talk about assistant city managers and the department directors and all, that's not my business. That's, that's why we hired him for, you know? And, and that's all I'll say, I just, we want to talk to him, let's talk to him. That's, this is, this is the head, this is the chief of this organization, and this, this is where it begins. That's what we have authority over.
And the agenda needs to be worded in that exact way. City manager only. And I don't have a problem with talking to him in executive or in open, but I don't like this broad stroke. Marty?
Well, I guess my main concern is, why did we wait till now for this to come up? And I guess my second concern is, if Mr. Turner wouldn't have said anything, what would be happening? So I'm very concerned that we go for two weeks, and, and the, it's just now five minutes before we were going to go into executive session, it's brought up that, that we could be in violation of, of executive session. Why wasn't something said or done before?
Might I speak to that, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
We were directed to put this item on the agenda, and I was waiting for an opportunity to advise council about the prior, the propriety of having an executive session on the matter. It was required to be on the agenda, and so I'm responding now, and I did so, despite Mr. Turner stepping up. He's entitled to do that, as citizens are entitled to speak to any item. I was just waiting for the opportunity to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Charlotte?
You know, Mr. Self, I partially would like to address that, why was, hadn't we heard it before? It's a simple matter, since Mr. Wardlaw was sworn in, he has requested certain things be on the agenda, and the legal department has pulled his agenda items through either-or, approval of the city manager, I don't know. But as a council member, he has a right to put those things on the agenda and to be heard and not played games with, well, I find it this, you know, it just appears to me that staff is trying their best to keep it off of the agenda, because they don't want to talk about it. And I don't mind staying, standing up and saying, that's not right, we're not going to play these games, let's sit down and be grownups and talk about this.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
One thing that I want to do is that, I definitely want to make sure that we establish trust between the city council and the staff. It's really important in order for us to work together and progress the efforts of the city. And I never want the city council members to feel like, you know, they can't trust us, you know, we're trying to hide something. I assure you, we're not trying to hide anything, as far as this item on the agenda. I've said it from the very beginning, I don't have an issue with me going into executive session and explaining what I had to explain, hear from you. You let me know what the, the issues are. I don't have a problem with that whatsoever. Again, I don't want, I want nothing more than for us to work, all of us work together as a team. There's a lot that we can accomplish here in this community, and I look forward to that. I'm very excited about that. It's unfortunate as far as the way this is worded, there's no, I have no issue whatsoever in the very near future, me going into executive session and listening to you, getting your direction, and allowing me also to communicate with you, too. Aside from that, I'd love to be able to communicate with you on an individual basis outside of the city council also. You know, that's something that's really important. Again, I am sorry that we do have council members that may feel this way as far as that the trust just isn't there, and that's my responsibility to make sure that I build that, you know? So, I'll work harder at that, so I'm sorry if that hasn't happened yet. Again, I just wanted to make sure that I made that comment. Thank you.
And the city attorney also cannot speak to anything unless it is on the agenda. This is the first time it's been on the agenda. It's the first time she could speak to it, and she has given her opinion. And it is an opinion. Jim Turner has given an opinion, but her opinion is that we do not discuss this. And I've got to listen to her and take her advice. That's what we pay her for, is her advice, so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, may I?
You may.
May I ask her to render another opinion? Mr. Valenzuela wasn't here at the last meeting, but we took a vote about putting the bid on the contract for water treatment plant, and it was removed from the agenda by the vote of four members of the council, including your own vote. And now, that has been put back on the agenda by someone, and I don't know who.
It was by me. I put it back on. I changed my vote, and you lost it four. I guess you...
No, but you didn't let the rest of them vote. Now, that's bogus. That's bogus.
I asked that it be put back on, but I think, because I think it's important, there is a time element here, we need to discuss it. I want it to be discussed. I asked that it be put back on.
Let's have a point of order on it. Let's have her, if we have a vote of four people on the council taking something off the agenda for today, can one person put it back on over the vote of the majority of the council when it was taken off the agenda?
Well, first of all, I would suggest that we can't even discuss this because we're only posted about going into an executive session, so I can't respond.
I guess we'll discuss that when we get to the agenda item. And if y'all want to pull it, if the four of you do not want to discuss it, then we'll take a vote on it, and if it's killed again, then it'll be dead. But, I want it to be back on there because I think it's time-sensitive. No, I think we've had enough discussion. I want to take a vote on this, and if we don't, if we can't come to a decision on the vote...
Counsel has the right to speak.
Counsel has the right to speak. We have the right to speak to go around. We have the right to go around again, and we have gone around, we have spoken.
I didn't go around again. I didn't say a word.
I kept trying to get in there. One real quick thing is that I've lost, I've lost a lot of confidence in our attorney because you're saying that she brought it up now. I really think, and maybe this is just my ignorance, I think I should have been, Mr. Turner, I'm glad you brought this up to us, because this probably should have been told to the council before this meeting that we cannot do this, right? I think that's what I'm being told.
Well, understand, I can't communicate with the quorum, and I've been in many, many discussions, many, with the city manager about how to navigate this item. And so, we've been examining it for the last two weeks to determine and weighing the desires of a council person to have an item. It was uncharted territory. I've looked at it very, very closely, so I would like to, for you not to lack confidence in me, but just understand that I couldn't come to counsel, as the mayor stated, as a body, to give an opinion into this time. But, I certainly have been closely examining and researching, how is this item workable? Is this item workable because, could it be permissible to talk about each and every employee, not talking about a class of employee? My object was to make it work, and it wasn't because of Mr. Turner. It's just, now is the time.
It just seems bad because he's bringing it up, and that's the only time that it's been brought forward.
Right, but he's, but I would have. I absolutely was prepared. Please have faith and confidence that this is my job, and I certainly had concerns about it, but we also had the desire of a council person to have a particular item not removed, and it was going to remain on the agenda until counsel as a whole, as a body, could consider whether we needed to go forward, and at this time, I'm giving my opinion.
It seems to me, though, that counsel could have addressed Mr. Wardlaw and talked to him individually and said, we've got a few little problems with how you're wording this, and I, did they...
No, they never contacted you.
And see, I would feel the same way. If I put something on there that's wrong or something that's against the law, I would hope that you would come to me and say, you know what, you worded this wrong, and we've got to change this because we are going to have problems with this.
And I would suggest, and thank you very much, I would suggest that that's something the city manager would navigate, but we just had an experience with regard to an item on, an pending contract that we have, and it was my advice. I did such, I did take such course of action, and I suggested that the contract that's going to be in open session, the Corolla contract, be navigated as it is appropriate and ripe for an executive session attorney-client type of discussion to be placed into closed session, and that wasn't, that wasn't desirable in terms of the individual council member that asked the item to be put on. So, please do understand in deference to his desire and to not do the same thing that I had recommended previously, which was to take his item and change it, because it was my opinion previously that it wasn't permissible to talk about something in open session, and I did such, and so I stood down this time. But, it wasn't without two weeks of research and work and concern and waiting for my day that I could address you.
I wasn't suggesting that you change it. I suggested that you talk with Mr. Wardlaw or whoever brings those things to you and discuss the pitfalls of making a decision that could be against the law.
Absolutely, and that is what I share with city management.
Now, may I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to use your words at your acceptance speech. Even though I was out of town, I did watch it on the video and was proud of the things that you stated and what we were going to do, that you were one voice. You had one vote, no more power or say-so over the rest of us. Those were your words. But, something that was voted against by a majority, four people of which you held your fingers up and said, four votes, instead of discussing it with the council member that had brought it forward to begin with, you instructed the attorney to put it back on the agenda, or the city clerk, back on the agenda, and advised them if Mr. Wardlaw had a problem with that, tell them to call you, instead of you respectfully calling your council member to say why you had put it back. You, one vote.
That is issue, that is agenda item number 17, and I've already made the statement that when we get to item number 17, we will discuss that. I felt that it needed to be back on. By recommendation of the staff, I had it put back on. But, if y'all do not want to discuss it, when we get to item 17, when we are able to speak to this, we'll make a decision. And if you tell me by votes of four that we're not going to discuss this, we won't discuss it. But, we're not discussing that now. We are now discussing an executive item. So, if you will wait until item 17, when we discuss this, you will have every opportunity to speak.
Okay, just for clarification, in the future, should we decide to discuss personnel in executive session? It will be the city manager, and he needs to be listed individually?
And he, yes. If that's the employee about whom you wish to have a session, yes, yes, absolutely.
Well, you just told us that's the only one we could direct.
Yes, yes, and I'm confirming, yes.
Yes, Don.
One of the things our charter also says, along with consent of the council, says, and may and will remove any officers or employees appointed by the city manager.
What's your number there?
Section 28, page 6 of 16. So, it's not only saying it's all right to hire individuals, the way I read it, says also remove any officers or employees.
What's your question, Mr. Wardlaw?
It's not a question, it's a statement.
What's your statement?
Would you read that? Don?
Section 28, page 6 of 16. Says, "The city manager shall see that the laws and ordinances of the city are enforced. Shall appoint all appointed officers or employees who report directly to the city manager of the city, except the municipal judges, with the advice and consent of the council, and may at will remove any officers or employees of the city manager." You know, is that the council or is that the city manager in all?
It's the subject matter of the sentence is the city manager, and it's under the section for the authority of the city manager. So, just grammatically, it would be the city manager to read the sentence.
I just wanted to add that, you know, I remember hearing about this item come up, and I think you did the right thing. Mr. Wardlaw asked for it to be on, you put it on. You're advising us today because we're finally all sitting together in open session, but I want to let the public know that the majority of us don't even know what it's about, you know? I really don't. I don't. I don't know what the issue is. If the, the only issue that I have is, if we want to visit with this man right here, I have no problem with it. But, I really don't know, Mr. Wardlaw, I don't, honestly. You and I have never visited about the details of the matter. I'm sure there's mistakes have been made out there, you know? But, you know, nobody's perfect. My item, for example, that was supposedly, I called for it seven times, it was not seven times, it was maybe two, three times. I have no problem. It finally made it. It was, the transparency was there on the item, but honestly, with all due respect to you, Mr. Wardlaw, I don't know what it's about. And to this day, to this minute that I'm talking, I don't know what it's about. So, for you public out there, that's where I'm coming from, is I don't know who else knows the details, but this council person certainly does not.
You have a motion? A second? Any other comments?
How else are we to talk about what Mr. Wardlaw wants to talk about or to inform all of us if we don't post what we want to talk about? I mean, how can we, as a group of seven, discuss or hear the problems or match it up to the same problems that maybe I'm having or you're having or that we don't know of unless we talk about it? Yes, we could talk about it with the city manager. We certainly can. That's our right. And as far as I'm concerned, when you read the Section 551, excuse me, the way it is worded, it doesn't say, oh, we have to talk about everything in there, or we can't talk at all. Now, I disagree with that. We could leave here saying that we can and we want to visit with the city manager. Period.
Does it have to say that, Ms. Bowling?
I would just be conservative and suggest, as the mayor had, and confirm what the mayor desires, which is to re-articulate that section, to give notice to the public, instead of just severing the other employees. I would just feel more comfortable.
Take the vote.
Again, I welcome a meeting, whether it's all the city council members, individually with the individual council members. I just want to establish...
And it's posted, and we can talk about it.
Take a vote.
Can I just finish one statement?
Yes, sir.
Turn your mic on.
Thank you, sir.
This may be one of the first times I've ever seen in my 40 years of practice in law that quoting the statute and using the statutory language, which is all you're required to do in having a meeting in a closed session, is somehow or another wrong and illegal. That's crazy. We don't have to, we just have to track the statute, giving the public notice that we're going to talk to the city manager or whoever else we designate about certain broad categories. We don't have to say, we're going to talk to the city manager about A, B, and C, or, you know, why didn't he do this, or why didn't he do that? Those are the specifics. We don't have to set those out in the notice. We've got a notice here on real estate for the matter coming up in executive session, and that doesn't give, that doesn't give proper notice. And my deal, these items that you put on this time that were excluded the last meeting, there was no change in the notice is what was going into closed session, and so that was totally illegal to be claiming you were going to hear my items in executive session when they weren't even noticed at all on the agenda. And I know you don't, you don't agree with that, Mayor, but you're dead wrong.
There is a motion on the floor that we do not, that we do not discuss this in open session or executive as it is written. I have no problem with rewording it and putting it on Daniel, the city manager, and talking about it in executive or open. I do not like the wording of the way it is listed here, and I have made a motion that we do not discuss this with the wording that is in the executive order. That is the motion. I have a second. If I don't get four votes, then we'll make another motion. We'll do something else. I do not like this language. I think it is dangerous. I do not want to subject myself in the violation of an Open Meetings Act, and I made the motion to protect myself and to protect this council. But, if I can't get four votes, then we'll do it another way. But, the motion has been made, it has been seconded, and I'm going to call for the vote. All that do not want to discuss this in executive or open as it is written, I want you to say aye.
Aye.
Everyone is opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, the motion failed. We will speak about it in executive and in open session after we get through. But, you're going to have to be very, very careful that we do not get out of bounds. This is a, we are, it is now 12:32, we are going into executive. This is going to take an hour and 15 minutes. 12:30, that's 1:30, 1:45, we will be back here by 10 minutes until, 10 minutes until 2:00. We will be back here to do business at 10 minutes until 2:00. We are now going to executive. Let's move on if we could, and it is now 2:41, so I'm only 40 minutes past what I told everyone. But, we did have three attorneys that we brought in. We discussed two of the items. We did not get to Mr. Wardlaw's item. We will be going back into executive after we conclude the meeting so that we can complete his item. But, we did get two of them talked about, and that was, I guess that's an accomplishment. Anyway, we are now going to, oh, Johnny, did you say that you would be willing to pull number 15 until a later date?
Yes, sir, I am willing to.
If it pleases the council, we will pull item number 15, and we will deal with it another time. Also, on item 20, this is, there's some comments that need to be made, but it also is with a workshop. We have decided to take the comments so that we will be able to have an idea what the public wants, but as far as the workshops, Daniel wants to visit with each individual council member separately to get an idea of what each council member wants. So, we will take comments on 20, but we will not do anything today because we still need some priorities. And at this time, we will reconvene into open session out of executive. And the first thing that we are dealing with will be item number 12. This was requested by Councilmember Wardlaw, and it is the discussion and possible action concerning future further employment of Corello engineers. And again, Ms. Bowling, if things get, I know that this is a very sensitive thing, if we get out of line, I want you to yell point of order, because I don't want to get out of line on this one. So, with that, I turn it over to you, Mr. Wardlaw.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, I don't intend to get out of line. I put items number 12 and 13 on the agenda, and they're sort of interconnected depending on the vote on the first item, which is further employment of Corello engineers. I have carefully gone over the contract of the city with Corello engineers. It's an original contract with about three amendments, and in this contract, it allows the city at its pleasure to terminate the contract at any time. The contract, as amended, basically has three sections to it.
And excuse me, I just wanted to reassert my opinion, which I provided to the city manager with affirmation from TML and the Texas Attorney General, that it would be within the province of an attorney-client executive session for consultation with the attorney to discuss a pending contract, not an open session, that involves the rights and liabilities of the parties under the contract. And I just wanted to reaffirm my recommendation to counsel, if we are to discuss a contract, we would need to do, and under the terms, and I can read or share my legal opinion that I have provided, and the confirmation from TML and the Attorney General, this is a matter that I would recommend be discussed in closed session under the attorney. in closed session under the attorney-client privilege.
Repeat what she said, please.
Ms. Bowling?
Yes.
Say it again.
I formally issued a legal opinion to the city manager.
No, I can't hear it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, I'm, I'm just restating it. And I also, uh, based on the city manager's request, confirmed with TML and the Assistant Attorney General's office about whether it would be permissible or warranted to discuss a pending contract such as this one, for which we have a long-term relationship in executive session. And it was my recommendation that the contract be discussed, and the termination of the contract, and matters relating to the rights and liabilities of this contract in executive session under the attorney-client privilege for consultation with the attorney.
May I, uh, address that?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I have closely looked at the law and matters, uh, I don't believe this is a matter to be on a, uh, closed session, but it's up to the council to place these on either open session or closed session. There, there's nothing in the Open, uh, Meetings Act that requires stuff to be held in closed session. That's the, that is discretionary of the camp, between the council members themselves. And so, this idea of saying, whatever, I put something on the open session, it needs to be in the closed session. I put something on the closed session, no, it needs to be in the open session. Uh, this is totally wrong, a wrong opinion of the law, and we can hear this anywhere we want to, plus the fact, this council has made it clear many times, uh, that we want transparency, and the mayor just acknowledged that before we went to lunch, and now here we're saying that the city attorney, right, I don't know if she's ordering or whether she's recommending this be put in executive session, but, uh, I put it on the open session, and it's legal to do that here, and, uh, that's what, what I want to do unless the council wants to overturn, uh, what I, what I have requested again. Uh, I just can't get anything on the agenda to be heard.
Mr. Wardlaw, let's hear what you have to say. It's fine.
And it was only a recommendation. Um, it was just a recommendation, uh, for council, and I just wanted to reaffirm a prior opinion.
Council does understand that we are dealing with this against the recommendation and the advice of our council.
City attorney.
City attorney. Council recognizes this.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Wardlaw.
Kind of hard to make a presentation under these circumstances, but anyway, I believe what I was saying is that, uh, the contract with Correlo engineers has, uh, basically three parts to it. The first is having to do with the, uh, the well field itself and the work to be done out there. Uh, the second item is the, uh, pipeline from the well field to San Angelo. Both of those projects are close to being completed but not completed. Then the third segment of the contract has to do with the, uh, construction of the, of the treatment plant to remove the, the radionuclides and collect the radium, and it has not been started, of course, and bids just came in in the last few days, uh, which is on the agenda, which item is on the agenda later on. But in any event, what I'm recommending in my item eleven, excuse me, twelve, is, uh, that, uh, Correlo be allowed to finish its work, uh, on, on the first two segments of the contract, and the third item, uh, that we look at hiring somebody else, uh, that, uh, this council has trust and confidence in. Uh, I believe that we can do better than what we have now. Uh, and let, let me, my two objections are this, which I will expand on, but number one is Correlo's fees are excessive, in my opinion. They've already been paid twelve million dollars on a fifty-eight million dollar contract, or a little less expenditures, and, uh, they're scheduled to make another seven million dollars on the water treatment plant and, uh, some well field work. So, we spent seventy million dollars already, we got fifty more million dollars to spend. Uh, my theory on this, and, and I think some others are the, on the council, would be, uh, that, uh, we would like to have somebody that we have trust and confidence in to do, uh, the consulting work and try to get us, uh, a fee that is less. Uh, we, we won this election. Uh, what the people, uh, the public needs to know is that all of those people who, who ran and won, uh, did a whole lot of homework and due diligence, and we consulted and met with a number of water experts, and they advised us to go slow on this, and, uh, that, uh, there are a lot of problems and, and considerations that we have to make, uh, with respect to the water treatment plan in the third segment of this project. And I've got a list of fourteen issues and, and questions that I have, and I know that other council members who, who worked on this before the, even while the election was going on, we took time off from the election to, to educate ourselves and, and become up to speed, uh, on, on the water treatment plan and the Hickory project in general. Uh, I was on the council ten years ago, and, uh, we, we studied the Hickory, uh, well field in great detail and had a many hundreds of thousands of dollars report made on it by Freeze and Nichols, uh, and studied it, and we concluded at that time, as have subsequent councils, uh, that this project had a lot of problems. So, it's, it's important to understand that we're not shooting from the hip those who are concerned, and, uh, we, we know, we know what the issues are, we know what the problems are, we know what the warts are of, of the Hickory, uh, and it, it's only a stopgap, uh, uh, water source that would be used in times of emergencies, and we are getting close to an emergency if we don't keep getting some more rain. But, uh, my, my, my contention is that this council has the right to have, uh, a wa, a consultant at many millions of dollars, be somebody that they have trust and confidence in, and, uh, we have a legal right to do that. We have the moral right to have that type of person. It's no, uh, it's nothing against Mr. Huslam. I've never met him, but I've seen his presentations, and I don't have trust and confidence in him. Uh, and, uh, it's not just me. A number of the other people do not have trust and confidence in him. Uh, in fact, uh, I will tell you, sitting in, uh, Mr. Dixon's office down at City Hall, he told two of us that yes, uh, there were problems with Mr. Huslam, uh, and they were trying to keep him away from the council, city council members because of the problems with him and the fact that the council, the previous council was not even comfortable with him. So, uh, I'm not finished. Do you have something to say? I'll wait. All right, you, you, you might be seated. So, uh, no, in no way is anybody trying to hold this thing up. Uh, the, the item was, the items that were of such contention, uh, in the first meeting, that they took off were these items having to do with Correlo and the employment of a new water consultant, and that new water consultant would have to be approved by the council, and it could be any number of people that we interviewed. But I did have someone from one of the top firms here in the state of Texas willing to come here on, today at this meeting, if my items have not been pulled off the agenda. And another thing, it's important, a couple of more things that's important for people to understand is, uh, the objections to what I want to do and what I believe this council may want to do is not based on the merits, it's based on the fact, uh, that they're worried about the delay. Well, uh, I, I think, I don't think there'll be much delay, and, uh, Mr. Dixon obviously will have a, a rebuttal to that, but, uh, uh, you know, to me, uh, they're just changing the, the term of the delay, which indicates to me it's, it's scare tactics, and I just wish that we'd debate the merits rather than, than anything else. And, uh, let me tell you folks too, and, and I'm addressing my constituents and people that have called me, they have great concern about the location of the treatment plant, whether it's here in the city limits of San Angelo or somewhere else that would give the citizens more protection against, uh, this dangerous radioactive material that's going to be accumulated, uh, in a tr, processing plant here in town. And I have not, um, I have not seen the requisite amount of concern by the city staff for the liability that we have under the, under the circle of which is, uh, the federal law having to do with, uh, with radioactive or, uh, uh, dangerous waste. And, uh, also, another complaint I have against the city, but in particular Correlo, is the city, the, the citizens need to understand that with respect to the, the treatment plant, only one bid was received, and they took that one bid without, without going back and getting other bids. And it's not just a one bid which is suspicious, but it's also their, uh, you know, uh, that's just not a good way to do business, and, uh, I hold Correlo in part responsible for that, even though it's probably more, more of the city's fault in, in that connection. And so, um, I, I just, I just hope this council will get somebody that we have trust and confidence in to finish out this project and, and be spending the next, the fifty million dollars of the taxpayers' money, uh, to, uh, and make sure that we get this right once and for all. And that's what the people, uh, that I've talked to and my constituents want me to do. There are lots of other problems with the way this has been handled, but I'm sure the mayor doesn't want me to talk too much longer. But, uh, that's kind of the long and short of it. Uh, and so, I guess we'll just see, uh, whether, uh, what, where, where everybody else's trust and confidence is, and, uh, I'm, I'll be ready to vote on it.
Mr. Dixon?
I have one, um, problem in particular with this statement that he made about him sitting in my office and me saying that, uh, I agreed with him that, um, I didn't trust, uh, Mr. Correlo. What was actually said in my office?
Mr. Wardlaw said, excuse me, I have something to say now.
I agree with you.
What Mr. Wardlaw said is he didn't trust Hutch because he couldn't understand him. I told him I understood that was an issue, and I'm trying to do the presentations. It had nothing to do with whether I thought Mr. Musalem was doing a good job or not. It was all dealing with the statement that was made by Mr. Wardlaw, that he didn't trust him because he couldn't understand him. And I want to get that straight. I have no issues with Correlo whatsoever on this project. They have been instrumental in getting the progress to where it is today. I've talked to the Texas Water Development Board, and they have no issues with our engineers. They understand that engineers can be changed during the project, and they understand that. They don't have an issue with that. There will be, um, some delays, I think, unfortunately, uh, with not getting the treatment plant finished. Uh, it's blessed that we have rain, and, and I appreciate that, and I thank God for it, but I run the numbers yesterday. We've got about fifteen months. If we award the treatment plant today, and we can issue a notice proceed after the Texas Water Development Board releases the funds by September first, it's a three hundred and sixty-five day project, and everything goes perfect, and we can finish by next September, if we don't get substantial runoff the rest of the year, we're going to run out of water in October. That's a month's window that I don't feel real comfortable about, and that's my concern with this project. So, I just want you all to know that, that those are my issues, and I appreciate the time.
Do you have a problem with Correlo?
Not at all.
Have they, have they fulfilled their duties as we have expected them to do, in your opinion, sir?
I believe they have fulfilled their contract duties and went above that with their, um, representation of our problem with the TCQ and the Texas Water Development Board and all the Endangered Species Act and, and environmental stuff that we had to go through, that, um, this project has progressed greatly, and even the Texas Water Development Board. I talked to Mr. Nichols yesterday, and he said he was, uh, very impressed with the progress of this, this project. You know, if, if Correlo engineers are, let go of the project, any existing projects that's going on comes to a stop. They have to have a Texas Water Development Board-approved inspectors for the job, which the city does not have those resources to furnish that. Um, and they all have to be approved. I mean, we can't let projects go on, and they're going to stop. There's going to be contractor delays and other issues, so.
Have they overcharged us over what we agreed to in the original contract, or have they been paid according to the original contract?
They've been paid according to the original contract and even on the original service agreement and Amendment One, which is closed. Uh, I think there was a balance on that contract of fifteen thousand dollars that they didn't use, so they didn't charge us for it. I mean, and this is not your typical design project. This isn't, uh, we're going to draw you up a set of plans and hand them to you and say, thank you very much, and call us if we can help again. That service was provided, along with some middle reviews, all the inspection, all the meetings, everything that goes along with the project, project management, the whole nine yards. They brought in inspectors from out of town to put on this job permanent as required by the Texas Water Development Board. So, I think they have performed admirably. I have no issues with their work.
Do you have anything further to add? If not, I'm going to over to the council.
Yes, there is, there is a couple of other things. I, I don't know where this is going, and, and just so everybody's clear, all the funding that's provided for the Hickory project cannot be used for any other project. This is Hickory project money alone. They can't use it for anything else. And also, there has been an established fee for the engineering and approved by the Texas Water Development Board loan, and that fee cannot be exceeded and paid for by the loan. If, then, the process of the city choosing another engineering firm should run over the amount that is approved by the Texas Water Development Loan, those funds will be paid by the city, not from the loan.
Daniel, do you have a statement?
I, I do want to reiterate what Ricky just said, and, and trust me, we, I hate to use the term, we don't have a dog in this game, but the deal is, is that objectively our job is to like, take a look at a situation and figure out where we currently are. My concern at this point is just what Mr. Dixon just mentioned a while ago, is from an emergency standpoint, uh, we put a stop to a project at this point that, uh, is on target to hopefully give us relief if, uh, worst-case scenario comes, comes into play. I'm concerned that a year down the road, uh, we are, will still be in, in very drought conditions, and we won't be able to, uh, provide our citizens the water that's so necessary. I know that, I do understand the concerns expressed, uh, at this point. I think that before council members even act on this, what I'd love to be able to do is possibly sit down and discuss those fourteen points of concern that you have, and see how we can address that. And if at some, if for some reason we feel that there is no way, uh, that we can continue working with Correlo, we can bring this back to the city council at the next meeting. But at this point, I think that, uh, it may be a little bit too rash to act and say we are going to, uh, stop working with, with Correlo Engineering. I just really would like to have an opportunity to take a look at all those concerns that, uh, you have expressed, Mr. Wardlaw, and see how we can either work, uh, work this out, or if not, come back. It is, it's your will, absolutely, you know, whether you want to, uh, you know, hire somebody else. But, uh, definitely for the sake of delaying and, and the possibility as far as the water, uh, supply, I would prefer that we'd have a sit-down, discuss that, and bring it back at the next meeting.
I'm going to have to respectfully, uh, turn down your, your request. Uh, in, in the interest of time, I'm trying to be expeditious about this myself.
Who was it, who was it that made the decision to not start the filtration plant until after the pipeline was done? Was that Correlo?
Come forward, please.
That's a big thing for me. I don't understand it.
No, it's not Correlo.
Would you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Hutch Musalem, and I'm with Correlo Engineers. I have been the, I'm the project manager with Correlo, and I am actually a vice president as well in the company. I have been involved with the city of San Angelo since nineteen ninety-nine. My first involvement was when we did the design, the wa- My first involvement was when we did the design, the wastewater treatment plant, bio-solids, sludge management, and order control improvements. Five years later, we were, I was retained as a project manager for distribution system improvements. And back in '09, December, December '08, we were retained to do, for the Hickory project. And that project, it started the first two phases. There was study and pilot plant investigations. That was before we, we even went to the loan. At the time, when we went, when we finished the project, the first phase, there was the feasibility. And I, I did work with the firm that you had, I was one of the senior associates, project manager there, the firm that you mentioned with that report. At the time that report was done, the technology had been different. But regardless, we, we, I was just going to say things, we were selected through a highly competitive process involving several firms. We were interviewed. We won the work because the city's selection committee was convinced we had the best qualifications and experience for the city's project. All major decisions, including whatever, all the piloting, studies, delays, that you may, may have alerted to, were made jointly with a staff, maybe the previous staff, and brought to the City of San Angelo Council, as well as the Water Advisory Board, for approval and making the decision. And, and what it was, when we started Phase 2, which is the detailed design, that's when the Texas Water Development Board money was approved and allocated, and we were instrumental in helping the city get that loan. That was for the detailed design. And the city staff at the time, they felt that as regulations were changing on reverse osmosis, they said, "Well, you know, we have, we know that this thing works, this single-use ion exchange or the filtration U, we know that this thing works, that we don't have a lot of competition there, let's look at another technology." And so, we jointly discussed that with Will Wildey at the time and other staff, and we discussed with the Texas Water Development Board and TCQ. And at the time, we felt that going to reverse osmosis, which was the second selection when, you know, from our first-phase project, you know, it was the second-best thing, would be, would be a good, good thing to, to check. And, and for sure, and it worked. And in fact, after several months of building the pilot plant, the second pilot plant, and testing it, the results showed that it worked. But there was a caveat in that some of that radium from the ion exchange would go back to the city's wastewater treatment plant, you know, within the limits, within, within the concentrations. But we came back to present it, and we said, you know, "This is going to cost you this, this is going to cost you that." Over a 10-, 20-year period, costs were very much identical. And the city council elected to go with the older technology that was selected a year or so ago. That is when, and that was back in May of 2000, May of 2012. That is why we, we had held on the design until everybody, including city staff, was signed off on the technology that was to be used. In hindsight, if we did not do the pilot plant, yes, that project would probably, the treatment plant would probably be close to completion. But that was not my decision. That was something that came out. There was, and you talk about fees, there was, you know, the fees for the design initially were based on a 7% for final design. City did some work, some work on the plan and profile for the pipeline. Altogether, we were honest with the city, saying, you know, "We are not going to overcharge, and this is not a lump-sum job. This is a cost-plus, not to exceed, so we will charge for the time and material that's used." And we came to the city, we said, you know, "There is money that is going to be left from the design of the pipeline, 700, 800,000. You know, that will, if you want us to do the pilot plant, we can do that for that money, for no additional money to the city." We had to clear that hurdle with the Texas Water Development Board, because they want to make sure that what's in basic services and special services stays. But it was fine. And we came to council August 7th, August 2nd, 2011, presented that, saying that this would be, what is the, what is the council's decision? And we had unanimous vote, I believe, to go and do that second pilot plant. So, this is what, excuse me, this is why there was that delay. It didn't cost the city any extra money. It was within the original budget. Now, it did expand that, and I know Mr. Wardlaw is concerned about the, that budget. But that budget was, there was a lot of things, this is a lot of complications on this job that were before, and a lot of studies that were happening before and during the design, a lot of the studies, a lot of pilot plants, and these pilot plants are not cheap. I mean, the chemical, the chemical analysis that we spent between pilot plants, it's just, you know, I was just, you know, running our computer. We have over $700,000 from that money that was spent in, with labs between the two pilot plants. You know, our, we have over 20%, or 20, between 20 and 25%, that was paid to subs and labs. And we have over 1.14 million from that money that was paid to local subs, San Angelo subs. So, this was the story, and this is why this thing had been delayed. Luckily, when we, when we went back and said, you know, "Let's revive this," it was already a year late, or a year and a half late. One of the two approved vendors for the single-use ion exchange was starting to, we didn't, we didn't know whether they were going to be in business or not. We didn't have a clear direction. We knew that one was going to be in business. And I believe, I came to council, that May or June, and I have that video, and I said, you know, "If we go with single-use ion exchange, that's probably good. Somebody's going to take care of that resin, but you may be ending up with one vendor." And this council voted to go with it. So, when, when Mr. Wardlaw says we ended up with one bid, that was when we did the procurement document just for the ion exchange filters. And he's right. That was something that was discussed with council, and you can look at the minutes. And I, I basically said, "This could be, this could be an issue." Luckily, it came, and, and the, the WRT was a, a technology that worked, and the WRT company has a lot of installations. We went and visited some, and we were very, we worked very closely with them to develop that portion of the project. Now, that portion of the project is only a small portion of the overall. I mean, you have to treat the water for, there's iron, and that's, there's iron, there's other things in that water that makes it more complicated. It's not just the radium. The radium is above maximum contaminant level, and so is, so is, so is iron. Other than that, it's perfect. But with the technology, with, we've got a lot of, we have, you know, Carrillo has a lot of bench strength, and this is what we do. Treatment and water is what we do. We've been in business since 1933. We're a national firm, and I've been with the company for about seven years now. So, you know, that's what it is. We, we spent, we spent a lot of time looking at the existing facility and figuring out how we can tie this groundwater facility to the, to the new facility. And so, we had to do some improvements to the existing facility as well. That was also, you know, done within the budget. And then, before that, we had the question, whether this is going to be at the plant, or whether the treatment location is going to be at the plant or at the well field. And I, I know, I understand this, this is concern, that if, if, if it was feasible to do it at the well field, then maybe that would be a good thing. But we came and brought it to council, and there was pros and cons. The fact of the matter is, the well field had a lot of pros. You keep it there, right? You keep it there, you treat it, but then you have the issue with the iron. What do you do with the iron? And if you, when you bring it to the city, you've got local personnel, and this, this iron, you can send it back to the wastewater plant to mix with the sludge. So, it's, it's a treatment, but it was also a disposal, it was a disposal situation. For the end, for the situation with, with the radium removal vessels, the city, part of the procurement documents that was submitted by WRT back in December, there is a contract, and that contract would say that the city would enter into a 10-year agreement with WRT, that they will be responsible for handling the resin, including replacing it and with disposing it. Because the city didn't want to get involved in messing with recr and landfills, and I understand that. And that's probably one of the reasons this council at the time decided to go back with this technology. But I do understand, this is new council, I would, I would just hope, and, and I hope that I can talk in a way that members can understand me. But honest to God, I would like to, if there's any issues or problems, whether it's billing or anything, I would like to know what it is. I, I was under the impression the city has been very happy with our work. And, you know, our contact has been the utilities department, and sometimes we see Daniel, sometimes we see other staff. And from all, from all my, from my perspective and our perspective as a company, we have done, we have done well. Our billings are open. You know, it's ours, and we have a specific multiplier, we have a specific ceiling that we have never exceeded. We, I'm hoping that we won't even get there, because a lot of the time, a lot of the budget that was spent was on the treatment. I mean, if you cancel this project now, the money, the actual money that was spent, most of it, has been on the treatment, whether it's the two pilot plant investigations that were conducted, or the final design, because that, designing the treatment is a lot more complicated than designing a linear pipeline, and it costs a lot more. So, we're done with that design. We believe we have some money left in the budget. We can keep it. And, you know, we're hoping that, you know, we went through some hoops to get it done in time. We're hoping that this is something that is seen, but we're okay with whatever the city council's decision is at this point. We, we do not believe that it would be in the city's interest to change engineers at this time. In our, in our opinion, it can increase costs, and we don't know why there, no issues were brought over the last 40 years and seven months. Everything has been brought to council. Everything has been brought to the water board. I have been certainly available by, by members of the, of the, of the media, as well as others. And yes, we had a couple of occasions that people were scared about radium, but at all times, we came in and, and addressed it. We brought the, the, we brought the experts. And you know, there's not, it's not a perfect water source. The surface water is definitely better than this water, and it's cheaper. Nobody is contending that, and nobody's saying that this is the water that is going to be the, the every water for you. No, this is only a portion. And there are other, there are other things, like the Rojo, there's other things that you need to look at to augment your water resources. But this is a good viable solution that will give you, you know, six to 10 MGD for a particular, and, you know, for some time. You know, so that, that's all I have to say, and I want to thank you for this opportunity, and, and I do accept whatever decisions you all make.
Thank you, Hud.
Thank you.
I have some comments, and I'll link them all together, and then I've got a question to ask everyone before we go any further. So, you say four years and seven months is how long you've been doing this project with the city?
Correct.
Four years and seven months.
I believe it is.
Do you recall what the original estimate was that you gave us for total engineering cost four years and seven months ago?
We did not give a total engineering cost. We gave a total project cost, I believe, 120.5 million.
So, you didn't break it down to as for engineering cost, exchange cost?
I have to go back and look, but typically what we've said on these, on the slides and the reports, we put 18% for engineering. But I couldn't, I mean, I have to go back and look.
In looking back at some of the financials and, and asking staff to provide me with the total monies that we had spent to date, I became very alarmed at the amount of money spent to date and the percentage of it that was for engineering.
Correct.
What would, you said a while ago, you mentioned what was the cost plus not to exceed. Did you ever give us a percentage that the engineering portion of the project would be?
Because there is a lot of studies, the percentages have, have been used by us and the Texas Water Development Board as guidelines. But it, no, when we, when we, when we put the fee together, it's the, what we think is effort. For example, when you have an inspector on the side, if the project is $5 or $5 million, that inspector's salary still have to be paid. So, sometimes it gets skewed. Now, somebody's saying that 6% to 7% for the final, just the design, I can see, a little bit less on pipeline, a little bit more for treatment. But there's a lot of things, a lot of studies, you know, from the loop test to two pip, to two pilot plant investigations, things of that nature, that are typically not tied to the percentage. And you can look at pretty much most of the, or all the ones that I know, these are, that's why you call, you know, these are not even considered as special, basic services.
Also, one of the things that kind of got me to looking at our total numbers that we'd spent and for what on this project, other than it being the taxpayers' dollar that we're spending up here?
Yeah, I understand.
Is I was looking at bids, the bids for the water remediation technology, which came recommended by you, and you came recommended to us by, from Mr. Wildey. And the bids went out, and when we got to the point to explore or to award that bid, Water Remediation Technologies was the only company that bid on it.
Correct. And that's, that's what I just mentioned. Six months before that, I, when we went to single-use ion exchange, that was, that was a concern that because technologies were changing and people were, some of, some of the people that we studied were not interested.
Well, I took the information straight from our minutes, and I called one of the companies that we sent a packet out to, and told them who I was, and that I was curious as to why they chose not to bid on our project, which is within my right to do.
Absolutely.
What they told me was they never received a request for bid from the City of San Angelo, which bothered me.
That, that would.
You know, if we only had one received, so I wanted to know how our bid process worked, how it was handled, and much to my dismay, we do not have a return receipt requested on those things that we send out, and we should have, and that's another issue. But that got me to looking even further into the amount of monies that have been spent to date. I do find the engineering fees excessive. My brother's an engineer. He's certainly not, say, an engineer of your caliber or your studies, but I discussed approximate range, and I've asked several contractors and stuff, the approximate range that we could expect to pay in just engineering fees. And I do find them excessive. You know, today, the council is considering the purchase of a water purification plant before we have drilled all the wells necessary to pump water to the plant. And further, the council is considering building a water purification plant based on the design specific to Water Remediation Technologies, who is the only company to return a request for their proposal, so far. Is that right?
That is, that is a true statement.
Water Remediation Technologies claim to be the only company doing this type of radium removal, yet they have not shown us their financials, their scientific procedures that they do this by, their approvals. I've, I've not seen anything come across to document, the company's going to be here tomorrow. And they've not shown us any installation that is presently refining any quantity approaching the size considered by San Angelo. And that has or is removing 35 pico carries, and I pardon, I'm not a water specialist, but of radium, of even half that is under consideration as to what they're doing. With this limited knowledge, the council being asked to purchase this plant without knowing how much it's going to cost to dispose of the radium, once it's removed, by a company who has had no competition in their proposed field or in other cities, it, it doesn't seem to be wise to commit the city to a route that obligates us to costs that we don't know what they are. That's what you're asking for. So, I, I'm, just, just a moment, because I'll lose my train of thought.
Sorry, sorry.
If any of the, rest of the council wishes to vote for radium removal plant before they have good figures on the radium disposal cost, or know the price of what the disposal cost per 1,000 gallons is going to be, and not hesitate in doing this, I would find surprising. But four years and seven months, you as the engineer have had the opportunity to bring to us and show us possibly within a range of what the disposal cost is going to be. That, to me, is alarming. That to me is alarming and I, it, to me, it's questionable as an engineer of the project, why in four years and seven months have you not, or somebody, not talked to us about this price?
Okay. May I speak?
Yes, you may.
Well, I, I think a lot of what you say, a lot of resonates with us even and some of the concerns. I understand. And the fact of the matter, uh, radium removal technologies are not, there's not a whole lot. I mean, you can remove radium, but it's, it's the caveat is in the waste disposal. So Texas Water, the TCEQ requires every technology to be piloted. That's we build the building, we have a small, you know, we, we have, uh, we basically test it for three or four or five months with the actual water that's going to be treating. The first pilot plant was for the single use ion exchange, which included Dow, uh, media made by Dow Chemical and WRT and a third vendor that was available, but didn't, the results were not very good. So we basically said, and you know, that these two, these two top of media, one is WRT and one is Dow can actually, can do the job, would send, the, the TCEQ, uh, reviewed and we met with them, reviewed the pilot plant investigation and we basically, we, we established design parameters. So when we put this thing on hold for about a year, a year and a half or a year, we went back to the technology number two because the council and the, and the utilities department was like, "Well, isn't there something different?" I said, "Well, everything, every technology that we talk about, every technology before we talk about and make it, you know, before we can even go to design has to be piloted and that makes it expensive." So the second one was to go to the single, to the, to reverse osmosis, which worked very well as well. But, but when we brought the two, you know, the old results and the new results and we had this discussion, pros and cons, I was to go with, you know, the council elected to go with single use ion exchange. So we went back to the drawing board, took the information that we gathered from pilot plant investigation and did procurement documents and the detailed design for the plant, which was completed two or three months ago. So in the process, W, you know, there was, uh, WRT manufactures, makes their own media and they manufacture their own vessels, whereas the other vendor just sells the media. The contractors that were, that typically what we call original equipment manufacturers, they had a dispute with the vendor, it looks like, with Dow and they said, "We do not want to bid on this job." This is why we ended up with one bid instead of two. But all along, we knew the maximum we can get in a, in a request for procurement was up to two.
Well, I, I want to follow-
And as far as the waste disposal, let me just finish here because that's a very important. We made a lot of, during the, the study, you know, different data, we come in with, one time it's going to cost you this and the next time we change it depending on the data. And, and this is still a work in progress in the state as far as what sites are permitted, what is not. And then, you know, as we, there's a lot of things that got developed during the process. But luckily, this WRT does the turnkey operation and the bids for the disposal, for the operations came, came in the procurement documents a, as well. So we know the numbers and they were actually better than what we originally, it's a little bit better than, you know, what we originally anticipated. So-
I, I still am having problems in the engineering process and I'll wrap this up with just two more deals-
Yes, ma'am.
That I have a hard time understanding why you as the engineer service has not been able to provide us with a cost for, it's going to be one dollar or ten dollars per gallon to haul off, you know, the waste.
I, I have, but you haven't, you don't, maybe you don't see it, you, but it's been provided.
It has?
Yes.
I've never been provided that I recall the cost of the radium, but, uh, any, at any point, I find it difficult to understand why we wouldn't have it-
We can, we can-
If W, uh, RT is providing facilities in California, Illinois, Wisconsin, New Jersey, New York, Virginia, I mean, there, there's got to be a price out there. Has it been provided to us? And you mentioned in your statement that you came to council and the discussion was going on about putting the plant, you know, inside the city limits outside and the conversation going on. But what you failed to mention is this council never made a decision as to where to have that location. It's never come back.
Yes, we did.
I don't, just, excuse me. I don't recall it and I would have, I've looked-
I voted against it. Twice I brought this up, to put this on the well field.
I would need to look at the minutes to read that because I don't recall it. And I do have a problem, and especially since the actions out at West Texas, the explosion, I have a problem with locating that plant, that facility inside the city limits because you, you're not going to stand there and tell me that there's not an explosive, uh, part to it, that it, it's possible. It's possible.
Uh, I would say this is not a very likely to explode. This isn't, the concern would be radium-
I don't want to live next door to it or have my business there.
I think it's safer than some of the other treatment technologies that there are. But I do believe that this came to a vote because we had pros and cons. I do remember that Mayor, Mayor Morrison was a council member, he was sitting there and him and another person voted nay and everybody else voted, "Yeah, let's go take it to San Angelo." And then we did it. I mean, the, the details of the final design are so specific that you have to know where you're designing and what you're designing. You have to know what you're designing to and where before you can do the final design. And so, once that was established, we went and did the final design. When was that established though?
Uh, Johnny, I think you've been waiting. It's your time.
Oh.
Well, just one second. I think it's, what was the bid, fifty-nine cents?
May I address, may I address? This is Kevin Krueger. I would like to address a question of the price of the disposal. That, that was determined when we opened bids for the procurement documents with WRT and that price is fifty-nine cents per thousand, so-
I'm sorry, was what?
Fifty-nine cents per thousand. So that, that was the point at which we, we knew for sure, you know, up until that point, it would be an estimate as to what we would be charged. But once the bids were actually opened, and that was what, in September or-
Actually, the bids were open in January.
In January of twenty thirteen, so-
It was, it was a procurement, so-
And that, that's a, that's a price that's guaranteed for ten years with this company. So I just wanted to make sure that we understood that.
Johnny.
Hutch, Hutch, the only questions I had was, you know, like Ms. Farmer says, it's four years, seven months. Well, I've slept many times since then.
Me too.
And I do remember the hundred and twenty million dollar projected price and that's what the loan, we applied for the loan for, for the total project, okay? Aside from that, I don't remember every single detail. But, uh, I just wanted to kind of follow up on Mr. Wardlaw's, uh, the fourteen issues of concern. Have, have those been shared with you and have you, so you don't even know-
This is, this is, last week was the first time, uh, I hear that there's a concern-
Okay.
About me or this project. And so I, I mean, I thought that, uh, everything was hunkered away frankly, but-
So you haven't, you haven't had the, the, given, given the opportunity to even address those concerns?
I have not been, I do not know what the concerns are, but I will be more than happy-
Neither do I. So that's, I was just curious to see what they were or-
Be more than happy to address or sit down with anyone. And, and I understand, you know, this is a sensitive topic.
Because I think if I have concerns with you, I would follow with Daniel or I've got your number, I would have called you and, and addressed them. And then hopefully, if I don't get a remediation, if I don't like what I'm hearing, then I bring it up. But again, if you haven't been given the opportunity to, to respond, uh, then that's, I, I see a problem there.
And, and I have to say that all the fees, all the engineering fees were reviewed by, um, the utilities department. A lot of, the biggest contract volume, biggest contract, which is amendment number two, that was seventy, that was basically constitutes about seventy-five percent of the total fee, was presented to council with the actual dollars for the engine, not to exceed dollars for the details. I believe the date was February first, two thousand and eleven. That, that in the same, that contract was actually also reviewed by the water advisory board, where you, they went line by line and was understood that sometimes these are just general guesstimates, that we will stay within these guidelines, but sometimes between different tasks, we may have to shift dollars upward down, uh, just depending to see, you know, depending on what, how things, how things-
And we, let me, let me throw this in and I'll in here. We did beat that horse to death when on the water treatment and we both, I remember voting against it and so did Mr. Morrison. We wanted it out there at the water fields, at the water, but-
And if I'm not mistaken, Charlotte made the motion to put it here.
I believe-
If I'm not mistaken, you made the motion to put that water treatment here. Because I brought this up specifically to discuss it because I did not want that thing sitting down there on the Concho River. And I was voted down. It was a five-two vote.
So when I heard that this estimate was coming in for this treatment plan at under two, way on, with a two million dollar savings, you know, I, I was happy with it, so-
You know, and, and our last estimate for the water plant, what we showed that Texas Water Development Board to keep, you know, hold the money was twenty-nine, seven fifty and that's with the extra two MGD, you know, have a capacity of eight MGD. We, everything was designed, our contract was for six MGD, but because the city is expanding the wells, we said, you know, let's put an alternate bid item. If, if the bids come good, you know, the city should have additional treatment capacity for its citizens. And that was not added, you know, we didn't ask for additional service for it, it was just there. Luckily, um, we, it came about two million, two million dollars below our estimate and-
Right.
We had three bids, three closed bids and the lowest was two million. And, and when you have closed bids, that means that the set of plans and specs is very good. And when you have approvals from the Texas Water Development Board and TCEQ in a, in astronomical quick time, it means that the engineering was good as well. Now-
Thank you.
Marty?
Uh, Ricky, you, uh, there, there was a contract and three amendments?
Yes, sir.
What were the amendments?
Now, do you want to know the total of the amendments or-
Well, I, I mean, were they because he, uh, because Correlo wasn't doing a good job or, I mean-
No, that was just part of the process of the development of the Hickory project.
Okay.
There was the original service agreement, then there was amendment one to do some more, amendment two to do some more work and amendment three to do some more work.
Okay.
All of these were brought to council. All of these numbers were aired out in the open. All of these numbers were voted on.
So they were fees?
They're fees. It's not a percentage contract. It's a not to exceed amount.
Okay.
Was that original estimate?
Pardon me?
I thought I heard you mention the original estimate and I didn't hear-
When Marty's through, Rodney is next.
Uh, so, we've spent twelve million dollars in engineering fees.
Give or take.
Okay. And, and what, what, is that what they were approved? Is, is that what was approved?
Yes, they have not exceeded any approved amount.
Okay.
Right now, they're working on amendment two and three. Amendment, the original service agreement and amendment one, that, those tasks are completed. Those books have been closed out for, I think, nearly a year.
Okay, what were those fees?
Hang on.
Amendment one is a million five, I think.
Okay.
And amendment, amendment two, according to Jimmy's figures in here, are fourteen, one forty, fourteen million, one hundred and forty thousand.
Don, are you thinking? Are you thinking?
I got them.
That, that's what it shows.
Okay.
Original contract was for eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Amendment one was for one million, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Amendment two's fourteen million, one hundred and forty thousand and amendment three's two million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. And, and did the council vote on those?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, so we, we as a council knew what the fee could be?
I believe all the amendments and original contracts were unanimous except amendment one. I think Mr. Morrison voted against it.
Okay. So when we talk about fees, we, we, we knew they could, we-
Yeah, you knew what those fees were, not to exceed amount.
Okay.
I believe that's correct.
Rodney?
I want to get back to, my question is, he said that the, they got everything kind of straight last May on this filtration building. In your opinion, were we not pushing them to say, "Hey, this pipeline is going to be done next summer. Why aren't we getting going on this filtration house earlier than now? Why, why am I seeing this? I shouldn't even be voting on this. It should have been built by now." So I want you, I didn't get, I didn't understand or get-
Mr. Fleming, I think the reason, and I think what Hutch was saying was because the additional tests and the pilot testing that had to be done on the treatment facility is why the delays were what they were before they could decide. TCEQ requires a pilot test.
But that was before May.
Yes, sir.
So what's happened from last May until now?
The design work and stuff and the procurements for the, the actual treatment facility and the other miscellaneous improvements at the water treatment plant. You know, y'all are scared of the radium and stuff. I'm more scared of the existing chlorine facility. You have a rupture on a radium cylinder inside the building where it's at, it runs off in the floor. You have a rupture on a one-ton cylinder at the water treatment plant? I don't know what kind of serious problems that citizens that live around the plant have. That's my concern. I'm not concerned about the radium. But back to your question, those things had to be done, a lot of this was done before me. I mean, these decisions were made by this council or not this council, by council that, okay, we're, we're good with ion, let's do the RO, that's more delays and you, all the tests come back, you have to do all this stuff. Then they actually, the engineering firm don't know what to design until the decision's made. They can't start anything until council says, "We're going to go with radium" and then they start.
So it took over a year to come up with a design? That's, that's the answer you're giving me?
That is, yes.
Yes.
Come to the microphone, Hutch.
I guess this, this was still what we consider an expedited schedule. There's a lot of details. I mean, a lot of people, a lot of details and involved, involvement in these minute, uh, minute details in this design. And what we, when we first started with this project, we have a schedule and for original contract, we said, "This is what we anticipate." And it's still in the original contract and that shows the completion in about a year or two from now, actually. So we have beat, we beat all the original, uh, what we, what we-
Possibly.
What we would, uh, scheduled for a, for a normal project. Now, this was unusual and we would have beat this too, but there was a decision from the, from the water staff, from the council, "Hey, let's look at other technologies." Because people wanted to see, you know, if, if, if really this is the best answer we can get, is single use ion exchange the best answer? And unfortunately, with these technologies, these, these new, these new processes, um, you cannot have a final answer, nor will the state approve it unless you have a full, full-blown, uh, pilot plant investigation. And we did those, you know, reverse osmosis, ion exchange, you know, it took, took a lot of buildings, a lot of equipment and you have to have ninety days of uninterrupted operation, plus the reports that go before and after. So it does take eight, nine months every time.
And we saw pictures and slides of that process and-
Johnny. Donny. Don?
Um, Jimmy, Ricky, I'm sorry. Uh, I was trying to make, uh, heads or tails of the, of the figures and not fussing, I'm just trying to understand. Okay, so our total contracts are nineteen million, three hundred and eighty-
Eighty thousand dollars, that's correct.
Now, for the, the new plant coming on, is that the two million, eight ninety for engineering fees? Or did I look at that wrong?
No.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not real, I'm not following your question yet, so try me again.
Okay.
Are you talking about what, what was the engineering cost for the new treatment plant?
Well, on your, on your slides, I was, that's what I was trying to figure out. It says Hickory Fund Summary Engineering Payments, nineteen million, three hundred and eighty thousand. And it shows original contract amendment one, two and three on that slide.
Right, okay.
And then what I was trying to figure out, that, does that include the, the well field engineering costs and?
Yes.
Okay, that's one of the amendments then.
Right.
Okay, okay. Uh, now, then on fee estimate breakdown, Correlo engineers can, continued, you've got total two million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, that's on amendment three.
Correct.
So do we, do we have a, an estimate on the engineering costs for the, the new plant in here anywhere?
That would be, I think the, that engineering fee was lumped in with amendment two.
Okay. So, so it's already in here?
Yes.
In the nineteen million?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, all that's complete.
That's what I was trying to figure out, sorry.
Any other further, further comment from council?
Yeah, boy.
Charlotte?
I would just like to ask if it is permissible for me just to ask, if I can't hear something, are you not going to let me ask for him to repeat what he said when I can't hear it? Because if you're not, I'm going to file a complaint against you with the American Disabilities Act. I simply was asking him to say what he said again, because I didn't hear it. Thank you.
Any other comment from council? Any comment from the floor? Somebody want to make a motion?
Have a...
Oh, come on up, sir. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Good afternoon. My name's Richard DeRobles. I'm not too sure this really fits, but it, when we're talking about this, I think it's important. I saw a news article last week or this week talking about the possibility of blending the water from the water line, the new water line, with existing water, six to one. And that was an official from the city talking about that and saying that would be acceptable under the law, and that we would install a bypass pipe, or I would expect there would be a bypass on the new facility anyway. But he said that decision had not been made. My question is, is it going to be made? Are we going to have a bypass? And number two, just hearing today that we spent all this money to design a plant, and if we discontinue his services, do we have in our, in our possession a complete design for that plant? Thank you.
Ricky?
I have called and talked to the TCEQ about the options of blending the water. They want a engineered stamp report of our plans, techniques, drawings, calculations, everything. I think the closer number is probably one to seven, figuring a safety factor of one to eight on the blending opportunity. That all has to go to the TCEQ. I've called them early to go ahead and try to get that answer in case we do have some water, and, and that blending is an option. The bypass pipe is reviewing the final plans of that. It was not in the original 62 miles of plant. That's 24 that goes around, ties into the new treatment plant. And then we've added a place that goes and ties into where our 39-inch raw water line comes in from Ivy. So we do have an opportunity to have a place to inject it into our local deal. But he's correct, that decision has not been made because we do not have that official, I guess, opinion from TCEQ.
Thank you. Do you want to add? Yes, sir.
Ricky, I'm sorry. Do, do you have any feel for that? Because to me, the year that we're, that we're in the process of building this thing, then we can gain basically a day a week with that.
Right. Well, there's some technicalities. You're, you don't, you're not in violation unless you go, I think, three or four consecutive quarters, or basically a year, and you bust your five peak carries per limit at that point. So there are some options that, you know, we might feed some water that's a little hot and back off, and, you know, so I feel good that, I think that they will let us do that. I mean, they understand the situation.
How, how long would it take to go ahead and tie in the system that you're talking about, that you just...
I think there's probably another 45 days of work, something like that.
And then we could actually be, be using some of the water?
Be sending some water. The booster pump station, there was increase on their contract time for some restrictions for, on some of the ranches during the hunting season, and they're expected to be through at the end of next month. So, yeah, I think 45 days. We could expect, if we can get the rest of that line in, that I, I think that would be an option if we can get a reply back.
Okay, good. I'd like to discuss that.
Yes, sir.
May I, may I do a follow-up question?
You've got, you've got about three minutes.
Okay. Then the question is, does the city have the capability to measure such low qual, low levels of that radiation? And if indeed we are going to be forced to ingest that radiation, are we going to be concerned, or are we going to be consulted? I haven't heard discussion from the city council about giving everybody a certain amount of radiation.
Answer his question, the limit is five peak carries from the EPA on drinking water standards. That's the only limit they have on this water. We do not have the equipment necessary to measure this water. We have to send those samples off. It takes a month to run those samples. So what water you think you're feeding today, you won't know for a month. So it takes a while to get them back. I don't know of any process that's faster to do it. It just takes time.
Am I right, Ricky, where Brady, I'm sorry to make you keep going back up there, but Brady, Brady doesn't do any kind of blending now, do they? They're taking it straight out?
I think there is some, some surface water that I think they're trying to blend with, but it's really sketchy.
It's very limited.
Yeah, they're just drinking it, I think.
I grew up in Mason. I grew up drinking this water until I was 18 years old when I moved away. So I'm not in fear. To me, I, I think that might be a little bit of an overkill on, on some of that stuff. And I know Brady doesn't do it right now. So, you know, I don't have as big a problem with that as I do with some of the other stuff. More the cost is the biggest problem I have right now.
Okay. Open for a motion.
Yes, I'll take a shot at it. I'll make a motion that as soon as Corillo engineers finishes their work on the well field and the pipeline and all of the accessories that go thereto, that their contract be terminated, and that, of course, at that, and at that point in time, we'll look for, or as soon as possible, we'll look for a new water consultant.
Second. I have a motion and a second, that just as soon as Corillo is through with the scope of the project that they are now, that's left. I guess that's the best way to say it, that they will be terminated. And I've had a second.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Could you say that again, when they complete which ones?
The projects that they're currently working on now, which you...
Your microphone, Winky.
Turn your microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it is on. I just wasn't close enough, turning. That as soon as, as Corillo engineers finishes the projects they're currently working on, which I believe to be the, a little bit of work left on the well field in McCullough County, and the pipeline, and all of the, all of the instruments and, and appliances that go therewith, then their contract would be terminated, and we would, could look for another consultant or even leave them in the mix to renegotiate, if we so chose, whatever, whatever the council decides.
Second still standing? Y'all have heard the motion?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wardlaw, would you reconsider your motion if you were to give them opportunity to answer your 14 concerns, which we, nobody seems to know?
I don't want to be horsey about this or arbitrary, Johnny, but I've thought about this a lot, and I've, I've talked to so many people and so many water experts that I've, that I know and respect and have confidence in. I just don't think it, it would do any good. If, if it would, I would agree to do that, but...
I have a...
Don?
A little bit of a question, clarification. Ricky, have, we've already paid them to do the engineering for the plant? Did, did I understand that right? Or we just have the contract with them to do the plant?
The plant has been, plans and specs are out and bid, and we received bids on the plant. So I'm going to help clarify that.
While the design work's done?
Yes, I mean, most, a lot of, I would say, a good 40% or 30 to 40% of that $12 million that we did was associated with the treatment in the plant, and that has been finished. So what's remaining, there's a few things remaining, but what's remaining is construction phase services, operations and maintenance manuals, startup assistance, communication, Texas Water Development Board, as well as risk management plan, if the city so chooses, and a CT study, which is a disinfection study at their wastewater, at their water treatment plant, because we upgraded the entire disinfection facility. Because when we did the evaluation of the surface water treatment plant, which was part of the scope, we found out that it was actually out of compliance, and we were able to marry up that facility to be both disinfection facility for the surface water treatment plant and the groundwater facilities to save the city some money and give use for a long period of time. So, yeah, so as far as our design, what is remaining is final design on the new well field expansion. We have the plans, we have the specifications and the contract documents for drilling the wells completed, and as the bids are coming on Thursday to the city. That has been advertised, that has been approved by the TCEQ, and so bids are, bids will be open here on Thursday, and the city, the city will decide whether it's five, six, or seven wells, depending on the bids. We believe that with the available funding, with available $120 million, the city could expand the well field by another five, by another, at least another five wells with all the well, with, with all the booster pump station expansion, et cetera. But the design for the booster pump station expansion and the actual equipping of the wells will be in a separate contract. And we did that because usually the contractors for the drillers are not the same as the contractors that equip these wells. And so we're about 40% complete on the final design of the well field expansion. And that would be equipping the wells, the interconnecting piping, the electrical, the buildings that go near these, these wells, upgrading the booster pump station and the electrical gear to, to take it from a six MGD to nine MGD or maybe more capacity. That is Amendment Number Three.
So basically, if your services were terminated at this time, you're, you're 90-plus percent complete excluding the well field?
Yes. The only thing that's remaining, and that's not a small, you know, that's not a small task, is construction phase services. Looking, you know, that's, that's separated into two phases. We've got the engineering services during construction whereby the design engineers who were involved, the day-to-day operations will actually make sure that what is submitted, things of that nature are within the intent of the design. We also have the inspection services by individuals that are approved by the Texas Water Development Board as well. And they will, they will be there here in San Angelo with the contractor day to day, putting reports to the Texas Water Development Board, making sure that everything, paperwork and everything, and the inspection is kosher as well.
So monetarily, how much roughly?
Well, the, it's, it's really hard to say monetarily here on the stand. I believe we still have about $7 million, give or take, of unused money. This money, we, if, if all goes well, I mean, this was not a lump-sum job, and, you know, it was, when I, we spoke, I made sure that, told Will at the time, hey, there's a lot unknowns. We want to put a ceiling that is fair, but that's within the limits, because if it wasn't, it wouldn't be approved by the board and other people. Anyway, so we, if we don't use that money, and we hope we don't, I mean, we hope we're like, we could leave a million, whatever, if things aren't efficient, then we won't build the city. And this is not the first time we'll leave money on a project like this. But it's up to the, it's up to council anyway.
Okay, thank you. Johnny?
Mr. Bennett, I just wanted to, and Hutch, or even Ricky, I'm going to ask that, you know, we're, we're at a point where I know it's very, it's, it's critical. I am going to vote against his motion, and only because, here, here's my concern. If we stop you now, what happens when we have to go back to the Texas Water Development Board and ask for, for the remaining funds to build the treatment plant? I mean, is that going to drag us out another year, another, you know, even longer than what it's already projected? I mean, what do we have to go through? I mean, it sounds like a nightmare if we have to start all over again. I know Hutch and his Corillo engineers had played a big part in helping us acquire the funding, helping us.
They were, they were required for us to get the funding. I think the main, the main thing that we're going to have is, we'll have to go back out, RFQ process to select another engineering firm. That engineering firm will have to be approved by the Texas Water Development Board, and then that engineering firm takes over where Corillo has been. You know, they have to get up to speed on the design of the plant. And if, if they accept those designs, are they going to redesign the plant? Are they going to want to use any of it? Is that going to cost us? I don't know. But the Texas Water Development Board understands, and this has happened before, but that engineering firm has to be approved by them. And I don't know what that takes and what delays that is.
And that's my biggest concern.
I know it's not going to happen in a short order.
Well, the applications that they're, right, they're going to do for us is, is one of my big concerns. But really, if we have to reinvent the wheel for this, if a new firm came on, that, that's just my concern. And I would hate...
We'll just have to see. I don't know what that actually entails.
Okay, well, having said that, yeah.
Rodney?
I want to agree with Johnny. You know, I, I think this contractor was way out of whack. I think they had a cap on it, and they're pushing it to the cap with the engineering fees. That's my opinion on that. But I don't want to start over on this. And that's, I'm voicing that because I, I know how I'm going to vote. I'm going to vote against it also. And I know that's going to be, a lot of people are not going to like that, but I don't want to start over. I'm really, really worried about next November. Next November is the thing that's on the back of my mind, and all I care about is the residents in this town. I don't want to delay this three or four months if we run out of water. So having said that, you know, I don't like what we're, the fees we are. I feel like the city, the previous city council, our contracts may not have been written well enough for us to, to back us up. And we may not have had all the information. It sounds like to me we didn't get all the information that we should have gotten. And I'm, I'm hearing that over and over again. That's kind of a reoccurring thing right now. So that's just the statement I wanted to make.
Marty?
And I think this end of the, of the council's kind of in agreement. I, I do too. I think the fees are high. I don't think the, the plant should have been built at this end. Prior councils took us into that direction on both of them. To, to, to let the, the engineering firm go now, I think it'd be basically closing the gate after the cows are out. So, you know, I'm, I'm going to have to go along with this end of the table.
Calling for the vote. The motion is to terminate Corillo when it gets through with where he is. We've had a second. All of those in favor of terminating Corillo, say aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Let's have a raise, show of hands, nays. The motion failed. Corillo has not been terminated. It was done by five-two vote, and I need to take a break. Hey, we have now progressed to Item 13, which is, has been made moot by the decision on Item 12. So there is no reason to move on to there. You know, this, and Charlotte just made a point here, we've got people out here that want to talk to Item 20. And we're going to be here till six o'clock anyway, but there's no reason for them to be. Would it be all right with council if we moved 20 up to right now? You have a problem with that, Mr. Self?
Shouldn't everybody share a well?
No, I have no problem.
They're not getting to pay, we are. They're not making anything.
Three of the ladies that were wanting to speak just left two minutes ago.
Well, they should have waited. Let's go on, if it's all right with council. Let's go on and take up Item Number 20. Let me read this. It's a discussion and possible action regarding the fiscal year 213 and 214 budget preparation, preparation by Budget Manager Morgan Trainor? That's not correct anymore, is it?
No, sir. I answer to it, though.
Craig?
Chad Witten.
Chad Witten.
Morgan Chad Wigan.
Yes, sir.
They get pretty close?
Yeah.
Can we just call you Morgan?
Absolutely.
Now, on this, we decided earlier, we are going to take comments, because I know we've got some people out there... we've got some people out there that have some special comments. But we're not going to go any further than that. We're not going to have our budget session because Daniel wants to talk to each council member individually. And as he talks to us, he will be able to prioritize his budget. So we're not going into the budget, but we do wish to take up the drainage issues. So do you want to lead us through this, Morgan?
I'll walk us through that if you don't mind, or at least get us started while our public comment folks get ready.
That'll work fine. Take it away, Michael.
For a couple of years now, Mr. Eustace, Steve Eustace, has been talking to us about what has become a drainage issue or has been a drainage issue for a while. And he's seeking to open the conversation about possible solutions related to a property that is, we know it as the Christian Village property out on the South Loop, behind where Dollar General was, or is, and Albertson's out there. And we had Mr. Bailey, Clinton Bailey, before he left, had worked up a brief on the, a summary of the issues there and what potential solutions might exist. And Ms. Farmer has been keeping her eye on this issue and has asked that we consider a discussion about it. And so all those, all those roads have come together today where we have an opportunity to discuss budget. We actually had that as a line item as other needs in the slide presentation that we're not going to go through, I don't think. And we have public who are interested or have an interest in that property here and available to express their opinion about the situation.
I guess that would be Steve Eustace or, come ahead, sir.
James Carter.
Please identify yourself, sir, and giddy up.
My name is James Carter, and I'm here as a board member of West Texas Christian Foundation. And I appreciate your taking us out of order and I appreciate your comments. What I'm going to do is make my comments very short, but I want to be sure everybody understands the problem. We've had this problem over 25 years. We've had different mayors, different councils look at it in an agreement, but there's just been no action. So we're asking this council, if at all possible, to solve the drainage problem as soon as you can. What happened is I was on the original board that the West Texas Christian Foundation bought land. And that land was purchased in 1977. And this is the land that was described just east of Loop 306. And Mark here is showing you our Exhibit 1, which is a plat, topography of that acreage that was purchased. And the reason I'm showing that to you is there is, this was three months after purchase, and there is no drainage across that track. The next plat that Mark is going to show you is when they started building Highway 306, were asked permission if we could drain some water onto that track. And Sidell, the contractor, even asked permission to put dirt on that track. We agreed to it. We had difficulty getting the dirt off, but we finally got their dirt off. But we have never got the water off. The diagram number two, chart number two, shows just a trickle of water going across the track. The Christian Village, which was built, is to the right of the water draining toward, behind Dollar General and the drugstore there. Plat number three shows a much greater flow of water. If you go down and observe behind, I believe it's the drugstore Dollar General, you'll find four to five-foot drop-offs where that water drops off. It looks like a waterfall. And it goes down and it eventually ends up on College Hills Boulevard. When we had that much water, we first went to the state of Texas. They looked at it and they said, not a state of Texas problem, state highway problem, it's a city problem. And we said, why is it a city problem? They said, because of all the construction west of 306, the apartments, the buildings, it's caused much more drainage. And it's not because of 306. So we come to the city, and we've been in the city several times, trying to seek help from you to correct that drainage problem. West Texas Christian Foundation was char, was started by the Johnson Street Church of Christ. After we built Christian Village, it was such a success, the goal to build housing for elderly, affordable housing, we were going to build more. But we could never get the drainage problem solved. So it was going to be too costly for us to do it. So we dropped those plans. We're now wanting to sell that property. And Mr. Eustace has helped us. And there are prospects of people considering purchase, but not until the drainage problem is solved. And so we want to sell it and get the money to do other functions for West Texas Christian Foundation. There are enough apartments for elderly that we don't feel like that we need to fulfill that need other than what we have. So we would appreciate your, putting it on your agenda and finding a way. One thing that's in your packet that we wanted to bring to your attention is a letter to Jim Strather, who was president of West Texas Christian Foundation, dated April 24, 1997. And at that time, the city manager, Mr. Adams, was indicating, yes, we want to help you. Our problem is, is finding the funding. And as soon as we pass this half-cent sales tax, that'll give us the funding. Well, the half-cent sales tax didn't pass, as you know, the first few times it was put for, for a vote, but it finally passed. Well, we haven't been able to get prior councils to say we need to help some of that to fix this drainage problem. And since then, we have the drainage fee that we are charging. And that's what that fee, I assume, is for. So we appreciate your listening to us. Again, if we can answer any question, provide anything, take you out there, let you see it, we'd be welcome to do it. We just need your help so that we can get our value out of that property and use it in our other charitable function.
Could we just have Daniel write you a letter dated 213? Would that-
No, that won't do it.
That won't work?
No.
Daniel, what can we do with stormwater on this? Is there some way that the stormwater can fix this or work on it?
At this point, I know when Clinton Bailey was here, as far as engineering, we did have, he worked up three different options that would be available for us as far as the cost estimates and so forth. So we'll have that available also when we do meet and discuss the capital improvement as far as priorities and so forth. And I'll share that information with all the council members.
Do you think maybe we could get some answers and maybe put this on the agenda, maybe September, October?
It'll, it'll depend.
Just to give these guys some, some knowledge of what we're doing.
Sure, absolutely. The, the deal is, of course, is that when we go through the CIP and prioritize our CIP and so forth, that's when we'll get indication from the council exactly where, you know, where this, this project will fall.
It does need to be on the CIP. And as we go through our budgets, we will work. We'll be through with the CIP and the budget in October. So possibly November, December, we can put this on the agenda and hopefully have something for you.
Well, good. If you don't mind, if we haven't heard from you by December, if you don't mind, I'll remind you. Is that okay?
That would be great.
Thank you.
I've got emails on the city website, my, all my personal numbers and my home phone. Give me a call. We'll get it on there, sir.
Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. We did have estimates from Clinton Bailey before he left San Angelo and several options that he gave for repair or whatever it needs to be done. So at budget session, we can share those with the rest of the council.
Good. Well, we can supply anything. We'll be happy to.
Daniel?
Thank you. Yes, I look forward to working with you all too. So-
Thank you.
Mayor, again, just to reiterate, I'll be scheduling meetings individually. The council members will go through the, the budget and also the capital improvement projects. And we'll discuss with them.
We will work on this, Mr. Carter, Mr. Eustace. Let's move on to the next one. Let's go back.
What are the budget items? Is there someone else out there?
The budget items, we were not going to deal with until we had individual meetings with Daniel and we'll work on the CIP. Is that agreeable with everyone?
Yes. Well, I just was wondering if there was anybody else with public comment. I thought I saw somebody earlier, but she's not there now, so never mind.
They left.
Anyone else have public comment on this item before we move to the next one? Let's move to the next one. Okay, we are on the first public hearing and consideration. This is item number 14 of an ordinance amending the Water Conservation and Drought Contingency Plan and Ordinance of the City of San Angelo, Texas, amending Chapter 11 and Article 11200 Water Conservation and Drought Contingency Plan by amending Subpart D entitled Water Supply Stage Drought Level 1 of Section 11.213 Drought Stages and Water Management Measures to Limit Watering of Lawns, Gardens, Landscape Areas, Trees, Shrubs, Golf Courses Except Greens or Other Plants Being Grown Outdoors to Once Every Seven Days Providing for Severability and Providing for an Effective Date. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. That just about sums up what this is about. At the last council meeting, there was interest to amend the current Water Conservation Drought Conserv, Contingency Plan. And the instructions that we were given was to change drought level one, outside watering from twice every seven days to once every seven days. And that's exactly what this is. It's the first public hearing introduction of ordinance. So anybody have any questions? I'd be glad to answer it.
The way I remember it, that's exactly what we told you to do. Do I have council comments?
Yeah. I agree, this is exactly what we, but if we, if we go two to one, and that's basically what we're doing, does, do, do-
No. We changed drought level one from twice every seven days to once every seven days.
Now, what exactly is in drought level two? Where, how does drought level two change?
Okay. Okay. The only other thing that's different between drought level two and drought level one is the extra charges for water usage.
Okay.
There is more during drought level two, higher charges than in drought level one. So that's the only difference.
Okay.
I think Silva's is asking for a breakdown on that.
In drought level one, a fee will be charged for water usage amounts as set forth below. This fee shall be in addition to the standard fee charged for water usage and shall be in lieu of the excessive usage fee as defined in Section 11.202. For a single-family residential accounts, an additional fee of $2 per, per thousand gallons shall be charged for all usage from 25,000 through 34,000 gallons during a billing, billing period. An additional fee of $3.50 per thousand gallons shall be charged for all usage from 35,000 through 44,000 gallons during a billing period. An additional fee of $6 per thousand gallons shall be charged for all usage over 44,000 gallons during a billing period. Usage on a single-family residential account shall be the total usage at the address, which is determined by adding together the usage on the meter supplying the residence and the usage on the meter supplying water to the landscape watering system. For all landscape meters except those at single-family residential, family residences, schools, colleges, parks, cemeteries, golf courses, or athletic facilities, an additional fee of $2 per thousand gallons shall be charged for all usage from 75,000 through 94,000 gallons during a billing period. An additional fee of $3.50 per 1,000 gallons shall be charged for all usage from 95,000 through 114,000 gallons, excuse me, from 95,000 through 114,000 gallons during a billing period. An additional fee of $6 per thousand gallons shall be charged for all usage over 114,000 gallons during a billing period. That's drought level one. Drought level two, a fee shall be charged for water usage in the amounts as set forth below. This fee, in addition to the standard fee charged for water usage and in lieu of the water usage fee set out in Section 11.203D3, the excessive usage fee is defined in Section 11.202. For a single-family resident, single-family residential accounts, an additional fee of $3.50 per thousand gallons shall be charged for all usage from 10,000 through 19,000 gallons during a billing period. An additional fee of $5, $5 per thousand gallons shall be charged for all usage from 20,000 through 29,000 gallons during a billing period. An additional fee of $8 per thousand gallons shall be charged for all usage over 29,000 gallons during a billing period. Usage on a single-family residential account shall be the total use, usage at the address, which is determined by adding together the usage on the meter supplying the residence and the usage on the meter or meters supplying water to the landscape watering system. For all landscape meter except those at single-family residences, an additional fee of $3.50 per thousand gallons shall be charged for all usage from 60,000 through 79,000 gallons during a billing period. An additional fee of $5 per thousand gallons shall be charged for all usage from 80,000 through 99,000 gallons during a billing, billing period. And an additional fee of $8 per thousand gallons shall be charged for all usage over 99,000 gallons during a billing period.
So that's the difference.
Since you asked for that, Johnny, you need to repeat it back.
Okay. Let me go over that again. I was trying to hear.
I missed the fourth line. I mean, I'm on the second one. I'm kidding.
Is there any more council comments on this?
Just, just one. At one time when we were doing a ordinance change, we had asked that the changes be highlighted in red so that we would, as we were reading along, we would know what we changed. And I don't see that.
Okay. Noted. We'll make sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ricky, you don't remember that?
Would you like to read the parts that need to be highlighted in red?
Yeah, just highlighted in red. I'm just kidding.
Highlighting, we changed it twice to once.
It's getting too late today for this, isn't it, Ricky?
Okay.
Any public comment on this? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass the ordinance as written.
I'll second that.
We've got a, Mr. Fleming, Fleming has made the motion. Silva's has seconded it. If no further comment, all yes, sir.
Mayor, I'd just like to remind the council and public that when we restrict the sale of water, we place a like restriction on our ability to generate revenue, which pays for all the things we've been talking about today. And so I know we're managing that water resource as we, as it gets low and we get concerned about it. We also have the financial side that warrants attention and management.
Understood.
Thank you.
All in favor of the adoption of the ordinance as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance passes 7-0. Okay, we have decided that we would put, Mr. Silva said he would pull out of number 15 for another, for another council meeting. So we'll go through that one. That leaves us with number 16. Have you still got questions on that? Or we need to talk about it some more?
Mr. Mayor, I believe it's a mute point at this point. We could have discussed it before the others. So it's pulled.
I agree. Let's move on to item 17. This is consideration of awarding water utility bid WU 1013 groundwater treatment facility and miscellaneous improvement projects for the Hickory Aquifer Water Supply Project to PCL Construction, Inc., Irving, Texas, in the amount of $27,132,193, authorizing the city manager to execute said contract and substantially the attached form and related documents. I had requested this. Ricky Dixon will present it. And I will say that by a consensus on the last council member, last council meeting, by consensus, four of us decided not to listen to it. I do not think there was a vote. I think it was a consensus by four and we decided to pull this. But I have since talked to city staff. I have talked to Mr. Dixon. And I think that this is important enough as far as timeline and money that it needed to be brought back for consideration, for a presentation, so that the council would have an opportunity to vote on it. However, if someone wants to make a motion to pull this thing, before we hear Mr. Dixon's presentation, in lieu of last week, I will entertain a motion.
I would just like to speak to that issue.
Would you like to make a motion?
No, sir. I'd just like to speak to the issue. I don't think upon scrutiny that you should, you were in your rights to do that. You may disagree. But we had four votes and you went right down the line and you said, and I'm the fourth vote and we're taking this off the agenda. We've just got, we've just got to have proper procedures here and not have someone that's over and above the, the vote of the council. And I know- And I know, I know your motives are pure, but I would just ask that we not do this anymore.
Noted. I accept that.
Okay.
Good constructive criticism, I accept it as such.
Very good, thank you.
But I did ask that it be put back on the agenda, and unless someone wants to make a motion to pull it and get three votes, we're about to get a presentation. Is there any motion to pull this? Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you said, we, city has received three bids from three contractors for construction of groundwater treatment facility, miscellaneous improvement projects for Hickory Water Supply. The low bid for the project was issued by PCL Construction Incorporated for $27,132,193. The project consists of the construction of the groundwater treatment facility with the capacity of 8 million gallons per day, new disinfection facility for the groundwater treatment facility and the existing surface water treatment facility. It is recommended that the low bid from PCL be accepted and city manager be authorized to execute the contract documents. Also have attached to that a recommendation from Corolla Engineers that also recommends acceptance of this bid from PCL Construction for the total base bid price of 24,396,493. Base bid plus bid alternate one of 27,132,193, and the base bid plus bid alternates one and two, 27,131,193. So, with that, I will entertain any questions that someone might have, and we also have attached the bid tab to this.
I have a few questions, but I'll defer. Is there any counsel wishes to speak to this? Donna? Yes, sir.
Okay, Ricky, I'm just wanting to make sure that I understand there's no engineering fees in this, those have already been done, and what about construction overview, is that included in the engineering fees?
That's included in the engineering fee that does not have anything to do with this bid.
Okay. Thank you.
Further comment from council? My only question is, is can we use these plans and locate this at the well field instead of bringing this radioactive water into San Angelo, Texas, and putting it on the banks of the Concho River?
No, sir. It is very important that, and the reason, or part of the reason that the existing location at the surface water treatment plant was selected was, we need the access to the sewer for the disposal of the iron filters, basically for, a better description. I mean, that's, that's key. And also, this disinfection facility is going to bring our current disinfection facility up to standards with the TCEQ. I mean, the existing facility was not big enough to handle both projects, so it was included in on this to fix it right where it's safe, and we don't have to worry about it, and it will handle the surface water treatment plant as long as the groundwater treatment plant. And I believe that's one of the main reasons that this site was chosen.
Can we put it outside of the city limits? Does it have to be on the banks of the Concho River? Same, same, same answer?
Pretty much. I mean, I guess anything's possible. I'm not going to say we cannot do that, but I don't know what the delays in the cost would be.
Hutch, do you have any idea, sir?
Ricky is right that, you know, this design, the location is specific to the water plant. Can we do it someplace else? Yes, but we have to redesign a lot of the things, and the disposal has been, is the big, the big issue here. Nothing is going to go to the banks of the river. Even if we have a spill, the concentrations of the water is like 35 picocures per liter at best if we don't get any treatment, and the, what's allowed to discharge without even having any alarm is 60 picocures per liter to a river, based on my understanding and knowledge. And so, at this point in the game, it will require significant, you know, time and effort to relocate it to a different location. Plus, we are using a lot of common facilities with existing surface treatment plant, including this infection facility.
Thank you, sir. Any other? John?
Hutch, or Ricky, anybody have a question? In looking at this bid, even the radium removal system, how does that work? The 4.9 million, is that over the life of the facility, or how, how is that price play?
The 4.9 million was the cost, the equipment cost of the ion exchange vessels with the, with the media. And so, that is included in the $27 million. So, it's, you know, instead, sometimes you go and pre-negotiate a piece of equipment with a, with a vendor, and because you absolutely want to have it, you don't want, you don't want them to, you know, jack up the prices at bid date. So, procurement is one of the ways that you can negotiate openly. So, once we, once the city got this, this capital cost for the procurement, then we assigned this purchase, then, you know, to the general contractor who would build this filter, if you want to call it a filter, plus all the auxiliary equipment associated with it. And the total cost of $27,131 is inclusive of that $4 million.
Right.
Yeah. So, that's, and then there will be another contract that the city will be negotiating with WRT on the annual maintenance and disposal of that waste, too.
All right. Thank you.
If there are no more questions, may I have a motion one way or the other?
I'm going to make a motion for approval of this contract with PCL in the amount of $27,132,193,000, as presented.
Second? Anyone? Do I get a second? Like the motion fails. Someone want to make another one?
I guess my question is, if we take no action, what happens?
Ricky? If we take no action, what happens?
As far as I know, the project stops. If we can't award a bid, we can't have a treatment plan. I can't treat water. I can't.
And I'll second his motion and see where it goes.
We've got a motion and a second that we approve this bid as presented. Do I have any comment from the floor? Come on up, Mr. Cornell, and identify yourself.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Council, Chris Cornell, a single member District 5, and I would say failure to award this project would be a horribly irresponsible action on part of the council. We are at a critical phase in the development of the Hickory Aquifer Well Field. Frankly, the timeframe is too close for my comfort. I think Mr. Dixon would agree, and we need to get this underway as soon as possible.
Thank you, sir.
I might add one other statement, something I've been thinking about, and if we don't do this treatment plan, and we've spent $73 million on this project, we have a $8,350,000 annual debt that the citizen ratepayers are saddled with now because of this Hickory project, and we don't build a plant, and we can't treat this water. And on a, on a good day, if we have surface water and we can blend at a seven to one ratio, just to make it easy, and we're using 21 million gallons of water a day, okay, I can blend 3 million gallons of that water. Basically, we have saddled the ratepayers with this, this debt for water that they basically can't use, and I have no way of generating revenue to pay this debt. So, I just think that's important, that the public ought to know that, that, you know, this is where we're at. We've spent $73 million to get this far, to try to get a more stable source of water for the citizens of San Angelo. So, I thought that was important. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a motion, we do have a second to accept. I'm now going to call for the vote. All of those in fair and in favor of accepting the bid of 27,132,193 for the water treatment plant, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's have sure hands on the ayes. Motion passes with a 5-2, with a 5-2 vote. Let's move on now to item number 18. This is consideration of adopting a resolution of the City of San Angelo City Council, awarding RFB number ES 0113, Engineering Services Avenue, P Street, and Drainage Improvement Project to Reese Albert, Inc., and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement for construction of Avenue P Street and Drainage Remediation Project between the City of San Angelo and Reese Albert, Inc., in accordance with said bid and substantially the attached form, said agreement being subject to rescission on December 31, 2013, should the necessary right of way and unnecessary easements not be required, acquired by city before December 31, 2013, as provided under such agreement. Interim city engineer, Mr. Wolf.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. We're here to award a bid, hopefully, for Avenue P, Street and Drainage Improvement Project. Before we do, I'd like to give you, for the new council members and anybody watching at home, a brief update or brief overview of what the project is. Avenue P, Street and Drainage Improvement Project is designed to alleviate all the flooding issues that we see along Avenue P neighborhood. That whole area, you could characterize it as a true neighborhood. All the residents have lived there for many generations, their grandparents have lived there, and they've all experienced severe flooding over the last several decades. It has increased somewhat over the years due to upstream development at ASU and on the west side of Bryant Boulevard. You can see here on the right side of the screen is a old picture from the Standard Times in 1987 of dealing with the flooding issues then. Council was aware of it back then, too, but no funds were available to help these, these local folk there. Here's a picture from one of the flooding events, and it happens fairly often. You can see how high the water can get in the street there, and of course, as it gets in the street that high, it then gets up into the yards and up into the homes, and there are a number of homes around there that have flooding. And in this picture, you can see a little over about a foot of...
What are you washing in?
You can see about a foot or so, a little higher than that, of flooding there, which of course goes in the house and destroys all these people's properties. A little bit of other background is, in 2000, we obtained a master drainage plan from Fries and Nichols out of Fort Worth. In that plan, they analyzed 57 different drainage areas or drainage issues across the city. They ranked them on various issues, but this Avenue P drainage project came in ranked number two out of all 57 projects. What this project is, is a underground storm sewer system, basically a big box culvert that will catch water that's flowing across Bryant Boulevard at Avenue P. It takes it underground and carries it underground all the way east past South Chadburn Street, across a private property, and then out, discharges it out by the Red Arroyo over there on the right side. That piece of property on the east side of South Chadburn there is privately owned, so we do need easements across there, and that can be discussed here in just a little bit, too. This project was out for bid in February. We opened bids in March. There were two bidders on this project, Reese Albert, Inc., and Oscar Renda. One of them is local. The, I do need to note there, this, this price right here should be 2,856,661. I just noticed that a while ago, and I apologize for that. Reese Albert, Inc., we did select as the lowest responsible bidder, and we're asking to award the bid to them today. There is some contingency on that. The property, as I said, south, east of South Chadburn Street is privately owned, so we do need to acquire easements across there. These easements have been in discussions for months now, about a year. They were to be gifted, however, situations arose where, with lien holders on the property, that we're going to have to actually pursue financial means to, to get these easements and potentially eminent domain, if necessary. That is the, the next item, 19, on the agenda is to actually pursue these easements. Here's just a diagram of these easements, free to be thinking about. It's a 50-foot drainage easement for the actual storm sewer itself, and then a 40-foot temporary construction easement, which will go away after the, the project is complete. What we're asking here today is, in an effort to protect the city against rising construction and material construction, production costs, Reese Albert has actually agreed to hold their bid prices steady and firm if we can award it now contingent upon acquiring those easements. We do not have the easements right now, we're in the process of getting them, but if we have to reject bids and wait, then, you know, we have to rebid the whole project and start all over with the thought that potentially new bids will come in higher because construction costs are going up, production costs of steel and concrete are going up. But we would like to award today with Reese Albert holding their bids contingent upon us getting the easements necessary. We have until December 31 in the contract to do that. If we cannot get those easements in that time, which we feel pretty certain we can, if we cannot, then this whole contract becomes null and void, and there's no obligations on either part, the city or the contractor, to move further. That's, that's item 18.
Johnny, you want to talk to this? I know this is your pet project.
You know, and I appreciate James Carter and Steve Yousis for what they're trying to do, because I feel for those folks as well as I feel for these. I went up on a Sunday morning after a rain event back in August of, a couple of years ago, and I was standing right there, and every room in that house in the, in that neighborhood, it was about, I think the water hit at least four foot tall, it was four foot deep, I'm saying, but the inside of the house was just a mess. And this idea has been, has been an ongoing idea since 19, the picture you saw of Gary Astaveva, that was a 1993 photo, and they have been kicking it around and, and, you know, just tossing it back and forth, and I, it's terrible. You know, you get a two-inch rain and you see conditions like that. So, again, you know, I hope that I have the support of folks that move forward with this, and we've been talking about it almost two years now, when even myself and Harold Dominguez and Clinton had a town hall meeting with these folks, and they came back up again. So, I certainly feel for them when it happens. I thought about them this morning, and I wouldn't be surprised if there's flooding going on out there right now, or, you know, earlier today. So, again, I just want to, you know, it's, it's, it's good for the neighborhood. The safety issue is what I think had brought it to light, because heaven forbid, we have another drowning out there like we did at a park north of town, but, you know, that's the last thing I want on my conscience. So, I represent the area, and I'm here in, in support of this. So, I'm, having said all that, I'm, I'm going to make a motion for approval of this item. And again, we don't have anything to lose, you know, we have till December 31 to iron out the, the kinks that we've come across, and unfortunately, but, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve this item as, as presented.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
It's a motion and a second. You're happy with this, Chris?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other comment? Yes, Don?
Where's the remainder of the money coming from? Your bid's, your bid's at 2,593, and under financial impact, you've got 2,800,000, and then 360,000 from stormwater.
Yeah, you're right. Two million, 400 something thousand.
I don't remember where, where we worked that. I know when we dealt with this before, we had the money sources fixed. Do you remember?
Well, we will be scaling the project back. If we cannot secure any more of that funding, we will be scaling it back just a little bit. Still maintain all of the objectives of this project, but we will get it under budget.
I believe there was some stormwater funding.
Well, three, it's showing 360.
Stormwater and general funds. I know, I know we talked about it, and we had it all worked out where there was enough money. I just didn't remember.
Yes, sir. It was, it was discussed, the budget issue on this was discussed.
And it's in this year's budget?
It's actually, actually, it was discussed actually a couple of months back. When it was presented.
Yes, Don, yes it is.
There was a component in it that actually covered the full cost, and I'm so sorry, I can't even recall.
I can't remember it, but I know we did, we had it, we had it figured out.
Yes, and scale back was one of the items necessary.
Okay. We can pay for it, Don.
Okay.
Any other comment from council? Do I have any comment from the public? If not, I will call for the most, I will call for the vote on this. The motion has been made that we accept this bid as presented, it has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 7-0. Let's move on then to the next one. This is number 19, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the acquisition of a permanent drainage utility easement and temporary construction easement across certain real property east of South Chadburn Street at Avenue P, required for the Avenue P Street and Drainage Improvement Project, and authorizing the city manager to execute all contracts and other legal instruments necessary or convenient to acquire said easements, finding a public use and benefit therefore, and authorizing initiation of eminent domain proceedings pursuant to law. eminent domain proceedings pursuant to law, if necessary, to acquire the property for said easement. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, as I did mention in the previous item, we are looking for these easements. I know the legal department is in conversations with the property owner's attorney. The discussions are being had, and I feel pretty certain that we're going to have a deal worked out pretty soon. If things fall apart, then we could pursue eminent domain, if necessary. But that's what we're here to do, is just get your authorization to pursue the acquisition of these easements.
And I do wanna, I do wanna mention, I'm sorry that this, of course, we'll bring back to the city council for your final approval as far as the proposed amount. So, again, it will come back to you, and you'll know the amount.
And I guess to go along with Councilman Barmen, where are those funds coming from when we make the deal? Will y'all...
Those funds will come from the project. Those are project monies.
Okay.
Mr. Self, you wanna make another motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion to approve item number nineteen as presented.
Mr. Fleming, you wanna make another second?
I'll second that.
Any other comment from council? Comment from the public? If not, we have a motion to accept it. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Another seven oh. Okay, we have already dealt with item number twenty. We are just about to break to go back to executive session, to complete our session. Y'all wanna go ahead and get twenty-two out of the way, and twenty-three? Let's get twenty-two out of the way, if that's, if that's... And then we will break and go back to executive, and then we will come back and conclude with item number twenty-one. But item number twenty-two is consideration of approving various board nominations by council, named designated council members. Civic Events Board, Michaela Brownfield, SMD four. Ford Concho, Harry Terrace, Harry Thomas, SMD four. Planning Commission, Sammy Farmer, SMD four, to an expired term, January two oh-one-five. Do I have a motion?
Move approval, second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Do I have comment from council? Do I have comment from public? No comment?
Make the second motion.
I'm sorry. No further comment. I will call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. Consideration of nominating and approving two city council members to serve on the Investment Oversight Committee, and I believe that we did have Mayor New and, yes, Mayor New and Kendall Hurstfield were on this committee. They have, they are no longer with us. We need to appoint two members to serve on this committee. I'm looking for volunteers.
Rodney Fleming said he volunteered.
There's one. Looking for another one. Who else you volunteering, Don?
I volunteer if Charlotte, either one.
Well, thus far Rodney's been volunteered, and Charlotte's been volunteered.
I volunteer Charlotte. That's a good thing.
Rodney, will you serve, sir?
Yes.
Charlotte, will you serve?
They provide grapes.
They do provide grapes. Okay, we, in a roundabout way, we do have two volunteers. We have Rodney Fleming and Charlotte Farmer. Do I have a motion to approve these?
Move approval, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comment from council? Comment from the public? All in favor of Charlotte and Rodney, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That has been taken care of, and that was with a seven oh vote. And I guess that's where we need to break for the executive. And then when we come back, we will deal with consideration and possible action on matters discussed in the executive closed session. That's number twenty-one. Do I need to read this again, Ms. Bowling, or will it suffice that I read it once already?
Are you speaking of reading the caption for item number three?
Yes.
Within, please read it.
Read it again. Okay, now, the one that we will deliberate on is the last one. This is section five-five-one, oh-seven-four-one, to deliberate the appointment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of the San Angelo City Manager, Assistant City Managers, all of the department directors, and acting or interim department directors. It is exactly five o'clock, and we will now go to executive session. Thank you. Five fifty, and we are coming back into regular session. Item twenty-one is consideration of and possible action on matters discussed in executive so closed session, if needed. And really, there was nothing said in executive. We were very, very careful about anything that we talked about. We did talk about the duties of the city manager. We did talk about the charter and the duties of the city council with the city manager. And basically, other than those few remarks, we had very little to say in executive. And really, I have nothing to report about our executive. Is there anyone on the council that would, that'd like to add anything to that for public, for a regular session?
I think we better disclose, we talked about the tri-cities.
We did talk about the tri-cities. That was on, that was on an executive item that we, I think that was number two. But we did talk about the tri-cities, and there will be more information that Daniel is going to bring us about the tri-cities and the expenditures, and we will be talking about that again. That is, that issue's very much alive. But that was item number one. Okay, I know it was on the, item number one, it was, it was one of the items that we spoke about at noon. Just barely can remember back that far.
I think there was a very good idea of us scheduling a retreat here one day soon. So, I think that's a very, very good idea.
We did talk about a possible retreat, but that was not on the agenda. Anyhow, that's, that's about all that we talked about. There was nothing, no earth-shattering, groundbreaking news.
Most of, agenda items, let's see.
We have the announcements and consideration of future agenda items. I did have two that I asked for last week that I told Alicia to go ahead and put off because they were not that important. But I think it's time, I want one of them on anyway, so...
Which one's that one?
I want the one about the December, January three, two thousand twelve meeting, the, the code of, code of ethics of conflict of interest that we abolished. I want to discuss that and put it back into our bylaws. But my other one, we can just let it ride, because I know we're probably gonna have another heavy. I hope it's not as heavy as this one. But who else has any agenda items? Mr. Fleming?
I have two items. The first one would be discussion of possible action on placing a moratorium on any RV parks or man camps inside the city limits. The second one is discussion and possible action on stopping the shooting off of fireworks at Twin Buttes Park. That's it.
Mr. Self?
You, I believe you...
I believe you told me you submitted something in writing on that, and you wanted it on the agenda like it appeared, like you...
Yes.
Not, not the way you said it.
No, actually, I wanna do it, I wanna do it this way, Winky. I've discussed this with several different people, and the moratorium will be a different, I think it's gonna be a different way of doing it, the better way of doing it, because we could reverse it if, in a year or two, if we had to.
Okay, you said, how did you say that, then?
I'd like to have possible discussion and action taken on placing a moratorium on allowing RV parks or man camps in the city limits.
There is no designation, Rodney, with all due respect, there is no designation for man camps. So, you're...
People camp?
Manufactured homes or RV parks are the only two designations we have.
Okay. Then I would say to include RV, or trailer parks...
No, no, manufactured homes.
Manufactured homes.
And RV parks.
RV parks. Thank you, Winky.
Mayor, the man camps, we were instructed, fall into group living, and we're working on issues associated with that. If it's all right in association with that agenda item, we'll bring what information we have related to that item also. So...
Thank you, Michael.
Okay.
And then on the agenda item that I requested, did you and Mr. Floyd and possibly find some new information out?
We did discuss, Mr. Self requested an agenda item that talked about the ETJ and what options we had. And Steve Floyd, one of our county commissioners, attended our recent, I think he's attended a couple of housing meetings now, and attended the recent meeting. The consensus of that group was to, we have an agreement with the county, I won't take too much time, but we have an agreement with the county where we designate who does what duty in the ETJ. The consensus was that we should work together with the county to strengthen what happens in the ETJ, which means probably handing some things back to the county. But also, the group said beyond the ETJ, that we would support the county and work with them for solutions also, that we didn't just need to create an unofficial board.
In one of the near council meetings, could we have that as an agenda item that goes along with my deal?
You know, it might be appropriate for that to come with, because that housing group has been working on that, and we can bring what we've got on those issues, and...
They're working on increasing the ETJ.
I think it needs, needs to be two separate items, though. One...
We can do that.
One follows the other, or something?
Sure.
Yeah, that'll work perfect. Thank you.
I did want my, want my item brought back on the water consumption update. Thank God, you know, for sending this rain, but I'm still curious.
Charlotte?
I have a request for a report, and the amount that it was going to cost, to look at our billing system, to see if we could bill in one-hundred-gallon increments instead of thousand-gallon increments, as most of the new council members probably don't know how that works, and we've never gotten an answer to that subject to answer to the citizens. And I've had a few calls wanting to know when we're gonna come back and report that, because they really want us to go to a hundred-gallon and not a thousand-gallon report. And, okay?
We do have some preliminary information. We're waiting till after the dust settles from the election, and we can, can bring that back.
September, October is fine. I've just want it on the agenda as a future agenda item, okay? Because I know we've got a lot of stuff. And then, this is not an agenda request, but I, last meeting, I had requested we maybe take a look at around town where we were minus some street signs that we needed more notification. And there is a sign that is up on Soul Ross at the Arroyo, if you're going from the loop going inside, that has just been recently put up with reference to the possibility of high water. But the sign is after you're already out in the middle of the Arroyo to read it, and you can't read it from, say, the stop sign because of the tree in the view. And we need to look at that and see if we can have better placement of that sign, in my opinion.
Charlotte and Shane, take a look at it. We'll check out, we'll check, we'll check out that sign on Soul Ross. As far as the overall situation, my notes say, Charlotte. I don't know if we had that as a Charlotte item, but we did have signs, Shane Kelton is working on the signs issue, and we'll, we'll bring that. Remember, we had a citizen make public comment about signage, and she referred to certain parts of town, but really, in all parts of town, we have lots of unmarked intersections. And the question for us will be, what level of commitment, three dollars, do we wanna spend?
And I also wanted to take the opportunity, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to apologize to Ricky Dixon. I was not picking him out, singling him out last meeting, because I know it wasn't his work that I was questioning. He just inherited the work. So, I'm sorry that he's gone, but maybe he'll hear that I am sorry that it reflected, I reflected it on him.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Thank you.
Charlotte, excuse me, Mayor, if I can add to your item, Charlotte. I've always had very good, very good luck with, there's a gentleman that works for Shane Kelton on the signs, signage, Alonso Carrasco. I've got his cell. I'd call him, he could, you know, I always report all these signs that are vandalized or just need replacing, and he's always been there for us.
Well, tell Alonso thank you. We're getting the four-way stop out on the bluffs, and those folks could not be happier.
And then also, on your request for the water usage, or the, no, water usage, the hundred-gallon idea, Michael, if you would add also, and I had requested it a while back, but you triggered my memory, it was brought to my attention that there's some folks out there that think that we are actually being billed thirteen months of water usage for twelve months of usage, thirteen months versus twelve. So, look at that, see, and I guess it all depends on...
It is, it's the number of days, Johnny. I've looked at it, and it, some people do feel it works out to be thirteen months a year instead of the twelve.
So, if you, if y'all can look into that, all right?
I had a couple of requests, one can sit, but I'd like to go ahead and talk about us having an evening meeting. I noticed that seems like even these meetings are better attended, but I'd like to discuss it with the council about an evening meeting. And then I'd also like to look at a resolution for ASU to be able to drive their little maintenance golf cart, mule-type vehicles on the city streets.
Yeah, I have, Mr. Mayor, I have one item that I'll flesh out in writing and get it back to the city clerk, having to do with the closed session on personnel. And that's all, probably.
I will entertain the motion.
The motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's go.